Excellent. Well, today is Tuesday, February 9th in our city council work session, and I am calling this meeting to order. Councilmember Sweet, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pleasure. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands.
Oh, and Councilmember Aslan, the mission statement.
My privilege. The mission of the City of Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Ms. Salzberg, roll call, please.
Mayor D.C.
Present.
Vice Mayor Daggett.
Here.
Councilmember Aslan.
Present.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Here.
Councilmember Salas.
Fully present here.
Councilmember Shimoney.
Present.
Councilmember Sweet.
Present. Sorry about that, everybody.
All right. Well, thank you. Before we get to public participation, I wanted to begin this meeting by issuing an apology for my decorum at last council meeting on February 2nd. To Ms. Altenbaugh, councilmembers, and to the general public, I am sorry. My decorum was not one befitting of the honor that has been given to me to be in the seat of mayor. I stand by my values, my concerns, and my passion for meaningful change, but I recognize that meaningful change requires building consensus, which my actions last meeting did not help with. So again, I am sorry, and I look forward to moving on to more productive conversations. That being said, down to agenda item number four, public participation. Do we have any public participants?
Yes, Mayor, we have one public speaker, Jenny Niemann, who is actually on the Teams meeting, and Jenny, you can go ahead.
Absolutely.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, and members of the public. My name is Jenny Niemann. I'm the Climate and Energy Specialist in our Sustainability section. I'm going to share my screen because I'm here today to discuss and to show you our Flagstaff Climate Emergency Open House. We have put together this open house really with the help of the public over the last couple of months. Because the climate emergency came from the community, we really wanted to invite community voices to share, to talk about the open how, or sorry, to talk about the climate emergency, to talk about carbon neutrality, why they wanted this, right, and talk about how we can get there. So what I'm showing you right now is kind of the table of contents of the open house. It goes through all of the many different elements that we discuss in here, and in here there are 21 different videos. Most of them are from members of the public, some are from staff, and what we do is we talk through our core principles. We define carbon neutrality. We know that that's not always a term that everybody knows, and then we talk through how we get to carbon neutrality and the path that we get there. So this is the welcome screen that folks see when they come onto our site. All you do get actually into the video is you click here. If you haven't registered before, it will ask you to register. It takes about 10 seconds and just an email address, and then what will happen is then you're transferred into this site, and all along this site you can go down and read information. There are some links in here, how to use this site, and then you can go and actually listen to different community voices. So we go through, again, these core principles, how Flagstaff contributes to climate change, climate change 101. For instance, we have Jeff Hall, the head of Lowell Observatory, talking about climate change 101. We talk about equity. We talk about our path to carbon neutrality down here. We go through the seven different bundles that Nicole talked with you all last month about, how we change our reliance on cars, how we think about energy efficiency. So we go through all of this really as a way to just give voice to the community and give voice and some color, I think, to the climate emergency and carbon neutrality to really show the way. Right now I have a video up. This is, actually have some Fall Up student organizers and advocates, and they are, have put together two videos for us actually with a number of other students talking about the climate emergency and carbon neutrality. The final thing I wanted to talk about is just invite the public to get involved. We have a survey right here. This survey is hosted through our Flagstaff Community Forum, but you can actually get into it right through this site and go ahead and take the survey. You can give us feedback on the direction that we're heading, and then finally we have two Q&amp;A sessions. Those Q&amp;A sessions, the first one on Thursday, it's at 6:00 p.m., and it's hosted through Zoom, and the second one is on Wednesday, and it is also hosted through Zoom at 6:00 p.m. So thank you so much, and I really appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Niemann, and thank you for all your and your team's hard work. We're down to agenda item number five, review of draft agenda for the February 16th, 2021 city council meeting. Council, do you have any discussion or concerns about what's up next week? Oh, City Manager Clifton.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. I just wanted to preface this particular discussion by noting, and mostly for the benefit of our newly seated elected officials, this exercise that we go through every, every week is an opportunity for Council to take a peek at the agenda, and we, it's very important, obviously, because Council does not have an active role in formulating the agenda. Now, there is a peripheral role that is exercised through a number of means such as the fair items, such as, you know, sometimes just communications either to the city clerk or to my office. There's a number of effective ways to see items either placed on the agenda or items that are on the agenda recategorized. So even though we get to a point with these agendas where they kind of become set in stone, that being, you know, on the eve of the council meeting, I just want to share with Council the importance of this particular exercise. It is your opportunity to take a peek at the agenda and let us know if there's anything that you would like to see differently or if you're in agreement with it or something that you might want elaboration upon. So thank you, Mayor, for letting me share that with you.
Thank you, City Manager. With that in mind, is there any council member would like to discuss anything on the concerns about the next agenda? All right. Well, we are down to agenda item number six, and this is the discussion and possible direction regarding city council rules and procedure. City staff, take it away. Or should I say City Attorney's Office?
Actually, Mayor, you're going to hear from me, your city clerk, Stacy Salzberg. Give me just a second here to share my screen. I apologize. I'm, I'm usually not on this side of the process, so it might just take me a quick moment. Okay, you all should be able to see my screen. So tonight I am here to talk with you about our city council rules of procedure and receive any direction on any changes that you as council would like to consider. The council rules of procedure were developed and adopted by council to provide protocol on how meetings are conducted, how agendas are prepared, along with other elements of meeting decorum. The rules of procedure is a living document that can be reviewed and amended by council at any time. Staff will typically bring the rules of procedure to the council for review following each candidate election to determine if any changes are desired with the changing of the council. So based on your input tonight, I will bring forward any revisions that council would like to see for consideration and adoption at a later meeting. In addition to the opportunity for council to review, staff will often bring forward possible amendments to consider based on some things that they've noted over the prior year. And most of what you are going to be seeing from me tonight are those possible amendments from staff. So I do have a handful of suggested amendments. Most are minor and generally will codify the council's standard practices. I will also be looking to the council for some input on any other items that they would like to discuss. So the first suggested amendment comes in Rule 3.01, related to regular meetings. The city council takes a summer break between July and August, and the rules of procedure indicate that the meeting in August must occur on the third Tuesday. It is not uncommon for the Arizona League of Cities and Towns to schedule their annual conference during this third week of August, and with the majority of the council typically attending that conference, we often have to take a formal action at a special meeting to postpone that August meeting to the fourth Tuesday. So the proposed change here would be to add the option of holding the August meeting on the third or fourth Tuesday, and this will provide greater flexibility to the city manager to adjust the meeting schedule as needed if there are conflicts that arise in that, that part of August. And we can do that without needing an official action of the council to reschedule the meeting. The Second Amendment is not a suggestion by staff, but rather an opportunity for the council to discuss their meeting times. I want to note before I jump into this that the council is currently operating under a suspension of the rules, and this was to provide greater flexibility on our agenda structure as well as additional meeting time during our virtual operations. So currently, all meetings have begun at 3:00 in the afternoon, and this will continue until the council rescinds that suspension of the rules. So what you'll see before you are a couple of options here, but you are by no means limited to them. Option one is to leave our meeting schedule as is with a 4:30 start time for our routine business, followed by a break, and then a 6:00 start time for our regular business, and work sessions begin at 6:00. Option two is a consideration for standardizing the start times of our council meetings and work sessions and having them all start at the same time and remove the break between the 4:30 and the 6:00 portion of the meeting to essentially have one continuous meeting. The standardization might provide some consistency for the public and reduce confusion about the start time of our meetings each week. And of course, staff is certainly open to any other ideas that the council may have. The next item is Section 5.02, related to the regular meeting agenda, and here staff is recommending that we add legislative updates to the agenda outline. This would likely occur only during the legislative session, but could be used as needed during other times of the year. As we know, these legislative items come up quite frequently and usually at the last minute, and what this addition would do would allow an opportunity for council to be able to discuss those things without necessarily having to have a very specific agenda item for that. The next addition is the proposal of a new section, and this would provide for an order of business for the work sessions. This would provide a documented template for our already occurring practice, and while not noted here on this slide, the legislative update that I just talked about would also be included on these agendas should council give that direction. So next are some adjustments to Item 7.03 concerning decorum and order during the meetings. After reviewing the language in this session, in this section, staff believes that the second paragraph of Section 7.03 would actually fit better when incorporated into Sections 9.01 and 9.02, and those two sections really drill down into the details about public participation in meetings, and this move of the second paragraph would better provide clarity as well as combine the information into one section rather than having information in multiple sections. And some of the items contained in that second paragraph relate to speakers ceding their time to other speakers, additional time allotments for groups of 10 or more, as well as additional time for accommodations such as a translator. In Section 9.02, relating to public hearings, staff is also suggesting the consideration of removing the specific time limit assigned to the presentation portions of the hearing. There has been little enforcement of this time limit historically, and we thought it might be better to clarify that there may be a time limit assigned but not have the specification of a particular time, and what this would do is it would allow for a little more flexibility to make those adjustments as we need to. The last item is the addition of a new section regarding lobbying meetings and trips. Back in October of 2019, the council identified some rules related to these types of meetings, and this section would codify that direction from council. I know that Councilmember McCarthy has some suggested edits on this section, but I'll leave that to him to address during the discussion. So thank you again for the opportunity to present these items. Again, this document is council's document. It's their rules, and what I have presented tonight is simply just some suggestions that staff has based on what we've experienced in the past. We are certainly at your pleasure regarding updates to the rules, and I am open for any questions, comments, and direction.
Thank you, City Clerk. City Council, Councilmember McCarthy.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I have comment, well, I'll just say this. I have comments on two sections, but other than that, I think all these changes are pretty routine and actually make a lot of sense. The first one I'll comment on, it may be the best way to do this is we'll talk about this one, and then we'll come back to the second one. The second one is the lobbying trip procedures, but the first one is when we start meetings, and of course, one suggestion was keep it the way it was before COVID, which means that we have a 4:30 meeting where we talk about routine items or things that are of less, hopefully of less interest to the public, and then the second meeting would be at 6:00, and that would be things that there's more interest by the public. I would suggest keeping it that way instead of running a continuous. Now, I guess the advantage of a continuous meeting is we might get out of here a little bit sooner, but I guess I have two reasons that I'd like to keep it the way that it was before COVID, and one is selfish, and that's that I needed a little time to eat dinner between meetings. The second is focused on the public. If there's something that a member of the public wants to watch or participate in, they don't know what time that's going to come. So if the meeting just runs together and we started it all at 4:30, there might be an agenda item that wouldn't be up till 7:00, but they'd have to get on the meeting at 4:30 and sit through all the routine stuff and, and so that they make sure they don't miss what they really want to hear. So, but if we keep it the way it is, they can just skip the 4:30 meeting, and then after they review the agenda, they can go to the 6:00 meeting and then, you know, get in line and wait for their item to come up. I think the other thing for the public is that a lot of people can't come to a meeting at 4:30, but they can, most, not everyone, obviously, but most people are off by five or so, and they can come to a 6:00 meeting. So that, that's my thoughts on that, and I suggest we discuss that, and then I'll come back to the thing about lobbying trips.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Yeah, I agree. Let's, let's talk about the timing, and then we'll kind of go through this. So Vice Mayor Daggett, you have a question, comment?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Can I ask a question about lobbying? Just a clarification?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Okay. I, does that relate to just lobbying on trips to DC, or is that also in reference to any kind of meetings in Flagstaff with our elected representatives?
Thank you for the question, Vice Mayor. This would apply to any meetings with our legislative officials where we are perhaps discussing any sort of city business. So not only would it be those, you know, lobbying trips to Washington, DC, or sometimes down to the state, but also any meetings that would potentially occur locally.
Okay, thank you. And then my comment regarding the timing is essentially what Mr. McCarthy said, and that is that I think if we start the regular meeting at a set time, that just gives the public a better chance to plan for whichever agenda item they would like to listen in on or comment on. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Salzberg. So, Mayor, you want us to comment specifically on the timing right now? Is that how you want to handle this?
Yeah, I think it'll make it a little clearer for direction for, for staff.
Because I have a whole list of direction, but I'll follow your lead, my friend. So, yeah, I think option one makes sense for me, too, and Vice Mayor and Counselor McCarthy echoed my opinions as well. So I'll leave it at that. If I do have questions, I'll leave that to that point. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, you know, I don't mind with continuous or separated as it normally is, but I do have, I would like council's input on the specific time. A lot of the time we put some of the biggest hitters that, you know, the public wants to speak at later in on the council meeting, and a lot of the time it gets to the point where it's 10, 11 p.m. I remember with the minimum wage, how late that would go, and a lot of other subjects. In some ways, it's maybe better to keep a little bit earlier schedule. I'm not saying as it is now necessarily starting at 3:00, but maybe somewhere in the middle that would kind of be a little bit of a sweet spot than starting at 6:00 p.m., and then once we get to the meat of some issues, it's 9, 10 o'clock. Potentially, it might actually, well, A, you know, waiting in terms of accessibility by the public, but also it seems to me that when we're starting just a little bit earlier, we can get more done on the agenda before we are, you know, starting to fade in our brains. For example, when, you know, the other night it was 3:00, and then we were done at, what, about 10? So that would be if this was rescheduled to starting at 4:30 and 6:00, we'd be going a lot later. So I would like your input on that if, you know, we would want to consider doing a different time than 4:30 and 6:00, separated, combined. I don't really have much of, I don't feel strongly one way or another. Councilmember Sweet, does comment?
Okay, I hope my computer will cooperate with me. I would also like to say that as the night progresses and it gets late, it's hard for me to be on my A-game, and I would like to maybe entertain the idea of starting earlier than 6:00. And, you know, for the last year I did go to the council meetings. I was there in person, and from what I could tell the later the night went, nobody can really be on their A-game, so to make these important decisions and to talk policy, I would like to see us start a little bit earlier if possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor, and I'm a little confused because I think typically we start at 4:30, at least for our heavier meetings, but you're, you're asking if it gets started earlier than 4:30, right, Mayor?
Well, yes, as in, you know, do we want to even consider keeping the current system that has been since COVID, or, yeah, I would like to just kind of debate time, you know, the whole works while, while we're considering this item.
Okay. I'd be curious to hear what Stacy or our city clerk or our city manager has to say, because sometimes we get out of the meeting early when we start at 4:30, but there usually wasn't much of a break, if any at all, and so I guess I'd be open to starting earlier, and I'd be curious what others would have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Daggett?
Thank you, Mayor. I think that Mr. Clifton might have something to say.
Well, in the manager's rules of procedure, we never trump when an elective official wants to talk, so I will bounce it back to you, Vice Mayor, and I will offer a comment after you are able to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, I agree with you, and if we could start the meetings earlier to get some of the routine housework done so that the, the portion that the community is going to be interested in happens at a more reasonable hour when we're all fresher, I would wholeheartedly support that, and if that means that we need to start what would be the 4:30 portion of the meeting earlier to accommodate that, I would be in support of that, as, as long as the portion that the public will be interested in still happens at a time that would probably be best for, for most people.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. This is your call, and we will accommodate regardless of the hours that you choose. Just a couple of things that I would state, and they are probably more of a restatement. Frequent breaks are always welcome. I don't think I'm out of place and saying in the virtual world, we tend to go nonstop with our meetings, and I think our council meetings are reflective of that fact, and the mayor presides, so Mayor, this one goes to you, but as, as frequent as you would like to take breaks, and you have been diligent about that, I think we all benefit from that. I think the opportunity for some nourishment during the long meetings is also a very welcome idea, and the last comment I would share is the only thing that really becomes a challenge for all of us is, is the late night hours. Now, it's not always escapable. Sometimes, sometimes we have to go late, and we've had a few of those meetings, and that has always been the case. We will do our best to stay sharp and to keep it a well-informed discussion. I'm just noting again the obvious, we all tend to not be on our A-game as Councilmember Sweet noted when, when we get very late into the evening. Thank you for letting me share my thoughts.
Thank you, City Manager. Councilmember Aslan?
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. Looking forward to this conversation. I think there's going to be a lot of various opinions, and I also sense there's going to be a lot of flexibility in the way that people sort of come to a consensus on this. A couple of starting points. I'm glad we're not talking about moving the meeting from Tuesday to another day of the week. I think Tuesdays are working great, and I hope we can just take that conversation off the table. In terms of when we start the meeting and whether or not it's continuous, I think there's an assumption built into if we start earlier, we'll end earlier. I, I think that's very much an assumption, and I think when we end the meeting is much more of a function of how well the meeting's being run and how, how much each of the seven of us are running our mouths off and, and, you know, collecting our thoughts in a clear and concise way versus starting to ramble, which is what I'm doing right now. So I, and I do think for, for the concern of public transparency and access, that it does make sense for us to start later on the day as to, for example, making our, our public meetings Tuesday during the day thing. So I would accept some leeway away from the 4:30 time slot. If we were to start at 4:00 or 3:30 or even 3:00, I, I, I could see that being acceptable. I wouldn't, I wouldn't presume that that means we're going to get out of here any earlier, because I haven't noticed that in our digital sessions, and we now start at 3:00 and go straight through, and we're having meetings just as long as some of the ones we used to have in the council chamber. So I think those are separate issues, really, honestly. I do like, I absolutely understand what Mr. McCarthy was saying about if we, if we put that break in there, it's kind of like a, you know, a pressure break. It, it just, it resets things a little bit, provides people a chance to eat, and then what's most important about that is that the, the public knows, okay, if, if, if they want to speak on an agenda item that's during the work session period, they can tune in at the beginning of that and, and sort of calibrate things that way. If we had a much better way of calibrating exactly when agenda items are going to come up, we could probably move to a continuous fashion, but I don't think, I think we should have that break. I think we should work hard and agree with each other that we need to be that we need to be succinct and efficient and prepared, right? But be that as it may, we're still going to have some of those meetings that just require a lot of conversation before we get to that consensus, and I don't think that's a function of when we start.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember McCarthy has a comment?
Well, first of all, this is a great conversation. Thank you. I'll stand by my idea that we should have two meetings for the reasons I already stated, and what I'm thinking is, maybe we should start the big meeting at 5:00, because the first few things are not usually critical items anyway, and that would give time, even if somebody got off work at 5:00, they could still, you know, chime in by the time that we get to the heavy stuff. So, I would suggest that we start the first meeting at 3:00 and the main meeting at 5:00, but if there's a week where the first meeting agenda is very short, we could change it to 3:30. But I think 3:00 might be better in that most of the meetings, you know, the old, the 4:30 meetings, they would run right up to the 6:00 meeting, and we only had like five minutes to eat dinner or whatever. So, I'd suggest 3:00 with the understanding that they could be at 3:30 if there's a very short agenda, and then, the main meeting at 5:00. But I'm open-minded. I'm flexible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. I think we're going to have to codify it, though, whether it's going to be 3:00 p.m. or 3:30 into the actual rules and procedure as opposed to having that flexible.
If that's the case, and that does make sense, I would suggest 3:00, because I'd rather have an extra half hour than to be scurrying around and not hardly even having time to go to the bathroom. So, 3:00.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy, and I do like that suggestion. Councilmember Sweet has a question?
I was wondering, moving forward, it sounds like we're equipping the chambers with cameras to keep streaming our meetings live, even though we are going back in person at some point. Is that the case? That might affect my decision.
Mayor, I can jump in briefly.
Yes, please do.
Yes, the chambers are equipped for live streaming, and they will be upgraded, so it will continue to function with live streaming and, in fact, will be better. Over time, and it's a work in progress as we speak, we will be looking to equip both the council staff, the council conference room, which is in the back of the chambers, as well as the staff conference room upstairs for live streaming and enhanced audio/video as well. So, all of the infrastructure is going to be improved, but to directly answer your question, Councilmember Sweet, yes, the council chambers are set up for live streaming.
Thank you. I guess I just, in my mind, was thinking if we had a hybrid of in-person and still offered what we're doing now, if that would help the community be able to gauge where we are in the meetings and have participation. I don't know where my mind's going, but just trying to accommodate maybe our needs along with the community better. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Mayor Daggett?
Thank you, Mayor. I decided to go ahead and ask my question, and my question is along the lines of what Councilmember Sweet just asked. Will we maintain the ability for the public to have a public comment telephonically when we're back in council chambers?
I will jump in at the risk of being corrected by somebody from our IT department. I believe the answer is yes, that we will try to accommodate virtual appearances, and all of this would be subject to future council discussion. Again, these are your meetings, so we want to hear how you would like to have them conducted. If we have somebody from IT who can speak to the technology question that was just asked, that would be great.
I do think one benefit of being online like we have been is that the public has, the public who has internet access, has an increased access to commenting on items on our agendas when they couldn't maybe get a babysitter and, you know, come down to City Hall. So, if we could do that hybrid, I think that that would be a boost to public participation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I am in agreement on that. Let's get to getting with the meeting time and see if we can nail this one down and go on to the other parts of the procedure. Councilmember Shimoney, comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm good with 3:00 and 5:00, as Councilmember McCarthy said.
Excellent. I'm also in agreement for a 3:00 p.m. start for routine items and 5:00 p.m. for general, our general meeting. And I did see a thumbs up from Vice Mayor. Councilmember Sweet?
And I just wanted, sorry, I just wanted to say that I agree with that.
Excellent. Councilmember Salas?
Yes, on 3:00 and 5:00.
Excellent. Councilmember Aslan?
I am okay with that. I think coupled with this, we should also have a conversation. Sterling, you can help us with the language here, but we have a clause that allows us to discuss ending, adjourning early. Currently, under the suspended rules, I believe that, I believe that vote needs to take place at 9:30 or thereafter when the previous agenda item runs up. I do think we should keep that in place, and I don't know what time that would be at, though.
Mayor and council, and Councilmember Aslan, specific to your question, right now, it is at 9:30 or when the agenda item next ends, you know? So, if you're on an agenda item that started before 9:30, you finish that out, and then, the chair of the meeting, the mayor, calls for a motion to continue the agenda, either portions of it or as posted, and if no such motion is made, the meeting is immediately adjourned. If council wished to make an alteration to that time, this, you know, would be the time to make that change.
Excellent. Well, thank you, City Attorney. Director Perry of IT has stated that we will have the technology for call-in comments if that is desired when the day comes that we can be meeting in person. Excellent. Well-
I assume that, I assume that technology extends to council members. We might be bobbleheads at our desk on a screen more often than we had the opportunity to do so in the past, right? I mean, we can, we can attend remotely when that's necessary moving forward. That's a question.
Yeah, Mr. Santana, if you'd like to speak to that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. We will have the capability. It's absolutely within our technical means. As City Manager stated, it's a bit more direction, of course, if council would like, type of thing that would be the formality, you know, as far as the final decision. But yes, absolutely, the technology will exist to have both in-person and virtual for the public and for council and city members, of course.
Thank you, Mr. Santana. City Manager?
Just a quick echo. I think this is one of the things that will emerge from COVID that will be quite beneficial for all of us, and that is to make things easier for people to attend meetings remotely when they want to do so. So, I know it's a council decision. I'm not backtracking on what I just said a moment ago. We will be awaiting your word on that, but I do think it's something that people are becoming accustomed to now, virtually attending meetings, and I think it's of great benefit. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, City Manager.
I definitely think we should codify that flexibility.
Yeah, would that need to be put into our rules and procedures to make that happen, or would that be something separate that council would be discussing at a later time?
Or to make it permissible up to, you know, three or four times in a row or something, or maybe every once in a while, it's important to be there in person. It turns out that these things need to be written down, because eventually, there's always the possibility of potential abuse or just confusion around what's, where the boundaries are on that.
City Attorney, maybe you could clarify. Isn't already in the procedures that the council members can reach in telephonically?
Mayor, council, under the state law, council members could call in to council meetings, but they can participate via electronic means. However, specific to our rules and procedure, and Stacy, I'll look to you on this. I don't recall anything mentioned specifically, and if I'm wrong on that, I apologize.
Thank you, Sterling. I do not believe that there is anything currently codified within the rules of procedure that relate to either electronic means, telephonic, but it is certainly something that we can add if that is the desire of council, you know, to Councilmember Aslan's comments about, you know, if you want to set parameters on so many meetings can be attended virtually. I mean, that's completely up to the council and how they would like to put that sort of rule in place.
Right. Well, personally, I don't think we need to put a restriction on it at this time in terms of number of meetings, and feel free to chime in, councilmembers. I think this year, we've shown that people are in attendance, we're working well electronically, and I don't see that necessarily we need to put restrictions on the number of times we zoom in versus are there in person, but I can open that up to other councilmembers if they think differently than that. Since it is already allowed with our state laws, I guess we're only really talking about would we be putting in restrictions for the number of times we can be tapping in electronically. Councilmember Shimoney?
Mayor, I don't see any issue with that. I just want to verbalize that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. And these are also things we can bring up at a later time, too. This can, you know, we can bring up some rules and procedures if we foresee any issues occurring when we do open up. Councilmember Aslan?
Yeah, I agree. I don't see any issues with it right now, and it is important to remember, we can revisit this if need should arise.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Councilmember. Well, to get back, let's get to some of the procedurals that city staff has suggested. I do believe we have direction on changing the times from at 3:00 p.m. and 5:00 p.m. and no longer doing it continuous. Regarding the phrase for the league meeting that we can do the third or the fourth Tuesday in August for starting back up, I see no problem with that. As council in agreement that we can add in that, Councilmember Aslan, for clarification?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mayor. I agree with the adding for that flexibility in August. My question was just with regards to the way that you had phrased your most recent statement, that our meetings will no longer be continuous. My understanding is that we're under suspension of those rules right now, and so, what we're doing today isn't what we're talking about. We're talking about the normal rules of operation. Once we, as a body, have decided that it's okay for us to start meeting back in person and reinstate the normal operating rules, that's when these new ideas would come into effect.
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, but, so, correct me if I'm wrong, City Attorney, but yeah, we would have to go to put up a separate vote to rescind the section that was lifted during COVID, and then, at that time, it would then refer to what rules and procedures we're discussing and trying to settle on today. Is that correct, city staff?
Correct.
Okay, so this is what, we're, today, we're talking about the baseline, and we'll have to have a separate vote to go back to the rules and procedures as written, as we are writing.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that was clear to everybody here, so anyone listening.
So, Mayor and Councilmember Aslan and the entire council, I apologize. To elaborate a little more on that, you are just changing the rules. That's what you're doing here today. At that point, going back and basically lifting the suspension of the rules or rescinding the action you took to lift the suspend, or to suspend the rules with respect to that one specifically, would be a separate matter.
Excellent. All right, so I think we have just direction from the thumbs up I saw to be adding in the third or fourth Tuesday of August to accommodate. Third one I saw was adding a different section for legislative update. I think that is a great idea, so we can all keep our fingers on the pulse of what's going on, as well as allow for any council member who might want to do a letter for a particular bill or something to that effect to be able to bring up in a formal matter. So, I did see a couple thumbs up. Do we have any other concerns from council or comments regarding the legislative update addition?
I have a comment.
Yeah, Councilmember.
So, my concern is, I feel like I've seen this happen before when we've had legislative updates. I don't know that we need to go through every single bill every week, and before I support putting this on the agenda as its own item, I would like a little bit more clarification on exactly what that would entail, because this is work for staff. It's work for our consultant and our lobbyist, and it should be, I would like relatively strong assurances that we're going to keep this to what's relevant and on topic and what's, you know, what's urgent.
Certainly legitimate concern. So, City Manager, do you want to speak to that?
Well, thank you, and I would invite Mayor, if Sarah Langley wants to speak to it, she's welcome to jump in as well. That's a very good point, and I would hope that that's exactly what the vision is here, that council is just apprised of new legislation that may be of interest and has an opportunity to have, or council can also share legislation that they know of that would be of interest. There's been an example of that of recent, and that whoever is presenting, and that will be our intergub most of the time, maybe with the accompaniment of our lobbyists from time to time, you know, they would just be giving you updates on things that are relevant. It's also likely that you'll have a working sheet of the legislation, so you can always have, make reference to what's going on, but we would not be going through it in detail. I don't know if Ms. Langley is with us, Sarah, you are, if you're free to jump in here and share your thoughts.
Hey, Greg, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This is Sarah Langley, management analyst. Yeah, just echoing Greg's comments, I don't think it would be a formal update every week. It would be more of a kind of Q&amp;A, to-from kind of session where council can just, you know, voice anything they're hearing about and, you know, get updates from Todd and myself as needed. I think we would also cancel the update if nothing was pressing that week, so there wouldn't be an expectation that it would be every week. It's just more of a placeholder on the agenda so that when things do come up, which has been quite frequently lately, we're able to get in front of you quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Langley. Councilmember McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with that discussion we just had, and would also point out that it probably doesn't make sense to talk about COVID every couple weeks for an hour. We could probably just hit the highlights and anything that's new, so cover the news, but don't go over like every little detail. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Any other comments regarding the legislative update in particular, so we can give clear direction? All right. I'm in favor of, and it does sound like we have council direction for adding the legislative update into the rules and procedures. Correct me if I'm wrong, council.
Silence is consent.
Yes. All right, excellent. No on time, okay, the time limit change. Ms. Salzberg, could you please pull up the suggestions you had if there's one? I just want to make sure I'm getting- I just want to make sure I'm getting through them all. In particular, I wanted to see the time limit change wording again, if you could get that.
Mayor, when you say time limit change, is that this here?
No, the one where it's one hour for participants.
Oh, I gotcha. Okay, just one second.
Versus mayor giving us more flexibility is my understanding.
Is this the one you're you're speaking to?
Yes, that's the one. I'm rereading it here. Counsel, if you have any comments on this particular item, please add in here. Uh, councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, um, the the language in the agenda attachment is probably the best to look at in terms of the the revised language that's being proposed, but basically shows that rather than 10 minutes for staff than 10 minutes for the developer or the the applicant. It gives you more flexibility to limit that time to a larger amount. And please correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Salzberg, but it basically it then says the same amount of time will be allotted to the applicant. So it's just kind of increasing flexibility around the presentation time allotment, if that makes sense. So I feel comfortable with it. Increase what other people think, but I think it's fine.
Um, and who who may, who is the individual who or would it be council together that would set those time limits?
Right, Stacy?
Mayor, council, it would actually be the city council that would that could set those time limits. Yep, it's up to you.
I'm just curious, would every time that a presentation come before council, you would say survey the council, or how would that work?
So this would only apply to public hearings, and it's it's really at the at the forefront of the item, and Sterling certainly jump in here. If you want to put a time limit on that presentation, you can do so. I I wouldn't necessarily open it up each time we had a a public hearing to ask about that. One of the things that would be really helpful for staff in these in these particular instances and and kind of speaks to our conversation a little earlier about the review of the draft agenda. If council would like to see a time limit, the sooner we know and can alert the applicant, the better they'll be prepared as well. So again, it was something that we just haven't adhered to in the past, and so we wanted to provide a little more flexibility.
Thank you. Uh, city attorney and then councilmember Aslan?
Actually, the city clerk put it best. I think that the important thing is that you know ahead of time, you know, what your anticipated time limits are going to be and that the applicant be advised of that well in advance. I think that's helpful. What is in the what is in the rules and procedure right now is something that we have not been, you know, keeping close adherence to, and that's the reason for the suggestion here. And I I agree that if if you want to, rather than poll each time before, you know, if council wants to set a new time limit right now in there and say this is what it's going to be, and it's going to be in writing, and we're going to stick to it, you can do that. But I think as long as we understand that it's going to need to be communicated to each applicant and staff prior to the meeting, if you're not going to make a a set number on behind each one of those portions of the presentation in public here.
All right, thank you. And then sorry, city manager Clifton, do you have a comment on this?
Just a quick echo of what's been stated. I believe this becomes a very effective tool for council, and you'll know it when you see it. When there's a hearing and and a packed chambers, that is when time allotments could and and should be considered. Most of the time, mayor and council, I don't think it's going to be a factor. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Uh, councilmember Aslan?
Sterling?
City attorney, did you need to jump in?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I appreciate that. The mayor and council, the one thing I would suggest is obviously when you when you have a packed chamber, I think you have to be pretty careful with that. You want to afford people the opportunity to speak, but at the same time, you know, you can't take until 4:00 a.m., so you'll just have to gauge that.
Thank you. Uh, councilmember Aslan?
Yeah, well, I guess I'm a little confused. I'm I I haven't seen this be much of an issue in the past, but we know that these rules, these time limits come into being because some other council in the past was dealing with issues and found this as a way to address it. If we're interested in our meetings not going till 10, 11, or 12:00 p.m., then we need to use the tool of capping the amount of time that people talk and keeping that relatively short. You know, people will fill the time that they're allotted, so especially I I'm guessing, you know, public presenters and developers are gonna are gonna try to make the best argument they can, and they will, if we give them an hour, they'll use the whole hour. If we give them 10 minutes, they will figure out a way to give us the information in 10 minutes. And I don't know that we want to be policing that too closely, but we do. If we're going to do it once, we need to be doing it all the time, just in terms of equity and making sure that we're there's no perception of being loose with the rules with one group while, you know, utilizing the the tools at our disposal to sort of tighten down conversation on the other end. So whatever we do, we need to be consistent. I would like to keep the time limits to the shorter side of things. I think brevity is it works and people get right to the point, and then we can move on and we can respect each other's time and the public's time as well with that. So I'm not sure where that lands us, but if we're going to have time limits, we shouldn't let them get too lengthy.
Thank you, councilmember. Uh, councilmember Shimonie?
Thank you, mayor, and thank you, councilmember Aslan. I I too agree, and I'm wondering, you know, leadership, like, have we really had issues with a 10-minute limit? Maybe we haven't been enforcing it, but I I I do feel like 10 minutes has been ample time to communicate plus Q and A, right? Plus Q and A is a big question mark as to how long that takes. But 10 minutes for the presentation, I I feel like has been working. Please correct me if I'm wrong, leadership, but I think I think the 10 minutes makes sense.
Good. Uh, councilmember McCarthy?
Yes, thank you, mayor. Well, here's another option. Maybe we could have in our rules a time limit of, say, 10 or 15 minutes, whatever. But then have a stipulation that if there is a vote of the council, that we could, you know, grant another 10 minutes or something. The other thing is that some of these, like if we're doing a complicated zoning change, it may take more than 10 minutes for staff to go through its presentation. Or and it might be legitimate to have the applicant have more than 10 minutes in some cases, depending on how complicated it is. So my suggestion to toss around is put a leave a limit in there, but have a relief valve, so to speak, where we could grant more time, and that could be done in the meeting, or it could be done a week ahead. It's like, hey, this one's going to be a real hard one, so we're going to give 20 minutes to each party or whatever, and that could be done during the agenda review a week ahead. Just the thought. I'll listen to if anybody else likes that idea.
Thank you, councilmember McCarthy. I, oh, Ms. Salzberg, has a comment?
Thanks, mayor. I just wanted to point out that what is currently in the rules is exactly what councilmember McCarthy was speaking about. So a 10-minute time limit, except with specific council permission to exceed. So that would certainly, we could just keep that language if that is what council would like to to see.
Thank you. I personally like the 10-minute limit with the ability to extend with council permission, and that is something that I would like to more also enforce in a in a fair manner, so that way we we time it, we make sure it is, so that way we can have efficient meetings as well as have that release valve if we need more time. Councilmember Aslan?
I agree. I don't think we should make any changes to the rules on this one. And just to specify, too, I I think I think the real culprit here is the council body. We tend to get loquacious and talkative, and we like to ask questions, and this is particularly noticeable when, you know, the packet hasn't been read or prepared ahead of time. So a lot of these issues go away if we're prepared and our questions have been sent to staff ahead of time, et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you, councilmember. Yeah, I think I will note that I did notice that we do have a a rule and procedure when we ourselves are getting a little too long-winded, that after one hour, correct me, is it's one hour, after one hour of a single agenda item, we are granted each council member only three minutes at a time to comment. So that might be something, now that I'm reading it more thoroughly, that we could also utilize potentially if we are a little getting a little too loquacious unto ourselves. So yeah, there it is. Shall limit their subsequent remarks to three minutes. So, well, going back here, uh, city attorney has a comment?
Thank you, mayor, mayor and council. I will point out that that's not the length of the total item. That's the length of council discussion on the item. Once the discussion is turned to council, that's the way I read that rule. If any of you disagree, obviously, I'm willing to listen to that.
And and it has taken an hour before. I've been part of conversations that have at least gone an hour during discussion. It happens.
Excellent. Well, I think we have staff direction then for that we're not going to be changing the time limit and that I will be mindful about enforcing or being preemptive with all of us a week earlier, so we can discuss if there is one of the P and Z big presentations that we really need to a lot more time to. Ms. Salzberg, have we gotten to the main suggestions thus far that presented to staff?
Thus far, we have there. There is the one change in section 7.03, where we talked about removing that second paragraph and really incorporating it just into this, you know, discussion about public participation. So we're just kind of taking this second paragraph and and working it into this these sections here, and if council's okay with that, we can include that in our in our edits.
Yeah, personally, I think that that's more fitting. It's discussing the public participation and therefore putting it under public hearings and so forth seems an appropriate edit. Uh, council, any concerns?
Mr. Mayor? Um, item 902C. I just want to make sure that language is included there. It specifies that the 10 people who identify they're with a a group that's going to allow an individual to speak for longer are then excluded from being able to speak themselves on that topic. Definitely seen some abuse of that in the past. And you know, we usually just ask people to stand up, and it's hard to do a roll count on that. And then you might find that one of those or more than one of those individuals will later attempt public comment on their own, which isn't in the spirit of the item. So how is that laid out in the language there?
Councilmember Aslan, we've got a a note here that, you know, the 10 persons must be listed on the card. They must be present at the time the comment is given, and they're asked to identify themselves by standing. And then here's, I think, the language you're looking for. They are precluded from making comments on the same topic, but may participate in any other agendized topics up to the limit addressed in section 7.03.
Well, it's definitely there, but I've I've seen this anyway. Maybe it's just a note to our new mayor to to keep an eye on that. When these things arise, once we're back in the council chambers, it could be kind of tricky to do an accounting of who's raising their hand on behalf of another speaker and then trying to go and speak on top of that double dip, so to speak.
Thank you, councilmember. Do we have another? Uh, councilmember McCarthy, a comment?
Uh, thank you, mayor. The my thought on this paragraph that we're just talking about is how will we handle this if people are attending electronically, which we previously said that we'd be willing to let people do in the future? So they wouldn't be able to stand up, or maybe they can, you know, do a thumbs up on the video or something. I don't know that they'd be on video. They'd only be on phone, I think. So just something to think about.
And if I may, mayor, I can try to address that. So we have not had that happen yet in our virtual setting, but the way I kind of foresee that happening is is the person that's respect or, you know, requesting to speak and asking for that additional time would have to identify those individuals in their email that that is sent. And then through that email, we can eliminate those folks who may ask to speak on that same topic. Those requests come in that way. So we we would, as staff, be able to eliminate those commenters, but definitely a challenge that we would need to address as far as identifying those 10 people, because we do take comments telephonically. They wouldn't necessarily even be showing up on the screen. So definitely a consideration. I think we can manage it from a additional speaker standpoint, but it's that identification piece that we would need just a little more thought on.
Thank you for your answer on that. Well thought out.
So mayor, I think the only item that I show outstanding is the last, the addition of the the new section as it relates to lobbying meetings and our lobbying trips.
Lynn, yes, um, councilmember McCarthy, I think, has some comments on this.
I do, if I can get all my buttons pushed here correctly. I actually have two kinds of comments. One is, if we're going to include this, I have some specific edits, not to change the intent, but to improve the wording. But my first comments, I would like to talk about, let us think about if we want to do this. And the first thing that comes to mind is, and I will answer this in very general terms, why do we even have this? Well, incidentally, this rule has been in practice, even though it hasn't been written written down. Since I've been on council, it's been informally enforced. And the reason that we want two or more council members at a meeting is there was an incident with a certain council member, and this is a person that has not been on council for a long time, and I don't need to mention names, but they attended a meeting in Washington, D.C., where they very strongly mishandled the meetings to the point where congressmen were actually calling the city here and saying, hey, we have a problem here. That's why we have this rule, in case anybody wants to know. Now I'll get to the part about, well, do we want this rule or not? And without taking sides, mostly, I will take sides eventually, but for now, just to talk about it openly. I've been on one lobbying trip to Washington, D.C., and one to Phoenix as a council member. And we had the mayor and we had two council members and several staff people. And there were more congresspeople that wanted to talk to us than we had council members. So what we did is we split up, like the mayor went and talked to Congressman A, and I went to Congressman B, and Congressman C talked to the third council member. So in effect, we split up. Well, at the time, in all honesty, it worked very well because we were able to cover more ground with congresspeople, and of course, that is the whole reason that we go there is to have these meetings. So if we institute this rule, it may handicap us on being efficient. On the other hand, we don't want this type of situation that I mentioned one time with a council member years ago. So that's something to talk about. So, that's something to talk about. And then I had some specific wording changes. Maybe I'll go through those now. And Stacy, I don't know if you have my comments to put up on the screen, but...
I sure do.
Well, the first thing I want to do is delete the word annual because, well, we may go three times a year. So, the word annual actually adds nothing. And the way it's worded now, it has to be two council members. It couldn't be three. So, I'm changing it to at least two council members must be in attendance at any meetings with state. And I want to change that to or federal representatives, because I think that's the intent. Now, I wanted to raise the concern, or the words, where any city, state or federal business is discussed. Why would I want to add that? Well, I'll just mention that I usually attend the Eagle Scout Board of Reviews as Mr. Charlie Odegaard used to do. And oftentimes, Representative Bob Thorpe would show up to those. So, here we are at an Eagle Scout Court of Honor and we'd be in violation of this rule just because a state representative showed up, even though we weren't talking about any business. Another one I'll point out is one time I was on an airplane and Senator McCain just happened to sit right next to me. This was on my honeymoon. So, I would be in violation just because Senator McCain happened to get a seat next to me. So, I'd have to go to the stewardess and say, which would might be insulting to Senator McCain or whoever that senator is now, and would be very inconvenient for the airline. So, I guess that's why I added the words, where any city, state or federal business is discussed. In other words, if Mr. Thorpe sat next to me and we didn't discuss city business, hey, no harm done. Okay, then the next sentence was kind of confusing, so I just reworded it, not to change the intent, but the new wording is, when the city council participates in, took the word annual out, state or federal lobbying trips, the mayor or council member designee, in other words, I presume the designee has to be a council member, but I'm not sure, will accompany two other council members and ultimately staff. And the words, on each trip is probably superfluous. So, there's the wording I'm suggesting. So, there's really two questions I have for council. Do we want this rule at all? And if we do, are you willing to accept my edits?
Thank you, councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you for the time.
Councilmember Shimoney?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and add my comments. I think that this is a good rule to put into paper. We've been doing this for a while since I've been elected and I think it holds us as electeds accountable to represent the city at large. And I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good thing to do, so I support that. And to councilmember McCarthy's edits, I think they're good. And my understanding was before that if city business wasn't being discussed, then there was no harm done before as well. So, I guess you put that into paper and that, that works for me. I'm not too sure how often we have a quorum of folks meeting with lobbyists or representation, I mean. But, yeah, we could say at least two council members must be in attendance. And I think that the idea of allowing for the council to split up or the, you know, elected body to split up if necessary to divide and conquer a efforts. I think if the members involved were to all agree that that's a good idea, then I, I think that'd be okay. But I think, you know, whether it's locally, statewide or nationally, if we're talking to our representation, there should be three of us and we should plan for that and expect that. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Shimoney.
Can I just make a quick clarification? The way it works now is two of us. So, is two adequate or do we actually need three?
The way you wrote it is two of us, right?
Yes.
Yeah, at least two.
I don't know.
Let's go to city manager Clifton or city clerk. Do you have clarification on this before we go to vice mayor?
I stand to be corrected by the city clerk, but I believe the discussion that occurred last year was the mayor plus two. And the way the rule reads now, as councilmember McCarthy walked us through it, the mayor can delegate for, for somebody to replace him or her, so then it would be three council members. Stacy, am I correct on that?
Yes, you are correct on that. And the intent behind that is to not get ourselves in a situation where we have a quorum of council in attendance.
Yeah, the, well, I'll go to the comments from the rest of council, starting with vice mayor.
Thank you, mayor. What if, I totally support this and I remember why this was instituted and I'm wondering if, if there are three council members, you know, including the mayor on a trip and they need to split up, could it be just two people? So, it could be a staff person and a council member? I mean, because, because really I think that that's the important thing is to have two representatives from the city who are able to, you know, record what was said and...
I like that suggestion, vice mayor. Sorry, go ahead, Ms. Saltzberg.
Thank you, mayor. So, are you perhaps suggesting that this be changed to at least two council members? Or maybe staff? We can play with that a little bit when we bring it back for, for approval.
So, at least one council member and then another, whether it's a second council member or whether it's a member of staff?
I don't know about that. I'm really like, mayor, if I may?
Yes, of course, but...
I'm just thinking, you know, the, the relationship between council people and staff is, in my personal experience, been very, very good and positive. But I sense that there could be a power dynamic there. And we could have instances where a staff person, for whatever reason, just defers out of respect or whatever to what a council person is doing. I think you need a second council person in attendance, as well as a staff person, just to make sure that everybody's on the same message and that nobody's personal agenda is being advanced in, as a replacement of what we've all been sent to such and such place to accomplish. I, I think there's a legitimate concern about that sort of thing happening and this is why we've had to set this up in the past. I, I, I wouldn't want to mess with it too much. And I, I think whenever a council person needs to speak about city business, they shouldn't be doing it alone on a lobbying trip.
Thank you. Councilmember Salas?
Thank you. I agree with councilmember Aslan. I remember almost two years now, on a state lobbying trip, there were four of us. So, that constituted a quorum. So, we had the county attorney, sorry, the city attorney, Mr. Solomon with us on the trip. But then also during the course of lobbying, we also had to divide mayor and council member to speak to, to, to state legislators at the same time. So, you just have to be mindful if we're adding more than two council member plus mayor is we will require the assistance, a presence of our attorney. And then on the, the last line, the last sentence that says, that states, talks about an established rotation, I see the value of the rotation, as we've discussed in past councils, is to give an opportunity for new council members to participate in a lobbying trip. So, we kind of established like, you know, the mayor and then an experienced council member and a new council member to be on the trip. However, there were, there was an instant that we particularly chosen council members to go on a trip to, to represent the city because they were specific to rear the flag, like the trip to the BNSF in, out of state. So, there are some instances where we don't follow the established rotation, but we will be sending representative from council, from council who can fully represent us depending on the goal of the trip. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Salas. Councilmember Sweet?
Thank you. I would also like to agree with Aslan, or councilmember Aslan. Thank you for bringing that up. I do think that having two council members would be beneficial for reasons that you stated. Thank you. I'm, I'm okay with it. Other than that, thank you.
All right, just to chime in here, I'm good with the, at least two council members. I don't think we should be requiring it to be three. As others hadn't potentially mentioned, I would be concerned if, for example, lobbying trip was set up and then all of a sudden there's a medical emergency and now we just restricted ourselves so heavily with three council members in the same room for any discussion with federal or state. I think that would get too restrictive. The two council members for, in attendance, I think is more appropriate rather than a city council member and a member of staff. And, and I do like Ms. Salas's suggestion that we can reserve the right to select a council member outside the rotation or potentially that anyone in the rotation can forego their spot for and, you know, give it to another council member as necessary. So, however medium we want to do to make that decision, I think it's, yeah, it's a point, especially if we're meeting with those that have established relationships with certain particular council members. So, that is my two cents on that. Council, do we, or city staff, do we have enough direction or what clarifications would you need regarding this?
Thank you, mayor. I actually do have one quick clarification. I believe I've heard direction. I, I heard the possibility of adding, you know, a member of staff to be included with this two council members. But I don't know that I heard a majority of council on that one.
Councilmember Aslan has a comment?
Yeah, sorry if I'm bouncing back away from what you were just talking about, Stacy. In terms of Mrs. Salas or councilmember Salas's suggestion, that's, which is right now highlighted there towards the end. I think I'd be open to that, but I would want to make it a super majority of council overriding the rotation. I, I think that the strategic importance of going outside of that, especially if it's because of a particular relationship that a council person has with another member of an elected body, I actually think that's pretty problematic. And while contextually, there could be reasons to supersede the normal rotation, it should be something that's discussed by council and it should only be allowed to proceed with the super majority, in my opinion. I think that's sort of a compromise between not changing it at all and making the change. So, that's just instinctively the way I'm thinking about it.
Thank you, councilmember. The other thing, I guess, yeah, I, I would be fine with the super majority aspect of this. And the other option to add on there might be, or some of the fact, or if the individual in that rotation decides to forego their seat for another.
Well, I believe a council person can always decline the offer to go.
And then it just goes into the whoever's next in the rotation?
I, I think that's the way it works. At least I hope it is.
I think that would make sense to just move into the next person on the rotation if, if the one is unable to go.
Okay, that's fine then. Then we can leave it at that, rather than somebody foregoing their spot. We'll just keep it at that super majority. Councilmember Shimoney has a comment?
Thank you, mayor. I'm okay with the discussion so far. I guess I'm still a little confused, Stacy. It says at least two councilmembers, staff must be in attendance at any meeting with state and federal representatives. My understanding was that it was two members of council plus the mayor. What, what am I missing?
Thank you, councilmember Shimoney. This would be, so the two council members would be for just meetings that happen outside of our regular lobbying trips. Now, when we talk about going to Washington DC or to, down to the state, that is when we would have the mayor and two council members attend. Does that help clarify?
So, local meetings that occur, that are kind of one-ots, would basically require at least two council members or a mayor and a council member?
I think we could just say two, two council members, including the mayor, if, if... As one of those, or, so perhaps we could just say at least two members of council, perhaps.
That works for me. Thank you.
City manager has a comment?
Just to clarify, the, the scenario, councilmember Shimoney, that was referenced here, and I think it's a good one, is it takes the mayor plus at least one council member, preferably two, to make the trip. But during the trip, there may be cause for less than three to be able to meet with a delegate. The, the reason for the rule that you're reading is that in no instance shall there be less than two. But it's not an outright requirement that all who make the trip have to be in every office when, when the meetings occur. Thank you.
And my follow-up, so mayor, I know you have a lot of conversations with our, our elected body at the state and federal level. So, would that mean that, you know, mayor and a rotating council member would be joining those calls with you, mayor, moving forward? Is that, is that your understanding?
That's something that I was going to need clarification on because, I mean, we, if I'm in the, you know, in the Arizona Mayors Association and somebody is there, for example, I was in with superintendent Hoffman with a bunch of mayors just last week, would this now prevent me from doing so in my official capacity on these boards?
Mayor, I, and Sterling and Greg can jump in with their thoughts as well. I don't believe that this would preclude you from participating in those capacities. You know, you're, you're there representing as a mayor of Flagstaff and I don't believe that that was the intent of this particular provision.
Thank you. City attorney?
Actually, I see city manager Clifton chiming in first. I'll let him go first.
You're so kind. Thank you, city attorney. Yeah, I think the operative word in this is lobbying trips. I, I see that in the language and I think, mayor, that the point you, you made is a good one and I would add to it, there's going to be other meetings where you're surrounded by other elected officials and you may very well be talking about city business or even state and federal business, but you're not there to lobby. And, and I would make that distinction. Sterling can correct me on that.
No, I'll say ditto. Lobbying trip is what determines this, the application of this rule.
Okay, great. That's, that's good. I think... Um, I think Councilmember McCarthy has pulled his comment. So I, the one thing I would change or needing the clarification is that first sentence, I don't see why a member of staff would be absolutely necessary if we do have two council members in there um to be in a in attention, in attendance with those specific meetings, but I'll uh open that up to the other members of council. I do believe that two members is sufficient.
All right, I'm not seeing any further comment from council, so um I guess if we could slash that unless otherwise noted, um, then we can just keep it at at least two members of council must be in attendance at any meeting with state, et cetera, et cetera. And I do see Councilmember McCarthy just put in agree in the chat box. All right, uh, City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and City Clerk, then, did we get direction to use Councilmember McCarthy's edits?
Thanks, Sterling. Um, I believe I've been kind of editing on the fly within his suggested edit, so this is, this is ultimately what we, the direction that I've heard on this particular section.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Mayor, that's the only, um, those are all of my items that I brought forward. Um, so unless there's anything else that the council would like to uh discuss, I will work all of these uh points into a final draft of the rules of procedure, and we'll bring it back to council for your uh final review and adoption.
Uh, thank you, City Clerk. Councilmember Shimoney has a comment?
Thank you, Mayor. I was gonna move on to another topic under this agenda item. Is that good, is that okay?
Yeah, we're, we're at that part.
Okay, so under seven point zero one, which is decorum and order amongst council members, the chair, uh, and it goes into this whole paragraph, I'm just wondering if council and mayor, if you would be open to a um adjustment to this that gives it a little bit more teeth? Because a lot, what it's saying is that the question of order is determined by the mayor. And so my question is, if the mayor determines that the decorum is acceptable and council majority doesn't feel like that's a good call, uh, there's no, there's no guardrails for the council to push back. Um, and I'm not saying that that's gonna happen again. I really, really hope it doesn't, and I know you do, you don't want that to happen to either mayor, um, and we spoke about this, but I think it's important that we have some guardrails in place just as a plan B. Um, and so I'm thinking something along the lines of if, you know, a majority of council um agrees that the decorum is not being complied with, that, and maybe McCarthy can help with the language here, but, but basically that um a majority can vote to base, to basically allow the vice mayor to chair the rest of that agenda item, and then bringing it back to you, Mayor, on that next agenda item moving forward. So basically, just kind of putting the vice mayor in as the chair's role, uh, when decorum is, is out of line, um, by the, by the chair. Does that make sense?
Councilmember, I just wanted to add that if if the the council would like to see this, well, we will definitely wordsmith this. We don't need to do that on the fly, but we can work on that um on the backend.
Because the way it's written now, Mayor and council, is that, you know, if if the decorum, the decorum is a judgment call by yourself, Mayor, and um, and I just think that we need to have uh just some, some level of ability to, of accountability to, you know, have a plan, plan B in case that the majority of council doesn't agree. Uh, that's all I'm saying here. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Uh, well, we do have the uh, City Attorney, if you could speak to this, the ability for uh city council members to vote to go into recess, um, and the ability to stop the meeting um i- if necessary, uh, could you speak to that, City Attorney?
That is correct. Any council member can make a motion to recess at any time. Uh, there are also motions to table an item or motions to postpone an item. In addition, um, there's also the uh right of the council to appeal a decision of the chair. That is more in line with procedural decisions, uh, obviously, but uh if that fit, that is under rule point eight point oh one.
That's what I was looking for.
And it has a very specific um manner in which it plays out, even specific wording that the chair has to use about whether or not the ruling of the chair will be sustained.
Right, and and Mayor, I knew about those, and I think that those are good to have in our back pockets as a council to go into recess or to postpone a conversation to a later date, but I I don't see anything in here that says, you know, if if something like last week happens again, Mayor, um, even a recess, I don't think would have done it. You know, I think that we should have put vice mayor in the chair seat and let vice mayor chair the conversation to protect the city's integrity and our relationships. And there's just nothing like that in our, in our meeting. And I don't know if next, like playing, you know, backseat quarterback, right? Um, I don't think that postponing the meeting would have been what I would have wanted us to do either. I just think that we needed to, you know, demonstrate a certain level of decorum that wasn't being that, not certainly lived last week, but uh I think that, I think that my comments make sense, at least in my mind, for us to implement.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Aslan?
Yeah, I was almost gonna withdraw my question, but I I guess I'll just be more pointed with Sterling. Do you think that the, 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 the appeal, the process for appeal in section eight point oh one is sufficient to cover the scenario that Councilmember Shimoney is bringing up? I mean, uh, my understanding is that if a majority of council uh suggests a path forward, even just for a specific agenda item that may or may not include um having the presider of the meeting um go take a break, uh, that we, we could do that under the current structure. I just, I don't want to be adding language when, when it's, you know, um, not relevant or
Oh, no, no, I appreciate, yeah, I'll let you finish.
No, I'm, I can't find the specific word I'm trying to think of, so uh please, cut me off.
No, uh, I didn't mean to cut you off, Mayor and and council and Councilmember Aslan. I appreciate the question, uh, specific to uh, you know, the circumstances that were encountered last week, uh, specific to anything else uh similar that could come up. I will say that I do believe some additional language could be included, but I don't know what that would be, and I would ask council for direction, uh, if you wanted me to look into that. Um, obviously, that's uh, there, there would uh likely be some uh uh back and forth on that before we came to a final conclusion on what that would be, but the way the rules are written right now, I think it um handles it somewhat, but I would think some additional language would be needed as well.
Well, if there is a gap there in your professional opinion, then I would like to see you come back with us, uh, at us with um some suggested way to cover that.
And and my, my answer tonight, I will be very frank with, with you and the council, is, you know, in this off the cuff, you know, answer that I'm giving, I would like to look at it further to make sure um and see what, if any, additional language would be um suggested.
Thank you, councilmembers. And uh, City Attorney, do we have another, other council members who would like to uh see that uh potential language move forward? Councilmember Salas?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, pending, pending the legal research by our attorney, um, yeah, I would like to uh see a proposed language addressing decorum. Um, uh, because decorum can also speak to situations where the chair may recuse himself due to potential conflict of interest, and then the vice chair is not physically present or, you know, uh, and then uh, then the third on the line would be um, the, the first, the, the council member who had the um, I think the second highest vote uh in the previous election, I think that's the rule. Um, and the, the rule eight specifically addressed to a ruling by, by the chair, whereas rule seven uh speaks about uh decorum. So um, thank you, Mr. Solomon. I look forward to your recommended language on decorum.
Thank you, and I'm just gonna
Just to clarify in, in response, oh, sorry, just to clarify in response, I, I, while I think there may be some recommended language, I would just like the chance to review very carefully, consider that, and see whether or not any recommended language would be necessary even.
Yeah, thank you, uh, City Attorney, and I'd like to say in the chat box, we have a yes from Councilmember McCarthy, yes from uh Vice Mayor Daggett, and yes from Councilmember Sweet, and I am also a yes, I would like to see what uh potential language could be put forth in there, uh, or necessary as deemed after you've done your legal research on it. Uh, Councilmember Shimoney has a question?
Yes, I'll be really quick. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Sterling, quick question. So, you know, you just mentioned whether it'd be necessary. So I just wanted to play the scenario out. The, the council finds the chair to, the decorum not to be appropriate, the, the chair says, we're good, the council does the appeal, right? Uh, then the majority votes, let's say that the majority says that the appeal is appropriate and that they don't agree with the, 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 the direction of the chair. Um, then we're back to square one. I, I, I don't see it, and I see there being a gap in the logic, in the, in the, you know, the way it works, so I do think that there is language that's missing, um, but, but maybe I'm wrong, but I'm, I'm happy to have a future conversation on this and get, put this behind this for tonight. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Sterling.
You bet. Again, Mayor, Council, if I can jump in, noted, uh, I understand, uh, you know, you're concerned about that gap, and I see the potential for that as well. I really would like to sit down um and look through that very carefully to make sure before any language is recommended, uh, to make sure there is a gap to begin with. I see what you're pointing to. I think I see that as a gap too, but again, uh, just gonna sit down and study it out and make sure.
Thank you, City Attorney. Uh, do we, I think we have it down with this one. Was there any other uh suggestions or additional comments from council regarding any other updates or suggestions you have with the rules and procedures? All right, well, with that, we are down to agenda item number seven, but as it's four forty-five right now, I think it might be a, a good time for a, a ten-minute break. So um, let's be back here at four fifty-five, and we'll hear from our police and fire divisions.
Okay, you're good to go.
All right, we are down to agenda item number seven, which is our overview of your police and fire divisions. Uh, City Staff, take it away.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Can you all hear me okay?
You're good.
Well, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you today and talk about our division. My name is Dan Musselman. I currently serve as your police chief. Just a little bit about myself, I grew up in the Phoenix area. I came to Flagstaff via Northern Arizona University to attend college. I graduated with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice in nineteen ninety-one and entered the job market. Uh, the job market at that time was, wasn't too great, so I ended up enlisting in the Army Reserve as a medic. After my tour there, I was hired on with the Cogino County Sheriff's Department. I spent four and a half years working for them and then made the jump to the city of Flagstaff, and I've been with the city of Flagstaff for twenty-five years and counting. I enjoy public service and I enjoy serving our community. Next slide, please. So for today, we're gonna talk about our overview. I'm gonna give you overview of the division, I show you our organizational chart, give you some of our budget information, a brief look at fiscal year twenty-one, and then cover our twenty twenty accomplishments and our twenty twenty-one initiatives. Next slide, please. The mission of the Flagstaff Police Department is to protect and preserve life, property, public order, and the rights of the individual by providing exemplary service through the partnership of shared responsibility and trust with the law-abiding members of our community. This is our mission statement, and this is what guides our officers and employees every day they come to work. Next slide, please. So the Flagstaff Police Department is comprised of two main sections, and these are operations, which includes a hundred and fifteen full-time employees, and support services, which is made up of fifty-five full-time employees. The remainder of our full-time employees make up the administrative section. Each of these main sections is overseen by a deputy police chief, and you'll meet both of my deputy police chiefs tonight. Uniform patrol is the most visible program in our department. They accomplish their mission of crime prevention by using community policing programs, using intelligence-led policing, and data-driven decision-making. Our detectives conduct prompt and involved investigations using advanced technology as well as traditional methods such as interview and interrogation. These, these methods help us solve crimes, identify and apprehend suspects, and locate stolen property. Our street crimes unit works those problem areas where traditional policing does not always do well, such as drugs, guns, and sex trafficking. And our emergency response teams get called in when we need advanced expertise that our traditional patrol officers cannot handle. Our support service section members are the ones behind the scenes, helping us complete our mission. They're the ones answering the nine-one-one calls and dispatching emergency services. They release reports, manage evidence, and release property. They're the ones that keep our cars and equipment up and running. Next slide, please. Now I will turn it over to our operations deputy chief, Scott Mansfield.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Scott Mansfield, and I'm the deputy chief of operations for the Flagstaff Police Department. I'm gonna touch on the operations side of the house. Um, Chief Musselman hit on a couple of things, and I'll elaborate a little bit more. First, uh, the largest division in our department is our patrol division. Uh, currently, we have eight patrol squads, one traffic squad, and one selective enforcement squad. Our officers are staffed and working twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. Our officers on the patrol side, uh, they respond to a wide variety of different calls. Uh, they handle traffic collisions, they conduct traffic enforcement, they take initial reports on felony cases, investigate misdemeanor crimes, missing persons, runaway juveniles, and the list will go on. For twenty twenty, our patrol officers responded to forty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-three calls for service. Of those calls, it generated seventeen thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight police reports, which resulted in five thousand seven hundred and seventy-one arrests. During twenty twenty, our patrol officers investigated two thousand one hundred and ninety-nine collisions, and tragically, three of those were fatalities. Our detective division, it is comprised of two sergeants and twelve detectives. These folks uh investigate all felony crimes, they investigate all unattended deaths, missing person cases, runaway juveniles, suspicious activity cases, um, sexual assaults, sex abuse cases, and the list goes on with them as well. In twenty twenty, our detectives worked three thousand four hundred and fifty-five cases. They also investigated five homicides in twenty twenty, and for twenty twenty, their clearance rate was fifty-seven percent, which typically we are always above national average on the overall clearance rate for part for part, um, part one violent crimes and property crimes. I'm assuming we'll be over the national average again, but we don't have those numbers quite yet. Uh, next slide, please. Next in our, uh, operations, Chief Musselman mentioned our street, Northern Arizona Street Crimes Task Force. This is more commonly referred to as our Metro Narcotics Unit. This unit is a multi-agency unit. Uh, it is run by a Flagstaff Police Department sergeant. We have two Flagstaff police officers assigned to it, one NEU police officer, and one deputy with the Coquenio County Sheriff's Department. This unit proactively works, uh, drugs, sex trafficking, gun cases, uh, things of that nature. We also work all of Coquenio County. So they'll work in Flagstaff, Williams, Page, uh, wherever an agency needs your help, uh, we will be there to help them. And 2020, uh, Metro Narcotics purchased, I'm sorry, and this is also our, our undercover officers. Uh, so our unit purchased or seized ninety-six point eight grams of heroin, three hundred and sixty-three grams of cocaine, twenty-two thousand two hundred and twenty-two fentanyl pills, and sixty-two point nine pounds of methamphetamines. They also, uh, got six firearms in those cases throughout the year, they got those off the streets. Another section of our operations is our emergency response team. This consists of our SWAT team, bomb team, and crisis negotiations team. Our SWAT team is also a regional team, uh, so they cover all of Coquenio County. They have members from Flagstaff Police Department, Coquenio County Sheriff's, uh, Department, and we also have six Flagstaff Fire Department SWAT, SWAT medics, excuse me. Our bomb team is also a tier-one team, and it's the only tier-one team in Northern Arizona, so they handle majority of the calls for Northern Arizona. Some other specialty assignments that we have for the Flagstaff Police Department are school resource officers, phlebotomists, we have a collision reconstruction team, motors, uh, on the traffic squad, field trainers, honor guard team, the crisis intervention team, as well as a crime-free multi-housing program. So that is a, uh, operations overview, and at this time, I'm gonna turn it over to deputy chief Frank Higgins for support services. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council, my name is Frank Higgins. I am a deputy chief of the support services division of the police department. Uh, essentially, the support services division is our civilian employees within the department that support the mission of the operations division. It consists of fifty-five full-time employees, and it's broken down into four different divisions within the support services section. We have our dispatchers, our records section, our property control people, and our evidence section. Next slide, please, well, I'm sorry, stick on this slide for just a moment. Um, our largest section within the support services division is the, uh, dispatch center. In, uh, two thousand twenty, they took a total of two thousand, or two hundred and eighty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-seven non-emergency calls for service, in addition to sixty-nine thousand four hundred and ninety-three nine-one-one calls. Uh, we are a multi-agency dispatch center, we dispatch for the Flagstaff Police Department, the county sheriff's office, the Flagstaff Fire Department, along with five other additional, uh, fire departments here in Northern Arizona. All told, we interact with about fifty different federal, state, and local agencies within the Northern Arizona area. Next slide, please. Our records section is one of the other divisions within support services, which consists of ten specialists. Uh, they do the quality assurance of all the reports and maintain hard copies of the reports, forwarding, uh, public records requests, things of that nature. And then we have the property control, uh, section of the department. They maintain all the equipment and vehicles for the operations division of the police department, consisting of forty-five patrol cars, uh, three police aid cars, uh, sixty-one detective, admin, and specialty vehicles, uh, five motorcycles, along with some training motorcycles and, uh, four very old motorcycles that are used for parts at this point in time. Uh, we have, uh, eighty-six mobile radios within the vehicles that they maintain, along with a hundred and forty-five portable radios. Uh, in addition to that, we also have our mobile data computers within the vehicles. Uh, they maintain essentially fifty-four different mobile data computers at any given moment. And then one of our more important, or most important, uh, sections within the support services division would be the evidence technicians. Uh, these are the people that are responsible for maintaining a chain of custody, logging and keeping track of over a hundred thousand items of evidence here at the police department. Uh, last year, they took in over ten thousand items of evidence and purged over eleven thousand items of evidence. Uh, in addition to that, we have sent, uh, nine hundred and seventy-four items to the state lab for scientific examination. Next slide, please. At this point, I'll turn it back over to Chief Musselman.
Thank you, deputy chiefs, this slide shows a simplified version of our organizational chart. So you have the police chief on top, directly under me is my professional standard sergeant. This sergeant takes care of all of our, our hirings and background investigations. He also tracks our citizens' complaints for annual report and other duties as assigned, running our, uh, red flag warning system. Deputy chief over operations, that is deputy chief Scott Mansfield, who you just met, and under him is patrol, which consists of nine various patrol squads, criminal investigations made up of two squads, the street crimes unit, and our emergency response teams. And then under deputy chief, uh, Frank Higgins, support services, we have our dispatch center, communications, our records section, property and evidence, as well as community relations. Next slide, please. So our total division budget last year was roughly twenty-three million. Out of that, personnel costs made up eighty-three percent, or nineteen million. And then our grants, uh, totaled roughly two point three million dollars in grants that we brought in. And the majority of those paid for equipment or staff overtime, but I believe there's four or five positions funded out of the various grants. The cops grants for the student housing officers, an airport officer, and a couple of our metro unit undercover officers. Our largest programs at the police department, uh, the largest program is emergency and non-emergency response at seven point seven million, community policing at two point three million, criminal investigations roughly at the same amount, and then the regional nine-one-one communications and dispatch programs. Next slide, please. Our division accomplishments for 2020, we saw a fifteen percent decrease in overall crime. We conferred ten lifesaving awards this last year, which is the most that I've seen in my twenty-five years. We initiated an alternate response model to non-emergency mental health calls, so we can connect them with a crisis line and send terrorists crisis response instead of sending an officer to respond to those. We implemented a new records management system, thankfully. We provide implicit bias training to all staff and held a community meeting as well. We received protective equipment grants totaling more than a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and we worked many protest events and First Amendment assemblies, ensuring folks' rights to protest were upheld and not infringed upon. Next slide, please. For 2021, this is just a handful of the initiatives we're taking on. We really wanna look at an alternate response model for, um, some of our most vulnerable in our community, which is our homeless, uh, intoxicants. And this will be in the form of a day center, hopefully a detox facility. But this also involves the fire department and how we respond to calls. So hopefully, instead of sending a police officer or a fire unit, we can send an alternate response vehicle that will have a behavioral health worker on it, an EMT, and hopefully, we can get people in and get them better services than what we are currently doing. We hope to complete our computer-aided dispatch upgrade, which will allow us to implement text-to-nine-one-one services to our community. We're looking at, uh, the need to expand our evidence vault. Our vault holds the high-dollar items such as guns, jewelry, money, and drugs, and we're just running out of room here at the police department, so we're looking to do an expansion there. We've embarked on an electronic citation program. So much like when you self-scan out your groceries at the store, our officers will have scanners in their vehicles, and when they stop, uh, members of the motoring public, they'll be able to use the scanner, scan their driver's license, scan their registration, and that will auto-populate, um, the citation or warning form that the officer is giving. Um, this in the long run will save paper, it's good for the environment, um, and it'll cut down on, uh, mistakes and not being able to read officers' handwriting. We've taken on a wellness grant initiative with the blessing of council, and that, uh, has gotten rolled out. Its first phase, the second phase, involves additional training on financial wellness, mental health wellness, uh, for our people, so we're excited about that. And we're looking to build an incident command vehicle. And too often, we're out on scenes at two o'clock in the morning on a wintry night when it is just way below freezing, and we're trying to interview, you know, suspects and victims, uh, on the curbside, and it just doesn't work. So we've, uh, requested and were approved a seizure vehicle from a drug load that was a motorhome, uh, less than ten years old, and we're looking to retrofit that so we can roll it out to scenes. Um, it'll have a couple small interview rooms on it, in it, a bathroom, a heater. It'll make working those scenes in the dead of night or early morning much more enjoyable for both the employees and the public we interact with. Next slide, please. Thank you, that concludes our presentation. If there's any questions or comments, we, we will do our best to answer them.
Thank you so much, Chief Musselman. Uh, council, do we have any questions, comments, before we turn it over to fire? All right, well, yeah, thank you again, Chief Musselman, oh, council member Shimoney has a question.
Not so quick. Thank you, Chief Musselman. Okay, my mic is on. Um, thank you, chief, for the update, and deputy chiefs, it's, it's great to see you all, and I appreciate the accomplishments and the, uh, list of things on the radar for the upcoming year. Uh, I especially wanna thank your staff and your officers for the way they handled the protests over the past year, I thought you all did a, a, a good, good stellar job at, at protecting people and allowing people the, the free speech that they deserve, um, in tricky situations. I, I did have a couple of questions, um, deputy chief Mansfield, if he's still around.
Yes, he, yes, he is.
Hi there, deputy chief Mansfield, thank you for being with us, and thank you for your work. Um, in the, in the, in the three thousand four hundred and fifty-five incidents in 2020 that you talked about, um, sex crimes is within that category. Uh, do you have any data specifically to that? And if you could speak to your partnership with Fiat, which, which is the Flagstaff Initiative Against Trafficking, I think that that'd be a benefit to the council and to the community.
You bet, so I'll, uh, start with Fiat. I was one of the founding members of Fiat with Kate Wyatt and some of our other partners, so I have been on Fiat, Fiat since the inception of it. Um, we do work with Quake quite, uh, Kate quite a bit, and we have done some, some operations where we have included her, and, um, I, I've been working with her for, for a couple of years now that it's been going on. Now, as far as, uh, specific numbers for, are, are you looking for, I'm sorry, the sex assault type stuff? Or what were the question on the sex crime stuff?
I appreciate that, you know, I didn't have any specific number that I was looking for, I just know that you have three, four hundred and fifty-five cases, uh, worked. And I guess my, I'll just jump to the chase of my question, which is, you know, is there more room for, i- if we are spending staff time and, and, you know, just dollars on addressing this, this situation, and quite frankly, an issue in our community, um, is there more proactive work and outreach that we can do to, to help proactively address those concerns before they become a, a real concern?
I, I think there's always, uh, room where we could, uh, do more outreach and, and whatnot. We work with, uh, a lot of different organizations within our community. Um, I am also on the victim witness board, uh, the Coquenio Community Response Team for Sexual Assault and Domestic Violence Board, um, Domestic Violence Board, uh, Development, Domestic Mass Fatality Review Board. So I'm on a lot of different boards with a lot of different community members, and we, we meet regularly, monthly. Uh, we discuss different strategies, different outreach. I know victim witness, um, for like, uh, tequila, sunrise, or big events, they go downtown and, and do a lot of, uh, educational outreach on sexual assault and prevention. We have met with, uh, bar staff, uh, annually, uh, on those big events to discuss looking for, uh, some things that just, they just don't look right while, while there's patrons at the bar, female patrons, and trying to intercede to make sure that there's no, uh, there's no future, uh, sexual violence or anything like that. So we do a lot of outreach with our, with our local, uh, downtown bars, um, and we do a lot of training with them. As far as, uh, sexual assaults, we had, uh, forty-seven of those sexual assaults in 2020, and approximately eighty-five, uh, various sexual offense cases, sex abuse and, and those things. So as far as your question on, uh, outreach and whatnot, uh, we work hard to do that, and we partner with a lot of different entities within our city to complete that outreach.
And Mr. Mansfield, I, I know you do, and, and just know that I support you building upon that and doing it as much as you can, which I know you already have the goal of doing, so thank you.
Thank you.
Um, okay, I have a couple more questions for chief. And, um, okay, so first of all, just wanted to give your dispatch team a shout-out. They work hard, and our underpaid chief, no, just kidding. Um, but, but seriously, shout-out to your dispatch, they, they do hard work, and they're usually the ones recognized. Um, I wanted just to plug the idea of, of continuing to do our best to hire the, the, you know, police che, police staff needed to best reflect our community. Another value to yourself, um, I, I implore you to, to reach out to the local sororities and paternies of individuals of color. Uh, you and I have talked about this, this is nothing new, I just wanted to bring this up publicly at the council meeting, and, um, and say, keep up that good work, and even reach out to the Live Black Experience Coalition in partnering with them, um, nothing new. Um, I think COVID's shown us quite a bit in terms of, you know, how we treat our population, and I hope that as we progress past COVID, we, we definitely learn, and I know that you're open to that. Um, and then my, my real question for you, chief, is just, you talked about a new records management system. I'm assuming that is not, um, what's the one, looking glass analytics, am I correct?
Yes, council member Shimoney, we do not have looking glass analytics. We have a program called Bear Analytics, which seems to do more for us and what we need. But between that analytics and the new records management system, we will be able to capture more data and put it up. I know there was a request to put our monthly statistics up on the city website, and we will be able to do that. In fact, I believe we'll be able to get our January statistics, uh, crime statistics up there as soon as, by the end of this week. We're just finalizing a couple of reports. With the new records management system, we've had to go back and build a lot of custom reports to track some of the other things we wanna track and to recover reports that we used to track previously in orders that we can continually look at crime trends. So that's been a little bit of a challenge for, um, the IT team that's working on that, as well as the manufacturer of the program, specifically the things we wanna look at. But we will get those monthly reports up there, and if there's more you wanna see than that, uh, feel free to reach out to me and give me a holler, and we can certainly check into it or see what it costs to make it happen.
Okay, that sounds good, I like the steps you're talking about. I just wanted to give you a shout out for your work with getting all the grants that you get, I think that's wonderful, especially the wellness grant initiatives, I think those are great for our community and our well-being. And in closing, I'll just say, you know, whatever we can do to, I've heard from certain members of the public that they don't feel, at times, they're feeling uncomfortable, and we've talked about this, but, you know, with our vehicles or our uniforms, whatever we can do to lessen the intimidation factor, I know you and I are, you know, basically numb to that, but the general public at times isn't, so just planting a seed, anything we can do to build upon that and maybe even adjust our future direction in whatever ways, however that looks, is appreciated. Thank you, Chief, keep up the good work, and thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney, and just to share with you, so we hired 11 officers in 2020, two of them were African-American, two were Hispanic, six Caucasian, and one Asian. Unfortunately, out of the 11 we hired, three didn't make it through training, but I feel we are on a good trajectory, so thank you for the question, and I look forward to pursuing that more in the future.
Thank you, Chief and Councilmember. Vice Mayor Daggett has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief Musselman. I have a couple of questions. Reading through your policies and your annual report, the last annual report that you sent out, it says that you have a homeless community liaison, and I'm wondering who that person is and what specialized training that person might receive?
So the homeless community liaison is run through our special enforcement squad, which is right now in transition, but they are usually crisis intervention team trained, which means they went through a 32-hour advanced class that helps with, gives them insight into dealing with folks who may have a mental illness or traumatic, TBI, traumatic brain injury, or may be suffering for substance abuse. We have also partnered outside of that more recently with Catholic charities rather than... Some people don't feel comfortable, like Councilmember Shimoney said, in approaching an officer, and so at night, we get calls of people who need rides to the shelter, and Catholic charities has agreed to allow our dispatch to call them when we get these calls, and they have much better availability because they're not tied to calls for service, so they can go on these calls. Back to your homeless liaison, these are the folks that do our Woods Watch Patrol in the summer, so when the fire restrictions hit and we start getting nervous about campfires and people using campfires cooking, they're the ones that do the flyovers in the helicopter and the planes, they GPS the camps, they hike into the camps, they give the campers a list of social services, they help them clean up the camp, they try and get them into either the shelter or the front door program so that they can get more adequate services and not be camping and not be creating a potential wildfire situation. So it's more a homeless liaison, it's more of a homeless liaison squad, if you will, than a true one person. It's a team effort here, and then they'll go back in two or three days later and actually clean up that camp and try and restore the environment to what it was before. And a shout out to Parks and Rec, they usually help us a lot if it's in one of those camps. Oftentimes, they border our green belts or our parks, and Parks is very good about helping us out with the cleanups and getting services to those folks as well. So I hope I answered your question.
You did, thank you. One other, I guess, question and comment, I'd also like to give a shout out to your communication center staff. Anytime I have come in contact, it's always been a very professional, you have a good group working there, and I'm wondering, you know, we've talked a lot about de-escalation and presenting a more calming presence to members of our community that aren't necessarily in need of the law enforcement aspect of policing. I'm wondering if you've ever used communication center staff to work out in the field dealing with some emergencies? It just seems like they're really highly skilled and trained in de-escalation, and not to say that other officers aren't, but, you know, just that calming presence and their training seems like that would be really valuable.
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor, that's a very good suggestion. Unfortunately, they're down 20% in the center, so it's very rarely we can relieve them from the phones, and trying to talk an officer into going in there and answering phones is just a recipe for disaster. It's not going to end well for our citizens or the officers, but I will pass on your kind words to our communication center, I certainly appreciate that, and we'll try and get them out on RIDE along, so hopefully they can give some pointers to the officers.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Shimoney has a quick follow-up.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll be quick. Chief, forgot to mention a point, you mentioned electronic information collected, that's a great, I think that's a wonderful thing that you are working towards. Will that information be available to our courts and our prosecutor's office? I can imagine that being a good resource.
Yes, Councilmember Shimoney, it actually goes to MVD, it goes electronically to the courts, where else does it?
Record section.
Our record section. It's actually a statewide program, and they're the ones that we wrote the grant because they want us to get us up to speed on their platform. They use it a lot, the governor's office, the highway safety uses it a lot for collision reporting, fatality, DUI, driving under influence related collision, so it's part of a statewide movement, but it was really nice that they were able to give us the resources through the grant, and we actually outfitted, we co-wrote the grant with, along with Cocino Sheriff's Department and NAU, so we all took advantage of it since we're all on the same records management system. So it got rolled out first part of January here, and it's moving forward, so we're pretty excited about it. And it's actually an officer safety benefit as well, because now instead of spending 20 minutes on the roadside, you're only out there for 10 because you're not having to write down every little detail, you scan it, it auto-populates, and then we're trying to get it to auto-populate additional forms such as tow forms and whatnot, so that we don't have to spend additional time writing those out in paper format. So pretty excited about the future and what it holds for this program.
That's great, and hopefully less than 10 minutes, but I'm just teasing, thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember, and thank you, Chief Musselman. I think we are ready to turn it over to our Fire Division.
Thank you all, have a safe evening.
You too, thanks.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilman Mark Gaylord, your Fire Chief, and as our slide presentation comes up, I'll just let you know that we are also going to have a couple of speakers. I'm very fortunate to work with the senior command staff that I get to work with, and they're going to be presenting themselves and introducing themselves and telling you a little bit about their areas of responsibility as we go through this. So, next slide, please. So, very similar to Police Department overview of our divisions, we'll tell you a little bit about the sections within our Fire Department, we'll review the org chart, which I apologize in advance, it's going to be more like an I chart, but it does have a pretty descriptive view of our organizational structure and the staffing overview. We're going to provide you with budget information and look at FY '21, provide you with some other information of critical importance in our view. I want to kind of point out what 2020 has been for us in the pandemic, and I've been in the fire service, I was doing a little math, and I came up with a bigger number than I thought I was going to get, but I've been in the fire service in Arizona for 39 years, and I've never seen anything like this pandemic, and I've never seen firefighters and our EMTs and our paramedics, I've never seen them challenged to the extent that they have been challenged, and I've never been so proud to be in the fire service and being a part of these organizations as we do that. Just a tremendous undertaking as we face the unknown and had to quickly assimilate information and try to protect our folks so they could continue to protect the community. We regionalized the fire service and became their logistics point person for all of the Greater Flagstaff region, as we quickly understood resources were going to be at a premium. So there won't be much of a report on the year 2020, because we've been in the pandemic and we continue to be in it, trying to make sure that we're safe, we're healthy, and we're able to continue our mission. So that has really been the theme of 2020. Next slide, please. So we like to always start with what we're here for, and our mission of ensuring exceptional customer service to the community, visitors, and surrounding region. Our vision is dedicated to life safety and fire protection services, and our organizational values of integrity, honesty, and respect and trust are at the forefront of our efforts to meet that mission. Next slide. We have to take a minute to talk about a strategic partnership that we have with the Summit Fire Medical District. So Flagstaff Fire Department is joined with, through an intergovernmental agreement that initially started in December of 2015, where we began to provide management services for our neighboring fire district. It wasn't long after the initiation of that that we recognized there were a lot of other advantages that we could take advantage of with a little bit more of a commitment by both organizations, and so in that, we created a functional consolidation of the command staff and administration. It's created staffing efficiencies for us, and particularly at a time when we needed it. The ability to distribute workload across a little bit larger command staff creates some operational capacity in that we were able to advance within the region, and particularly under the intergovernmental agreement with Summit Automatic Aid, which has been a tremendous advancement that simply results in the closest unit responds to the emergency, and we do not trouble ourselves with which side of the jurisdictional line we are, we send the closest individual unit that can help. And a major element of this type of cooperation has been our ability to avoid costs as we continue to respond to the community's growth and demands for service. Next slide, please. So a little bit about just the response area, so approximately 77,600 roughly of population served, about 64 square miles, and obviously, our number one risk from a fire protection standpoint is the fact that we're in the largest ponderosa forest in the world. We run six fire stations, we have a wildfire management division and a station, and our total full-time personnel number is at 94, and that's everybody, administrative staff, line, personnel, wildfire management, and our community risk reduction folks. The next slide that shows the I chart I promised you, and it's a little bit of information about how we organize, and if you'll see, if you'll take a look, you'll see how Summit Fire and Medical District, particularly in the operations side, has been integrated, and we have one operation chief over the resources, and then we have a support services deputy that's over proportions of the actual support services for both the district and also the city's resources. One of the things that just, I think, I think may be missed in the IGA is, as we're preparing budgets, we're also preparing budgets on the district side, and we have an elected body that we prepare those for, we have an agenda process, and we have to mind ourselves with the open meeting law requirements for our elected board over there, so it is an administrative load in addition to the advantages that we enjoy through the cooperative effort. Next up will be Chief Bills, who will tell you about, Deputy Chief Bills will tell you about the area of operations that he supervises.
Mayor, Councilmember, my name is Members, my name is Jerry Bills, I'm the deputy chief over community risk reduction. My section works to provide a safe community to the citizens and visitors of Flagstaff by applying the principles of engineering enforcement and education. I have three sections underneath there that are fire prevention, wildfire management, and emergency management. Next slide, please. As you well know, catastrophic wildfires are a significant threat to the city and its social and economic environmental well-being. Wildfire Management Program accounts for this threat by using five strategic pillars, and they are prevention, preparedness, hazard mitigation, response, and recovery. The cycle remains the mission focus throughout the guidance from city leadership in the Climate Adapt and Action Plan, the Wildfire Urban Interface Code, and National Wildfire Response Qualification Standards, as well as the community stakeholders' input. Wildfire Management Staff achieves our mission by collaborating with multiple departments within the city. Wildfire Management works with sustainability to develop equitable smoke mitigation strategies and water services to continue fire risk reduction efforts in Upper Lake Mary watershed. Next slide. So as mentioned, the $10 million Flagstaff Watershed Protection Project was designed to prevent $5,700 million to $1.2 billion, with a B, in cost to the community, and since 1996, wildfire management has supported over 120,000 acres of forest treatments in the Greater Flagstaff area, as well as 12,000 acres in the city of Flagstaff and 6,000 acres in the Watershed Protection Project. WFM teams treat 400 acres annually through public and private land thinning, pre-removal, and prescribed fire and controlled burns. Next slide, please. My next section is the fire prevention. There's two pieces to that, first one is development services, this is where we use the International Fire Code and the National Fire Protection Agency standards to make sure the new construction projects in our community are engineered to the highest standards. Our other section is called occupancy inspections, where our code enforcement officials go out and do building inspections to make sure existing facilities are safe for the citizens to enjoy and to come, and the rest of the visitors to Flagstaff as well, as well as our personnel to go in when there's a problem. Some of the other things we do is special events, public education, and operational permits. Next slide, please. Here's the numbers of fire prevention for a typical year, not 2020 due to COVID, but they typically do, my two investigators, I'm sorry, my two inspectors do inspections about 1,000 a year, the crews go out on the engines and trucks and do inspections in the area of about 600 a year. We also do public education contacts with the schools and just tours in the stations and things of that nature, and then all my investigators do approximately 80, 85 fire cause origin investigations, and that's to identify fire starts so we can do mitigation efforts to try and curb those kinds of items. Next slide, please. Lastly, emergency management, emergency management has four nationally recognized pillars that we coordinate, and they are planning, response, mitigation, and recovery, and these functions are to ensure we're prepared for man-made disasters, man-made and natural disasters, and we also cooperate very closely with the Cocino County Emergency Management Office, and we continually use the functions above to prepare for the next event. And one last item is, newer members of the council will be receiving an email from you about a little 10, 15-minute training that I'll put on at the time of your convenience that we can talk about an email, but I wanted to let you know it's coming. Next up is Chief Stasky.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, my name is Pat Stasky, I'm the deputy chief of operations for the Flagstaff Fire Department, and I want to provide you with a quick overview of the operations division. Your fire department is responsible for providing immediate response to all risk emergencies within the community. And to... within the community and to ensure the safety of the community, of the citizens and visitors of Flagstaff and the surrounding region in the GFR. Those far large areas are seen on that slide. First one is, of course, fires, structure fires, wildland fires, vehicle fires. The second one is emergency medical services, which is the majority of our calls. The third one is special operations. Those are hazardous materials incidents that we might respond to, technical rescues, things like we rescue people up off of Mount Eldon, the peaks, in those times of needs. And that is a regional response that covers all of northern Arizona and then wildfire suppression as well. Next slide. We strategically have six fire stations distributed throughout the city, and those, those fire stations house seven emergency response units. Those response units are, are quite honestly our work trucks, and they carry the equipment, the tools that we need to solve the problems that the person who called nine-one-one has. So they're large trucks and, and sometimes we need a lot of equipment to assist and make those, uh, those situations where we need those tools. These vehicles also respond and take care of our cross-trained firefighters. These firefighters are all emergency medical technicians, and some of them are at the paramedic capacity, which is a two-year class in advanced medical operations, and we have twenty-seven of those paramedics at this time. Additional cross-training is to our hazmat response technicians, our special ops technicians, and fire investigations. As well as you heard from the PD, we do have SWAT medics that assist the public safety partners over there at the police department. We run twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We run on a three-shift system with A-shift, B-shift, and C-shift. Each of those shifts is under the direction of an on-duty battalion chief who is housed in the middle of the city at Station Number Two. And those shifts work two days on, a forty-eight hours, and then followed by a ninety-six hours off time. Next slide, please. Operational EMS, again, the majority of the calls that we do. Emergency medical system in our community is developed, and it starts at the nine-one-one dispatch center with what we call EMD. The dispatchers who are underneath the police department are also cross-trained for us as well. And basically what they do is take the call and they figure out which of our fire units is the closest and what response mode we need to respond in. We also have the luxury of working with a private medical ambulance here in town, which is Guardian Medical Transport. They are based at FMC, and they also have two additional stations within the community. Our overall goal is a fast response to life-threatening emergencies within the community and to provide the highest level of patient care in a pre-hospital environment. The EMS world for us, time is certainly our enemy, so we take great pride in what we do in that EMS arena. I'm gonna go ahead and turn the presentation over now to our Chief of Administrative and Support for the Fire Department. We fondly call him the Chief of Stuff, and that's Chief Deputy, Deputy Chief Mark Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of the Council. Mark Wilson, Deputy Chief over Administrative and Support Services. In the Administrative Support Services Division, there is myself, and I have one administrative assistant in the city that works closely with me, and we share that administrative assistant between myself, Community Risk Reduction, and Operations. My job is to oversee the Flagstaff Fire Department budget. I'm responsible for all contractual and invoicing needs that come in and out of the city with the Flagstaff Fire Department name on it. Responsible for policy and administrative needs as they are our daily response and also from an administrative perspective. Also handle all logistical and support needs for everything that the Chief of Operations and Community Risk Reduction Deputy have been talking about. So we have six stations that we're overseeing, seven frontline units, the wildfire management station, we have a fire training facility, a classroom, and then underneath all of those, we have all the equipment that's associated with that for emergency medical services, fire, special ops, and all risk. And all of that is part of the responsibility to maintain and ensure that we can provide an adequate service level for the community. So those all fall under my responsibility. Just a next slide, please. One thing we want to kind of look at is, one of the benefits that I get to do is work through the budget process and ensure that we can meet the needs of the community. Our current budget was sixteen million, sixteen, nine fifty-one. That did include the PSPRS. I think what we're looking at is possibly several million dollars in savings this next time off of the personnel cost, so that's gonna drop our division budget significantly. We had about five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar in capital improved, improvements in that were one-time funded. We have contractual commodity-based budget of around a million dollars that is for everything that we need to run the stations that we have and maintain gas in all of the units as we're moving and responding. Under the wildfire management, as Chief talked about, we're extremely fortunate and happy that previous councils and members that are on this council were supportive of the new fee that allows this to be now a fully funded division within our community, which was critical for us because it used to be funded off of grants predominantly with some general fund supplementing that. So that's a huge win. There's the one point one-two million dollar budget that we're looking at that will ebb and flow as that fee comes and goes. And then from a grants perspective, we put over four million dollars in placeholders. And actually Deputy Chief Jerry Bills does most of our grant writing, and he is an absolute wizard at it. We've got awarded over one point five million dollars in grants just last year, so that was a huge win. Those are savings to the community, savings to the general fund, and so we're extremely appreciative, and especially the most recent one, the self-contained breathing equipment replacement. That was for a half a million dollars. That gets us close to what we needed, but that was huge because that was an unfunded capital need. Also wildfire management, our wildfire management division, not only are they out there being active, but they are aggressively pursuing grants to help stretch the money that's available to them and provide better services for wildfire mitigation within our community. One big thing that's up there in red that we understand, and it's kind of a difficult challenge for a lot of the team Flagstaff is how to balance budget needs with the available funds, and we understand that. Right now, we anticipate and we look at, and we've got about a five hundred thousand dollar ongoing base deficit. And what I mean by that is to make our business run day-to-day today, tomorrow, and tomorrow to look like it does today, we need that money to sustain us. Right now, it's funded in one time, and so we're looking at as we, every other division is, and how we can continue to make that short up as a, a base for our division. Next slide. Next slide, please. At this time, I'm gonna turn it back over to Chief Gaylord, who's gonna talk about twenty-twenty-one initiatives. Thank you.
Thank you, Chiefs, and I want to just assure everybody that if you have questions, this team will be available to you at the end. So one of the things that I just wanted to cover on the twenty-twenty-one initiatives, providing adequate numbers of paramedics, our, our community has struggled to provide what I think is the most basic of service expectations that we have, which is to say that when a flag fire truck shows up at your house, that we are assured that they have a paramedic, and we are providing paramedic-level service to your house and every neighborhood. We've struggled with that, we're very close. We're, we're hoping this year we can cross that bridge and provide that assurance to our community. Restoration of full-time regional training coordinator, we think this is a very creative approach. We've been funding this position with our partners, the other agencies in the Greater Flagstaff Region for quite some time, and it has continued to be funded by our ongoing, excuse me, on our one-times, and it was recently taken back to part-time because we needed to recruit a replacement. And recruitment of a highly specialized position like this in the middle of the pandemic would have been problematic, and so we were able to move that position to a part-time position and, and have the incumbent continue service to the region. The addition of a twenty-four-seven, three-sixty-five rescue unit and the promotions and the additions to staff to pull that together. Since two thousand nine, we've had recommendations from various consultant bodies that have indicated we needed two more rescues, which are two-person units in our system. You'll look back at the data, you'll see in two thousand nine, we were considerably less busier, and so we're hoping to at least put the second rescue up as an initiative in twenty-twenty-one. We're working very closely with a very impressive U, uh, team, coalition, if you will, elected officials, nonprofits, and, and the fire department. And I think the police chief spoke a little bit about providing an alternative response, and I'll just say this, the Flagstaff Fire Department has been trying for quite some time to come up with the right response to this type of, of call in our community with these types of, of community members. And I have some of the greatest caregivers, caregivers on the planet, and, and yet what we know is, what we're missing is that key behavioral health component, because we need to pair up a firefighter EMT, distribute them, and we should dispatch them off of our dispatch network, and, and we should take a professional, a mental health and behavioral health specialist with us so that we can provide the type of care to this part of our community that we need and that they need. We have, and you'll read down the list, we have a number of obsolete and equipment needs that are replacement needs that are a priority. We also have a great deal of known attrition through retirements that's going to be occurring, and so we're gonna have to put on another regional fire training academy. We do that with two other partners, Summit Fire and Highlands, and we have created a uniformed training standard across the Greater Flagstaff Region. We're very proud of what that regional recruit academy has represented. And then we also have a need to support community development who is working through some area planning in what we refer to as the JW Powell Corridor that is absolutely gonna necessitate the addition of a fire station at some point in its development. So the, the analysis to correctly and in, in the best way possible determine where that station should be is actually, we're in the procurement of bringing in someone that can assist us with that. Next slide, please. So we want to talk about what's going on in the Fire Department. This is really, uh, the, these are really illustrative slides, and so if you take a look at just the past ten years, a sixty percent increase in, in call volume over that ten-year period, an average of about six percent per year, and then a seven percent decrease from the all-time high, which is actually post, uh, it was actually pre-Great Recession. Uh, and as you see here, the, the, the FTEs have gone up a little bit, but has resulted in no additional units, but for a part-time unit that's seasonally available to us because of the expense. And so that's the big summary story for us, and I'll just say that when I came here in twenty thirteen, I came from the, from the Phoenix Metro System, twenty-two-plus agencies all connected by automatic aid, and I thought I knew what BUSY was. And then I got to Flagstaff and realized that I had to recalibrate because BUSY is what Flagstaff is doing. And this year, we have four units that are, four units that are responding to over twenty-seven hundred calls annually. And kind of put that in perspective, if you take all of our partners in the surrounding area's stations and put their call volume in, in the same similar, if you just, if you just put them all together, that would not be the equivalent of the twenty-seven hundred calls. Having said that, we, we acknowledge the importance of our partners because there's plenty of times when we call them when there are no apparatus left from the flag system. But just a perspective, next slide, please. And then just more of, there's about three slides where we're taking a look at just taking, taking into account the last ten years of traditional FTEs. As you see, the twenty-fourteen units, FTEs moving up, again, that has not resulted in additional capacity out on the line. No new units are provided by that. And then the call volume is, as we know, crested, fifteen thousand was on its way up to sixteen thousand this past year. Next slide. This is just a conglomerate, and it's just a summary slide, so staffing remains seven percent below Great Recession levels, and call volume has increased by ten percent over that period of time. So that's very much a summary slide of what's going on with respect to our ability to provide service in the community. Next slide, please. Here you see on the CapEx, we thought we would share with you some capital expenditure kind of things that are coming. None of this is a secret, but if you take a look at the number and the amounts of apparatus that are gonna timeout, we have easily an identifiable seven-point-eight million dollars of CapEx needs coming up in the next five years. Next slide. And then Chief Wilson's already mentioned it, but we've got a pretty gifted grant writer who was very, very successful this past year. And particularly with the self-contained breathing apparatus, which is our safety equipment, air packs, self-contained breathing equipment, self-contained breathing apparatus, it's what our firefighters wear to go into an environment that's immediately dangerous to life and health. And so a very integral part of our, of our protective, personal, personal protective equipment, a very needed part, and now our inventory is obsolete, and we need to move through and replace that. New heart monitors, a very technical piece of equipment that we use to, our paramedics use to, um, to provide service and emergency medical services, radio replacements, stations, you see the stations on the John Wesley Powell Corridor. We're doing a, a study on locating that right now, that's being funded by development impact fees. We know there is a fire station that likely because of development is gonna be determined to be in the wrong place. It's our oldest station. We're gonna have analysis done to make recommendations on that. We are exploring the possibility of moving fire admin away from City Hall. That would allow for some much-needed space here at City Hall. And the fire training facility was never completed from the two thousand and six bond projects, and so we're, we're trying to understand what it takes to complete that project as well. Next slide, please. So here's, here's the summary, where I wanted to kind of just land on the summary before we opened, opened up the questions, but your fire department is a very mission-focused organization. We're people-driven. We, uh, we, we see evidence of this every day as they deal with the pandemic and the challenges of staying safe while continuing to answer those nine-one-one calls and always adapting. There's been times where we have brought a shift on at eight o'clock in the morning, and by the time we, they got off duty, we had a policy that had to be changed because we found out what we needed to do to protect them at a higher level during the pandemic, and by the time they came back to work four days later, it had been changed twice again. And so they are always adapting. As you could see, we have increasing service demands. There is a resource scarcity. There is an aging infrastructure. And, and just in final conclusion is, we do have some compaction-related concerns that I think you've been hearing about now through HR and through the information coming out of a, a recommendations through the HR department, and you've been exposed to those. We need to move forward on that, and City Manager has been a tremendous leader in this regard, but we need to move forward on that so we can continue and to be an employer of choice for firefighters in northern Arizona. And so those are our remarks today. If you have any questions for us, we would love to do our very best to answer them.
Thank you, Chief. Council, do we have questions? You're on mute, Councilmember. You're on mute, council member.
Yes. Sorry about that. I'm trying to let others go first, but I'll go ahead and step up so I don't lose my opportunity. Chief, thank you. And to your deputies, thank you all for the presentation and your work. Couple of questions. A special thank you to Chief Bills for his work with the grants. That is very much appreciate appreciated effort. And so thank you. Because when we can't find money, you got to. But a couple of questions. So Chief, you mentioned you were close to meeting the needs of the paramedics to staff to appropriately address calls. How close are we? Chief, you're still muted.
Clerk, the clerk muted me because of some problems. Is the sound quality acceptable?
Good.
Yes.
Thank you, Stacy. So we are holding, we need three more paramedic slots. And just to be clear, those aren't new employees. Those are new paramedic stipends or ad pages is the correct word. And with that, we'll have enough paramedic staffing levels to distribute the paramedics across the community so that we can make sure that we're not running what we call basic life support units. We're, we're providing ALS service to the community 24/7/365.
Okay, so can you give me a number just so we're in the loop? And Stacy might have muted you again.
The approximate cost, and there is a, there is a document in the budget process, but it's roughly about 28,000 annually and ongoing.
Okay, thank you for that. You know, speaking about emergency medical services and that being our most volume that we're seeing with our fire. Chief, for folks who don't know what a rescue is, can you just explain that very briefly?
Sure, rescue is a two person advanced life support unit that we send to emergency medical service calls. We try to pick up as much work as we possibly can with the rescues. What you see in the data is our rescues were becoming essentially overworked and we had to start distributing the calls to heavier pieces of equipment with more staffing between the rescue and the heavier piece of equipment, just because of call volume. And so additional rescues in the system are what's, what will allow us to keep sending probably the more efficient unit to those types of EMS calls and maintain those firefighting companies for emergencies that require additional staff or actual firefighting. So that's, that is the two person smaller rescue body apparatus predominantly picking up emergency medical.
So I just wanted to echo that. I think that's so important, counsel. And you know, that rescue is not a fire truck and can be used to address EMS calls, which is our highest call volume need. So that has a cost of about $565,000, from my understanding. And in looking at city leadership and council, I'd love for us to discuss this at our next budget retreat and add this to the list because I think that that would be a huge benefit to our community and to our fire departments and is extremely needed. Chief, I just wanted to thank you for your support and your team's efforts, especially Deputy Chief Wilson on the alternative response unit. I know that you all have been talking about this for some time and I'm glad to say that I think this is the year and now is the time that we reinstate it and do it right. So looking forward to that. And I'm guessing that we're going to need a million dollars to pull that off, Mayor and Council. And we can look at partnerships and ways to fund this and maybe we can tap on Deputy Chief Bills to help us find some money. But that's going to be on us for the most part to see through and that's going to be a huge relief to our community. I wanted to also acknowledge.
Sure.
So. Why does it check? I wanted to acknowledge our partners, Chief. I think that we can't be meeting the levels that we're meeting without them. So thank you to our partners. And, and, and then in regards to your hiring, I just wanted to echo what I said earlier with Chief Dan, in not just being anything we can do to best reflect the community we're serving is much appreciated. And so.
Understood.
Keep on.
Yeah, our, our objective is the same.
And then my last question is, in regards to the restoring of a full time regional training coordinator, is that within the $500 estimate of the base deficit that you talked about?
It is.
Okay, so that $500,000 based deficit, I know we're just throwing around big numbers right now, but you know, Deputy C Manager Anderson and City Manager Clifton, if we can bring these numbers to council and work it through the budget process and find a way to do this, I think that our fire department needs us, and I know that we have a lot of needs, but I just think that looking at the call volume change and the employee personnel and the needs, we've got to just keep chipping away and anything we can do to address these numbers, I I'm in favor of. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. City Manager Clifton?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Shimoney for this. You know, the purpose of these divisional updates is to certainly give you an overview of the structure and the function of each division. And they, these updates have accomplished that in a wonderful fashion. And I think especially with respect to fire, it's, it's hard to not delve into the budget matters because there's such strong correlations between the budgets and the narratives of all the programs and the trends that have been discussed. That said, yeah, these are not really intended to be budget discussions per se, but understanding that a lot of what you're hearing tonight in terms of the stories told, the narratives will find their way to the budget discussions that are to follow. So rest assured that this is coming your way. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, City Manager. Do we have any other comments or questions from Council before we move along? Well, thank you, Chief, for the thorough presentation. I greatly appreciate it. And that brings us down to agenda item number eight, our affordable housing overview and I think that is Ms. Dar.
I'm, I'm working on it. I thought I had everything to go and then I moved to screen. Thank you. All right. I clicked share. It's not sharing. Let's see, we'll try it again. All right, I'll try this one.
It just came up, Sarah. Yes.
Don't you love it when it works? All right. Okay, my next question is, is my camera on?
Yep.
Okay, yay. I'm not quite sure how I did all of that, but I did it, so we'll go with it. Mayor and Council, it's such a pleasure to join you this evening and thank you for the opportunity to discuss our housing programs a little bit more in depth and some hard acts to follow tonight. But seeing all those faces made me realize how much I miss my coworkers, especially in the fire department and the police department. So hello, gentlemen, and I think I may actually request a new title as Chief of Staff because that feels, you know, more inclusive since it's all kinds of things. So I am very fortunate to be surrounded by an excellent housing team and two members of that team are joining me tonight. Justina Costa, who is our housing manager, who oversees all the programs except housing authority programs. And Leah Bloom, who has the longest title on the planet, Affordable Housing Advancement Project Manager. Don't let the title get in the way. She is incredibly skilled and is excited to be sharing some information with you tonight regarding our housing planning processes. Okay, I pushed the button to advance and it didn't do it. There we go. All right. So a little quick outline for tonight, we're going to do a little bit of Affordable Housing 101. I had the privilege of visiting with you a couple of weeks ago as part of the overview for community development. And we kept that one fairly short because we knew we were coming back tonight. And so you've already seen our staff outline. You know, we have staff in four different locations and an outline of what our basic programs are. So tonight I'm going to spend a little more time going into those programs in Affordable Housing 101, share some updates on ongoing projects. And then based off of a council discussion at retreat, we added a little housing bond piece at the end. As we try very, very hard not to speak in code in these presentations, we work incredibly hard. However, there is some common housing lingo that I may slip into. So I want to explain it now so that if it does happen, you have a base idea. We work very hard to demystify these items also for the public, not only for you, so that we're working to make housing more understandable and more relatable to our community as there seems to be a growing interest in what it is, what affordable housing means, what housing in a community can do. And we want to make sure that we are being as inclusive as possible in order to make sure we're reaching the greatest number of people so that they can be included in the conversation and come into it with some knowledge of how these things work together. So I may say AMI, that's Area Median Income. That's a number established on an annual basis by HUD. And I'll have a chart on that, not a little bit. And see, I slipped up already. I said HUD, which stands for the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. This is where the vast majority of all of our funding within the housing section comes from. So ADO is the Arizona Department of Housing. I think I'm only going to mention them once or twice. And then this one is Low Income Housing Tax Credit. And that gets a little full for our mouths occasionally. And it's, this one's acronym is LITEC. So L I E space T E K, LITEC would be how you would say that one unless you're one of our partners from down south named Holly, and she says LA tech. And we had to ask her what she meant because it didn't make any sense to us. So I want to start with a little bit of very basic 101. This is going to be repetitive for some council members, but realizing that it's not only council tonight, but it's the audience, but other members of our community as well. So we just want to talk about what is affordable housing? What in the world is the housing continuum and but how? How do we even begin to tackle affordable housing? So this slide is blank except for these words because I didn't want anything to enter your mind other than what enters your mind when I say the words affordable housing. What do you think of? What images come to your mind? What feelings come to your, to your heart as you hear those words? And I almost guarantee that none of you pictured math. Math is how you determine affordable housing. The generally accepted definition of affordability is for a household to pay no more than 30% of annual income on housing and housing expenses. So a little bit of clarification here, that is gross income, not take home. That's gross. And when we say housing and housing related experience, experiences, expenses, that means all of your housing expenses. That means it's all of your rent plus your utilities. If you are paying a mortgage, that includes your, I was going to say insurance as well as your taxes, et cetera. And so quite often we forget that those housing related expenses are part of a housing calculation. And so the source of this definition is the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. Sometimes you'll see lenders or others in the communities using a slightly larger ratio, 33%, sometimes 35%. I published here the HUD one, but I want to acknowledge that sometimes that percentage is a little bit higher, but the general rule is, is 30%. So households who pay more than 30% of their income are considered to be housing cost burdened, and they may have difficulty affording necessities such as food, clothing, transportation, insurance, et cetera. So it's all relative. Because housing affordability is not a group of people or a place or whatever it is, it is, it is a ratio. And because it's based on things like income and market prices, solving that issue is relative. So when we say affordable housing, you know, who's interested in living in affordable housing? Well, pretty much everybody does not want to spend more than a third of their income on housing. And so this is one of those things is when people say, well, when are we going to solve it? Well, that's relative. We can solve segments of it. We can help drastically in one area or another, but until there's housing for everyone, solving the issue is something that is a difficult discussion. And why is it important? It's clear and can be seen across the nation and in our own community that communities benefit when citizens of all economic levels are able to secure housing. If you take a read through our regional plan and you look at the housing and neighborhood section, we don't mention affordable housing in there a whole lot. We talk about housing for all people in our community, across all segments of our community because it's not only housing that has a subsidy of some type that's necessary for a thriving community, but it's housing at different levels accessible to different people in our community. And I'm advancing this, there it goes. So we quite often get this question, is it all housing affordable if you make enough money? Well, sure, it sure is. There's two sides to that housing affordability test, which is what people make and what housing costs. And so we in the past worked very closely with economic vitality, working with employers, et cetera, to be able to work a little bit or help on the other side of that coin, but also then work on the affordable housing side. So there's two things here, housing that is affordable. That's a market based sale or a rental price. And that's housing that is priced that a household is able to identify. They're able to look at their calculations and be like, this is affordable for us. And that's generally a market based sale or rental. So affordable housing, Councilmember McCarthy is fond of calling this little A and big A affordable housing. And big A affordable housing is affordable housing. And that's a two prong test. It's not only what the housing costs, but it is who is eligible to purchase or rent it. And typically a subsidy or an investment of some type exists. So you're couch surfing and somebody's mom lets you live with them for a little bit, that's an informal housing subsidy. Housing subsidy comes in all kinds of forms and shapes, both formal and informal. Somebody's dad is renting you an apartment and he knows you can only afford $1,200 a month and he could rent that apartment for $1,500 a month, but he'll, he'll rent it to you for 12. That is an informal subsidy. So when we're talking about this, I want you to think about that our community in informal ways does provide some affordable housing opportunities, but they are most likely one off. It's through personal connections, et cetera. And so that's where it comes down to the who is eligible to purchase and rent it. If the house is priced affordably, priced at a certain level, but it is available for purchase from by someone who is seeking a second home so they can come up and ski, then that's not affordable housing. That is housing that is affordable to someone either in or out of our community. So this next slide is, is one of my favorites. And I know some of you who've seen this 8,000 times are rolling your eyes, but that's okay. So this is the basic housing continuum. And down here, I'm looking, can you see? You can see my cursor. I really feel like I can't use the laser pointer because when Rick Tatter uses it, I feel like a cat and I want to chase it. So it's the homeless shelters down here all the way at the end and all the way at the top above first time home buyers, homebuyership, first time homebuyer is moving up in long term homeownership. And so the subsidy down here is necessary. It's a public sector investment. It is not a private sector investment. Up here on the upper end of that staircase is where we see the private. Up here on the upper end of that staircase is where we see the private sector investment. And tax credit housing, which I'm actually going to give you. A quick explanation of tonight, but a detailed one, is where those two pieces most often meet. Where we see both public and private sector investment coming together. So homeless shelters, transitional shelter, all the way at the bottom, supportive housing, that next step. Supportive housing is housing for those most often transitioning out of a situation of being unsheltered. And it comes with supportive services, sometimes those are mental health services, sometimes they are substance abuse services. Sometimes it's some job training and some coaching on how to successfully obtain a job and hold a job. Sometimes it's applying for benefits that they earned in the past, let's say veterans' benefits or disability that they're completely eligible for. And are not accessing. I know that some of the, the folks that have realized permanent housing from being unsheltered. Some of them had retirement accounts that they just did not know how to get back to or access or have the documentation to do so. So when we say supportive housing, yes, you can picture the mental health services and you can picture substance abuse services. But sometimes that looks a little bit different. That next book here is public housing, I'm talking more about housing in just a few minutes. But it's typically housing created by. Tax credit housing, I'm going to cover in a minute. And then we have our typical housing first time buyer and then move up to long-term homeownership. So when we talk about the housing continuum, this is what we're talking about. You'll hear housing staff mention it, sometimes you'll hear community members mention it. People move up and down these steps. We originally saw the housing continuum depicted in a linear format that indicated that people can. Slide back and forth on that continuum. We turned it into a stair step because it isn't as easy as just sliding over to the next one. It is work to climb those stairs, to move, to change circumstances, to move out of needing support for housing and to being independent with it. Those are stair steps and they're not always easy. Sometimes we talk about the fact that our housing continuum, those steps aren't always connected. So someone may have. They may have hit the income maximum for public housing or for tax credit housing. But there isn't rental housing in the market that they're able to afford. And so sometimes those steps are disconnected. I'm going to leave that more, one more second because we're going to talk about it in every presentation you have from us in the next coming years. So we love this concept and it's widely used in our community. So we talk about program income limits and who qualifies for housing assistance. And our staff developed a fabulous chart, I didn't include it in this one, I, I believe it's in another presentation coming to you. And it's divided by program, but in this one, I really wanted to capture for you what the income limits look like for our community. You're looking at this slide and you're saying, huh, that says 2020, Sarah Darr, why did you not update that? Well, that's because HUD, the housing department, US Department of Housing and Urban Development has not updated it. They had originally told us that we would have. New area median income numbers by December 1st of every year. And they met that the first year and I think we're six years later and we usually get it in April. Sometimes May or June, so that's why it says 2020. And what you see here, the reason that the 80% column is, is a different color. Is because that is the cutoff for federal housing assistance in most cases. There are some programs that serve the 60% level. 30% and below is considered to be extremely low income. And you'll notice over here, this is adjusted by household size. So this is a general idea, you're going to hear housing staff talk about area meeting income or program eligibility. Over and over and over, and one of the challenges we face is that. Funding sources don't always match up. So there are some funding sources that we can only use up to 60% of area median income and others that will go all the way to 80. And so we live in this world because it depends on how the program that we're utilizing was created. So I have breaking news for you because. Most of you have seen this infographic that we created in partnership with Housing Solutions. And it was updated in October of 2020. Today, after the council meeting started, a little after 3:30, Devon McLaughlin with Housing Solutions emailed me an updated one. And I thought, I've got the time, I'll stick it in here. So this next picture is not in your packet because I got it today at 3:30. But I thought it was important to go ahead and update it. The biggest difference here is that this line. Is now up here into this area where if I go back to the previous one. Previous, previous slide, previous slide. There we go, see, it's, it's not there. But now updated in February. Median sales price rose in the last 10 years, 67%. While our median incomes went up by about 14%. So I'm not telling council anything you haven't already heard. What we have found in utilizing this graphic for the last. I'm not going to count the months since October is that people are able to relate to it and they're able to understand it in, in a way that we haven't necessarily experienced. With other pieces. So I blew these up one by one, this just gives a little bit of an idea. So 2020, we were at 385, the last time this was published, 2020 went to $420,000 for a median sales price. We're going to zoom in quickly down on the bottom of that infographic and, and look at our Flagstaff income levels. I know some people are absolutely shocked by this number, however, 49% of all households in Flagstaff qualify as low income households. That's a big number. So this chart right here is the area median income limit for a household of three, which is the average household size for our county. So that means that 49% of our households, this is just the example again for the three-person household. Make less than $54,000 a year. And we talked about what that means for being cost burdened. So this is the number of community members in our community that are housing cost burdened. And you can see that that burden is bigger for renters than it is for homeowners. However, that's a quarter of all homeowners are cost burdened with, while half of renters are. So averaging to 40, 45%. And this is based on that 30% number for monthly income toward housing. So I'm going to flip that infographic sheet over and zoom in to what Flagstaff families can afford. I know that many of you have seen this, we've distributed it to council. But it just gives the community an idea of what a service industry worker at $15 an hour, a single person household. Making about $31,000 a year, they're at 60% of our area median income. That means that they qualify for our tax credit apartments in town. Their max rent they can afford to not be housing burdened is $780 a month. Not many apartments available at $780 a month in our community if they were fortunate enough to be able to purchase a home. If they work in another community, sometimes this is available in other communities, is housing stock for 144,000. But they would need a down payment of over $9,000 in order to get there. So this, this chart, and we can redistribute this to you with the new numbers on it. I didn't have a chance to do that after 3:30 today, but we can get that to you. I'm going to zoom in for a second on the national comparison, these numbers are from last year. However, our cost of living, it's not news to you, is 13% higher, but our cost of housing is 33% higher than the national average. So I'm going to go ahead and leave the kind of the defining the problem piece and talk about another one of our local challenges. And I call this my tween challenge slide. And I kept trying to explain this to folks in different various venues and we're struggling a little bit. So we made this up. We are too big to be small and we are too small to be big. And what does that mean? That means that the federal government considers us to be a metropolitan area. Now, keeping in mind that our metropolitan statistical area is all of Coconino County. So we have used this graphic created by Leah Bloom, thank you Leah. To try to communicate to our federal counterparts. What those distances look like because our numbers are impacted by. The fact that we have a giant metropolitan statistical area. So when the US Department of Housing and Urban Development is calculating things like fair market rent. Or calculating area median income, it's taking into account this ginormous geographic area. Of which we are the metropolitan center, but we have a ton of rural outline areas that actually impact our numbers here. And so on a federal level, we're metropolitan, which means we don't qualify for funding sources like USDA. Because those are targeted at rural areas. But we're too small to be big because in Arizona, we're considered to be rural. And so the metropolitan counties in Arizona are Pima and Maricopa. And so for the state of Arizona, we are considered rural, meaning when the state is awarded money, we don't qualify for because we're not quite big enough on a federal level. We have to compete with what we call the balance of state. And the balance of state is all of the counties outside of Pima and Maricopa. And because we are often the most expensive housing community in the state. When the state is looking at grant applications and looking at, well, if we fund over here. We can get twice as many units than as if we fund in Flagstaff because it costs more. And so we'll see this i- in a little bit when I look at some other funding sources with you, but this is really, it's our tween challenge. We, we've fallen into this weird little crack in the sidewalk where we can't access USDA funds, but we're also not big enough to access some of the other. HUD entitlement monies, CDPGs are only one, community development block grant funding. So we've been asked in the past, why in the world are most efforts focused on low income households? When we know fully well in our community that those. The needs don't stop at 80% of area median income in our community. We have a, a working population that makes too much to qualify as a low income household, but does not make enough to compete. In our rental or homeownership market. And why is that? Well, there's three simple reasons, funding, funding and funding. So when we access funding from the federal or state government, they dictate who those funds can be spent on. And that's where that 80% of area median income limit comes from. And so that's why those efforts are focused on low income funding or low income households. There have been a few conversations or movement towards considering. Bumping that up perhaps to 90% of area median income. But those haven't gotten any traction, but there's starting to be more of a recognition that in some areas like Flagstaff, that 80%. Cutting it off there, there are still households above that that need assistance. So a few quick items to remember when we're talking about affordable housing. Is it affordable housing means financial assistance comes from somewhere? Whether it is, and you'll notice this is a capital A, it's not the little a, it's actual affordable housing. Means that sometimes it's formal, sometimes it's informal, but there's some financial assistance somewhere and partnerships are key. Very rarely does anybody in our field accomplish something entirely on their own. But I can say that our housing staff, while they are fabulous. We are not the service provider for most programs. The community agencies are the service providers for most programs. That's their bailiwick, that's their genius. We are most often in a funding and administrative position. We function in a community planning capacity, making sure, because lots of people talk to us and it turns out that. So and so is talking to us about a concept that sounds really familiar to another one, someone had mentioned to us. So we try to meet those people up because we really don't have a lot of room in our community for duplicative services. One, because the funding is so limited and two, because we're, we're big, but we're not that big. And there's another piece on this slide and I don't remember what it is, let's see what it says. Oh, here we go, I already hit it. Multiple funding sources are often necessary even for a single project. There's something I'm going to talk to you tonight about that will most likely require upwards of. Half a dozen funding sources to make it a reality, that is not unusual. It is multiple funding sources are necessary repeatedly in this field. So I'm going to frame a little bit and then turn this over to Ms. Justina Costa. I call this my yes but how slide, see that's because that's what the title says. And there are really two sides to this and one is demand and one is supply, this is based in, in economics. So in a demand side housing program, you have to make the existing housing stock affordable to the community. And this most often comes in the form of lowering the monthly cost to an assisted household. So think down payment and closing cost assistance. Or even our public housing programs. On the supply side, this is to aid in developing or rehabilitating units. So that is unit creation or unit preservation on the supply side so that we don't lose a unit. To becoming too dilapidated and, and moving out of our market as an affordable unit. So it's really demand and supply, one is cheaper, typically the demand side is cheaper. On the supply side is typically more expensive. I say typically because in housing land, there's very few hard and fast rules because it's almost always somebody can point to an exception somewhere. So I'm going to turn it over to, no, I'm not, I think this one's mine. This one's mine, rental programs. So rental programs are most often focused on lower income households. So when we're talking about lower income households, we're not at that 80% mark, we're, we're moving down that area median income scale. To 60% of area median income and below, which for a three-person household would be an annual income of $40,620. College students are typically not eligible for affordable rental housing. How can that be? How does that work? Let me answer it. So when we are qualifying a household to be eligible for an affordable housing program. The household income is taken into consideration. And so if someone is a dependent of their parents, their parents' income is also taken into consideration. And so that's how most college students are not typically eligible because they are not individual independent households. Why is the word typically in there? Is because there are some college students that are fully independent. And they are not part of someone else's household, they are not a dependent on someone else's taxes. They are their own individual unit and those students occasionally, depending on some other very detailed conditions, are eligible. So, but we can say college students are not typically eligible because they, they are a dependent on someone else's taxes. So our low, our largest local demand is for one and two-bedroom units in our community. Couple of reasons for this, one of the biggest is our aging population with, with baby boomers. And folks not always being as prepared as they wish they were for retirement. We're also seeing that our populations are, are living longer. And so some of them are outliving their retirement, what they had prepared to retire on and live on. And so we see the need for a lot of one and two-bedroom units. Which is different than things where when like our public housing was built because it was large familial units. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Justina Costa to talk a little bit about some ownership housing. There she is.
Good evening, mayor and council, my name is Justina Costa, I'm your housing manager. And I just have to say that following Sarah is a tough act because she is like the, the high school teacher that you loved. That could make any boring topic exciting. that could make any boring topic exciting. So kudos to Sarah. But I, I will turn off my camera just because my internet is so yucky at home and will continue with the presentation. So tonight I have the pleasure of sharing with you some accomplishments of the housing section as well as to tell you a little bit about our ownership programs. We will start with the two homebuyer assistance programs that the city offers. The first program is the Community Homebuyer Assistance Program. We refer to this as CHAP. This program is available to any resident who lives within the city of Flagstaff, city limits, and whose gross income is at or below a hundred and twenty-five percent of the area median income. This program provides up to fifteen thousand dollars in financial assistance with a three to one match. And in 2020, twelve first time homebuyers were able to utilize this program. Our second program is the Employer Assisted Housing Program. This program is actually available to all permanent City of Flagstaff employees and provides up to ten thousand dollars in financial assistance through a one to one match. And in 2020, we had seven employees utilize this program. So in addition to the nineteen employees that I just spoke about, there was one City of Flagstaff employee that was able to utilize both programs, bringing our grand total to twenty assisted households in the year 2020. And when looking at both programs, the average assistance that we provided was about thirteen thousand dollars. We're very proud of these two programs and the impact that they have in our community. Since nineteen ninety-nine, the city has assisted a total of two hundred and seventy-five households. The link at the bottom of the right-hand corner of this slide will take you to a down payment assistance program dashboard and it will show a map illustrating the location of all of the homebuyer assistance loans that we have provided over the years. I would encourage you to take a look at this map as it is a wonderful depiction of how these programs are utilized throughout the entire city. Next slide. Next, I'd like to touch a bit on the housing section's goals in regard to permanently affordable housing. The goals of the program are simple. They are to provide opportunities for Flagstaff residents to secure housing that is decent, safe, and of course affordable. To preserve quality and affordable workforce housing for future residents of the community and to preserve and encourage economic diversity in Flagstaff. Next slide.
I clicked, I promised. It's coming.
It's coming.
There it is.
So in order to achieve permanent affordability, there are two nationally utilized tools, the deed restriction and the land trust method. A deed restriction is generally utilized when the city of Flagstaff does not own the land under which the home sits. In simplest terms, the deed restricted, restriction utilize, or I'm sorry, the deed restriction limits who the home can be sold to and the sales price of the home, ensuring that the home remains affordable to the next buyer, also providing for a shared equity situation where depending on market conditions, the homeowner does gain some equity at the time of sale. The community land trust program, on the other hand, separates the ownership of the land from the home. The city owns the land and the homeowner owns the home. A ground lease then governs the relationship between the two parties and a resale formula in the ground lease establishes the price of the home for future buyers and similarly to the deed restriction provides for shared equity. Next slide. Thank you. As mentioned previously, the land trust program takes the cost of purchasing land out of the total cost of buying a home. The city of Flagstaff reserves ownership of the land while providing the land to the homeowner through a ninety-nine year renewable lease. There are currently forty-eight homes in the city of Flagstaff's land trust program. We're very proud of that number. In 2020, we had an additional seven land trust homes that were sold to first time homebuyers. And lastly, there are additional, there are an additional one hundred and thirty-three permanently affordable homes slated for development in the coming years. Next, I'd like to pass the baton back to Sarah as she will talk about the low income housing tax credit.
Excellent. Thank you, Justina. And I want everyone to know I do not pay her extra to say nice things about me. She just sometimes does it of her own accord. So I'm going to do a little bit of tax credit one oh one. You hear this term, you hear tax credit housing, li tech, low income housing tax credit. If you're aware of programs in other states, sometimes it's called section forty-two housing. We have this really great naming technique of naming things after the either federal regulation code or the IRS code that they're contained in. So this program is contained in section forty-two of the IRS code. So that makes it super fun. So the low income housing tax credit program is the largest affordable rental housing funding source nationally. This program was actually created by the Reagan administration and to date is the most prolific creation, the program that has created the most affordable rental units nationwide. It has proven to be very successful in its partnership between public and private entities in order to make this a reality. And you may think it's weird that I said that this one's contained in the IRS code. That is true. It is an Internal Revenue Service program, not a HUD program. However, it overlaps and intersects with some of our housing and urban development programs on a fairly regular basis. So these are built by private developers, although I want to make sure we can specify that those private developers can also be nonprofits. They can also be built by governmental entities, but most common is private developers. We have nearly eight hundred units in Flagstaff serving sixty percent of area median income and below. That number probably shocks you a little bit. Why do you not know about these? Well, because there's waiting lists and so they often don't advertise because they don't need to spend money in that way. So on our housing resources list that we provide for folks, when they ask, well, how do I find affordable housing? We list all of these properties on that resource. And sometimes, more, more often than not, they do have a waiting list. Sometimes there's not depending on the unit size and they are scattered throughout our community. And so some of them are centrally located. Some of them are down off of Lake Mary. They're, they're really throughout our community. This is the, the funding source that is building the new units up on eighty-nine, which is now named Star Point. I believe that is the formal name for that one. So this is administered by the Arizona Department of Housing and there's a minimum affordability time period of fifteen years. We've partnered in multiple complexes and in any complex that we have partnered in, we ask for a thirty-year compliance time period. Federally is the fifteen-year number. Recently, I think in the last three years, maybe it's been four. The state has also moved it to, you get extra points. This is a point-driven, super competitive process and you get extra points on your application if you go to a thirty-year affordability period. So this next slide is going to hurt your eyes, but I promise I'm going to zoom in on it and we're going to walk through it. I found this lovely graphic and I thought this is the simplest explanation I've ever seen of this program. So zooming in, tax credits are used by developers to raise funding for building costs because affordable housing costs the same, it costs the same as fair market rate homes to build, but the rents are lower. So federal or state government allocates tax credits to housing agencies. That's our very first step right here. And so in Arizona, that's a formula-based allocation based on population and a few other items that allocates tax credit funding to the Arizona Department of Housing. So then we come down here to the next step where it says developers apply for tax credits. Projects are based on how the development meets the state's housing needs. Okay, so this process is based off of what's called a qualified allocation plan, the QAP. And those of you who have been on council have heard us say that's a hundred times. So my apologies, but the QAP is essentially the application document and it lays out what the state wants to see and puts the rules forth for that. That QAP is, has opportunities for public comment. We watch it very closely and offer comment nearly on an annual basis because quite often Arizona, this is going to shock most of you, but Arizona can be very, very focused on our larger desert-based communities and not so much our mountain-based communities. So when the QAP gives extra points for location near a light rail, we write during the public comment period, did you mean public transportation? Or did you really mean light rail and you're trying to cluster around the light rail? There used to be points for things like white roofs and efficient air conditioners, air conditioners with no mention of standards appropriate for, for a mountain community. So we have finally stopped beating our head on the, the white roof wall and the standards are there and they, they've made it appropriate for the entire state. But still occasionally things pop up where in reading through it, we think, hmm, okay. And it's possible that they have created a special category for something and they say, yes, we really do mean light rail. Most often they're like, oh, well, we don't, we don't mean light rail. We mean public transportation. So we ask, well, could you say that, please? That'd be great. So it's, it's an, almost an annual process in order to stay on, on top of this. But that QAP is approved by the governor and it's most often published right around Christmas time. Sometimes that week between Christmas or New Year's and the applications are due in March. Usually the week of spring break, which is super convenient for everybody. So it always seems when we're coming to council with any type of tax credit thing that we, it feels like it's a rush and it feels like we're calling in favors and we're trying to get on agendas and people feel like everything's always done at the last minute. Part of that is because of the cycle of the state not putting out. I mean, we, we can anticipate because of the draft document that we've had the opportunity to comment, but it's not a finalized document until the governor signs it. And so developers, once we hit that January mark, they really need to be on council in February, et cetera, that type of thing if we are invited to be a partner. So that they can get everything outlined and turned in in March. That's why these feel rushed sometimes. So let's say they applied and they were successful in getting an allocation of tax credits. What do they do with them? Well, they sell those credits to investors who they can then claim them on their federal or state income tax returns. Right now, we do not have a state housing tax credit program. We function only with the federal. However, I do believe a bill has been introduced this legislative session, as has been introduced the past couple sessions. It's back that we create a state housing tax credit program, which could also be advantageous to addressing our housing emergencies. So when we say developers sell these credits, we're talking to major corporations. Think American Express or Exxon, JP Morgan Chase. Those are the large corporations that buy these credits. And that provides the developers with upfront capital to build the units, which means there's less debt service on them. So that allows them then to charge the lower rents and still make everything pencil and work. Now, the catch here is that those units have to stay affordable for that affordability time period or the, the entity that purchased the tax credits can't use them. So when we partner on a, in a tax credit project, we are the tiny hammer you lose at the bottom of the toolbox because it is the major investors that are watching to ensure the affordability is in compliance. There are special audits that are submitted to the IRS every year. It's all overseen by the Department of Housing. And so we don't require additional reporting on top of that. When we partner in these, we get copies of the reports they're giving to others because that's quite sufficient to show they're meeting that community need. We came close to having our first tax credit development age out, hit its, its livable life and not be required. That developer applied for an acquisition rehab project where they, an entity bought it from them, rehabilitated it and we re-upped another thirty-year commitment. And so at this point, we, we have an excellent track record of not losing these units to the market. My usual keys for advancing aren't working and you'd think I'd realized that by now. So here we go, there I am. So what about other funding sources? And why are we focused so much on funding? Well, because subsidy comes from somewhere. And so there's federal and federal grants or entitlement funding. You're familiar with community development block grants. We get about sixty, sixty, six hundred thousand dollars annually. That's limited to eighty percent and below. We do not get USDA, which is the rural funding home, which is one of my favorite federal acronyms because it's capitalized like it is an acronym, but it doesn't actually stand for anything. I had worked in housing for about five years before I finally tracked that down because I'm sure it's for something. ESG is emergency shelter grants. HOPWA is housing for people with AIDS. And then the, the federal housing trust fund. We are not big enough to access these funds directly. So they go to the state. Down one, the state, of course, is a competitive process and that's what we call the federal pass-through, which is these sources up here coming to us through a competitive process, which I mentioned, we're competing with the balance of state. There's limited state-based funding. We do have a housing trust fund at the state level. It used to be funded with proceeds, proceeds from unclaimed property. It was, for lack of a better term, because one is not coming to my mind. It was gutted in the last major recession and funding has slowly been returning to that. We advocated every opportunity we can to add to that funding because it can be state-based rules for that funding, which means it's more flexible. And then the tax credit program, but of course that's development driven. On our local funding side, we have general fund and you're completely familiar with the limited capacity there, especially after budget retreat and Rick Tatters presentations. Sometimes we have private non- or not-for-profit funds that pop up or foundation or nonprofit grants or financing. Employers can come to the table sometimes with employer assisted housing, like the city has chosen to do for city employees. If there was to be bond funding, it would come up here into the local category, which means that all of the rules over here in federal and state don't necessarily apply and that we as a local community would be able to determine how that funding is spent. That's how we could tackle those above eighty percent and provide additional assistance within our community. So that is a quick and dirty, detailed overview of how some of the programs work. I wanted to pause for questions before we jump into project updates. And I can't see the chat. Although I can probably fix that. Oh, I can. There we go.
Councilmember Shimon has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Star and Ms. Casica. I'm sure I got that right. I'm sorry.
Costa, you're good.
Costa, okay, I knew I messed that up. Anyways, please forgive me. Thank you for the update. Thank you for your work. Quick question, Ms. Star, Mrs. Star. In regards to the local numbers that you present on that housing solutions support you in getting, those are all within the city limits, correct? That's not like the, the county.
Yes. And the next speaker will be able to address that without the uplift of a question at the end of her voice because it's Leah and Leah is the one. Okay, wait.
I can take that, Sarah. This is Leah.
Yes.
Thank you. So really quickly, yes, we used local city census data. And so we kept the median sales price of a home within city limits as well.
Excellent. And, and there's no data on that sheet or that chart that isn't local, correct? Like city, local.
Correct, minus the area median income, which is what Sarah talked about for county numbers.
So the AMI is area, or is the, is county numbers?
MSA numbers, metropolitan statistical area, so all of Coconino County, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember McCarthy?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mayor, I do have a question. If a person qualifies to move into a formerly affordable home or a rental property, whatever, but then their income goes up to the point where they wouldn't qualify if they reapplied. Does that mean they have to move out or can they stay in once they, if they meet it initially? Does that make sense?
It absolutely makes sense and it's an excellent question. The, the answer is not simple, so let me take a stab at it. It depends on the program. So for example, in public housing, if a household exceeds that 80% AMI, they start to pay a determined market rate number. So it's no longer an income-based rent. It's what's called a flat rent. And so the idea being that there's not always a place someone can go, but they are no longer subsidized in that unit. I think we have two of those. We don't have many. And quite often they fall into that hole where they make just too much to qualify, but they do not make enough to make that move into a market rate rental situation. In some of the units that we have negotiated for through our incentive program in, let's see, rigid Clear Creek and elevation. I'm going to try to look at a number without, without messing up the screen. So in the ones that we've negotiated for through the incentive policy that are in market rate units, the household typically stays in the unit. We allow for floating units. So if you went to one of these complexes and you qualified and you moved into apartment seven, that does not mean that apartment seven is always the affordable unit. So if that household's circumstances change, which we hope they do, we hope that having affordable housing enables them to stabilize enough to make some other life changes. And their income goes up above that limit. They then no longer receive the eligibility for the affordable rent, but they can stay in unit number seven and pay market rent. And another unit, the next unit that's comparable in bedroom and bath size comes on the market. That one becomes the affordable unit and it's filled. Because what we were really working to avoid is someone having to, to move because all of a sudden they made too much money. We do not want to disincentivize taking on greater employment opportunities. So it, it, it depends on the program. More often than not, it does not, if I'm thinking of all the programs together, more often than not, it does not mean you have to move out of the unit. It means that you lose your subsidy. Section eight works with a decreasing subsidy. So you hit that mark and then you're, I think it's a three-month time period where your subsidy decreases and in month three, it's gone. And so it's that careful balancing act of not disincentivizing folks to take a better job. Sometimes folks get married and that changes their, their, their financial situation. So it, it varies. But by and large, it means the subsidy goes away, but they, they stay in the housing unit. Except in public housing, we encourage them to move on if they're capable of doing so. Did that answer your question, Councilmember McCarthy?
It absolutely did, and I really appreciate the time you took to explain that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Sometimes the answers for housing are not quick and dirty.
Thank you, Ms. Dar. I'm not seeing any further questions from council, so we can move on.
Excellent. So thank you for that. Our next phase of this, and thank you for your patience. This is not simple stuff, but it's important. And you've indicated you want to understand more about this. We're going to go to some project updates. And in our, I clicked it, there it goes, project updates. And I want to take a moment and introduce Leah Bloom. Leah has been with our housing section for seven years. Yes, because her twins just turned seven. So Leah's been with us for seven years and she was our community development block grant staff person and was the successful applicant in opening this position as a project manager for our affordable housing advancement. Leah is the lead staff person for the Housing Commission. Remember, we have two. We have the Housing Authority Board, which oversees housing authority. And then we have the, the Housing Commission was created by the last council. And Leah is the lead staff person for that. And I want to give her some kudos right up front with how she is handling what she is about to talk to you about. She has jumped into this project, which I'll let her reveal what it is. But she's doing an incredible job. And I want you to, I want you to know that. Because I, I couldn't imagine anyone better tackling this with our team. So Leah?
Thank you, Sarah, for that introduction. Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's so great to see your faces and be with you tonight. My name is Leah and I am the Affordable Housing Advancement Project Manager. This is my introduction. I'm going to turn off my video so that I can get to the point and not have some breakups with my internet, so. So on, first of all, I wanted to say we're going to talk about the housing plan that the city is embarking on together. And this all started on December 1st, 2020, with City Council when they declared a housing emergency. The resolution states that the city of Flagstaff's housing section, within nine months and with input from the city's housing commission, will present to City Council for consideration a housing plan focused on housing development and preservation within the city for the next 10 years. The plan will set goals and will be reviewed annually in a report to City Council and to the community. So the housing section is not starting from scratch here because the city has many funding, planning and community documents that are either required federally or created locally. These documents are key to creating the plan in just nine months. The housing plan will consolidate existing housing documents and supplement with an additional planning effort to define the housing emergency in Flagstaff and to provide specific policies and strategies to reduce the housing emergency. Staff and commissioners have jumped into this project with both feet. On January 28th, the Housing Commission approved the 2021, 2031 Housing's Plan, Public Participation Plan and Project Timeline. Housing Commissioners also volunteered to join six informal working groups. The informal working groups will include both staff and selected community members. You can see here on this slide, the informal working groups are listed, but I do want to take some time and go over them. The Affordable Housing Gap Analysis Working Group will create the quantifiable goal of the plan. While other informational working groups will identify the important connection, such as the connection between health and affordable housing and the important connection between housing and sustainability. Another working group will pay close attention to neighborhood and equity contacts, such as redlining, historical data and generational wealth. And there's also a zoning and land use informal working group. These information, these informal working groups will pay close attention to the areas of expertise and create specific policy options and advocacy and educational strategies needed to reduce Flagstaff's housing emergency. Lastly, the policy working group members will match existing policies from the plans and documents noted above and will ensure a consistent voice in creating policy. Next slide, please. So as mentioned throughout this presentation, affordable, accessible and decent housing is of critical importance to a community's health and viability. As the city implements the Flagstaff Housing Plan, the goal is to substantially increase the number of available and affordable housing options for all residents at all incomes, as Sarah mentioned, on that housing continuum. For the creation of this document, there are five milestones, all of which have multiple public participation opportunities, both formal and informal. The first stages of plan occur during January's Housing Commission. Again, the informal working groups were created. The plan's timeline and public participation plan was approved unanimously by the Housing Commission. And stakeholders lists are being established as we speak. In January to April, working groups and staff will conduct research, establish policies and goals, all while, all while creating and writing of the document is happening. In May to June, community outreach will occur. In August, a 30-day public comment period will happen. And finally, in September, staff and the commission will present the housing plan to you, City Council. I know this was a quick overview. Thank you so much for your time. I look forward to reporting back to you as the housing section and the community embarks on this 10-year plan. I'm going to hand the presentation back to Director Dar.
We were teasing about titles earlier in the evening, so thank you, Leah. Council, I hope you can see the, the thought that has gone into this. Making sure that there are multiple opportunities for public involvement, for anyone who's interested to participate, that there will be, that there will be a way. We, we, we did hear your comments about creative community outreach and pandemic willing. We'll, we'll, we'll work on some of those. We are not envisioning this plan to be, you know, five cookies and two bottles of water and a small table someplace hoping somebody comes. That's not what, that's not what we want this to be. And so I, I just, I really thank Leah for, for all of this that she's put together. It was very well received by the Housing Commission. And we are, we are excited to be back to you in September presenting a housing plan. It feels like a very quick turn time, but again, we're not starting from scratch here. And so that's really working for us. So Leah, thank you so much. And I hope council can see what a great team we're, we really have. I'm going to move on to public housing some.
Ms. Dar, my apologies. Councilmember McCarthy has a comment.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, Mayor. And Ms. Dar, I'm going to ask a question that you've heard me ask before at the, at the Housing Commission meeting. And that other members of the Housing Commission have asked. And the question is, is there going to be an effort made to look at the zoning code and other city regulations in a way that we can encourage developers to build housing without reducing the quality of our housing? And I think there are ways. I, I've, I have a short list of my own already. So I just hope that that will be part of the analysis. So do you have any comments in that regard?
I sure do. Thank you for the question.
You had time to think about it because I asked before.
No, no. And, and what, what I, what I won't do is give you the canned answer that I actually haven't created. But you'll notice here on the slide, at the bottom, we do have a zoning and land use group. And I, I want to pass this answer, I'm going to punt a little bit to Justina, to talk about our incentive policy for affordable housing efforts. But we've got it on, on a later slide, but really not with details. So Justina, you want to take this one?
Thanks, Sarah. So to answer this question, Councilmember McCarthy and City Council members, along with the effort that Leah is conducting to create a housing plan for the city of Flagstaff for the next 10 years. And as Sarah mentioned, with that effort, there will be a working group specific to zoning and land use. We actually have another additional effort alongside of this, which is focused on rewriting our current incentive policy for affordable housing. That policy is what we work with in order to incentivize developers to create affordable housing here in Flagstaff. And so we are working with planning and our zoning code administrator to update that policy as well. So I hope that answers your question.
And I'd like to add just a little bit onto that as well as that the enabling, legislation's the wrong word, but what was establishing the plan? Councilmember McCarthy, we did work very closely to get your suggested language in there, which will, which reads, "The plan elements will also include ways the city can encourage more economically housing price construction by the private sector to address Flagstaff's workforce housing needs and increase attainable housing opportunities for and occupied by local residents." So that is part, it'll be worked in throughout these, but that is what the focus of the zoning and land use group is.
All right. I appreciate your taking that seriously.
Oh, we are, we are, absolutely. Thank you for that.
And I, I am saying Mr. Folk has a comment.
Hi, thank you, Mayor Deasy. And so we're actually doing a third thing as well. So in addition to the housing plan, the focused work on the incentive policy, I mentioned in the introduction to community development that we're going to be starting and listening to her. And this is myself, Shane Dilly, Deputy City Manager, City Engineer Rick Barrett, and a member of the Chamber of Commerce. And we're looking at, it's an overall question about how our development processes impact the cost of projects, things we can do to build efficiencies. So it's not focused exclusively on housing, but we intend to explore that topic. So I think that's a third effort underway to try to see what we can do with our, again, our development process to try to build efficiencies and in the end, impact the cost of projects.
So we're looking at incentive policies. We're looking at the process of getting something through your department, Mr. Folk. But you know, just to throw a couple of ideas out, not, not to debate their value, but to show as an example, if we would allow rolled curves instead of square curves that get poured and they have to be cut and then have to be repoured, we could save $1,000 per house. And somewhere, and I have a whole list of those, somewhere in this process, I hope that we can look at things like that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Ms. Dar, if you'd like to continue?
Thank you. We are always open for questions. All right. Now I'm going to make your brains hurt, but I promise it's going to be worth it. So a little bit of background, we covered this a little bit last time, but we're going to cover, I'm going to give you this background again for a very important purpose. So the Flagstaff Housing Authority, of course, has two separate programs. We talked about the voucher program, which is the housing assistance attached to the person. And then last time, I also talked about public housing, which is housing we own and operate. And so this serves and comes up to 80% of AMI. And we own and operate 265 public housing units in this community. They're located at three, well, they're located at two main sites and then a bunch of little ones. So I'm going to go over those sites in detail in a moment. But it is important for you to know that all of the public housing in Flagstaff and the associated property is actually owned by the city of Flagstaff. Housing authorities in Arizona are a little different animal than housing authorities in other states. In other states, housing authorities are independent entities of government. They're their own little, they have their own rights. In Arizona, housing authorities are an instrumentality of a different unit of government, either a city or a county, for example. And so the city of Flagstaff is actually the owner of all of the property the housing sits on and the improvements. Now, all of that property is restricted by declarations of trust that limit its use to affordable housing. I know you can't read this. It's just kind of an example of the HUD stuff that we have to deal with. So please don't try to read it. But it is a declaration of trust. And it specifies because the funding for public housing was provided by HUD and HUD restricted the use of that land and improvements to affordable housing to ensure that it stayed affordable and their investment was protected in perpetuity. This next slide is not in your packet because I realized when I was looking at the presentation today that I had not done context maps for locations. So when you look at this and you're like, I don't remember seeing that, that's because I forgot to put it in. So I'm going to talk about Siler Homes. This is the context map of where Siler is located. We're over here in East Flag. If I orient you, it's behind what used to be the East Side Sizzler over by Jitters. I know I'm basing this off of food. It could be because I'm hungry. And so we are over here and here we go. There's an overview. So it's located off of Fanning Drive. Of course, serves low-income families up to 80%. There are 100 units in this 19 and a half acre site. So it's a pretty low density. It, it looks and feels like a small. a small neighborhood. And I'm trying to remember the term that, that was used last week in the presentation on Sky Cottages. I was like, oh, my gosh, that's what this is. It's a rental community that looks like a single family community. So our main Housing Authority office is located at this site right up against Siler Homes, or right up against, I'm sorry, Fanning Drive. And this building right here is the maintenance shop that supports this site and all of the east side units. We have two, three, four, and five bedroom units in this development. It was developed in nineteen seventy. And it has larger bedroom sizes because that's what was called for at the time that it was developed. That's what the community, the community need was. And so another interesting fact that some council members are, are aware of and others may not be, is that we actually own and operate the gas systems, the natural gas systems in, in our public housing developments. So that adds an additional layer of complexity onto what I learned a lot. I've learned a lot about being a very small utility. And so long-term goals include trying to get Unisource to take that over, but it's not as easy as it sounds. So while we are on this slide, I want to point out this piece of property right here. Is my cursor working? I believe it is. So this property at the corner of Fanning and Lockett, we were successful in purchasing a few years ago. And so that's going to come into play into a later slide. But while I was here, I wanted to point out that it, that we share this long boundary with it. And it is immediately contiguous to Siler Homes. I'm going to move on to Brandon. This is context map. Brandon is located over here off of Lone Tree, south of what is now the Sawmill Development. Serves families up to eighty percent AMI. There are a hundred and twenty-seven units in here, including the, the Cogdill Recreation Center, which is actually listed as a HUD asset. There are twenty-one bedrooms. These are, there are twenty-one bedrooms. These are our only one-bedroom units and the turnover here is slow because quite, quite often the occupants of these one-bedroom units are elderly. And when they arrive, they typically don't have another resource to move out. So this one was developed in stages between nineteen fifty-two and nineteen sixty-two. And so what did the fire chief say? Aging infrastructure and resource scarcity. I wrote those down because those play into this as well. We do have aging infrastructure. These are old, they, these are old units. There's no other way to put that. And the upkeep on aging housing stock is expensive. And so those are our two main sites. We do have scattered sites in the community, I mentioned. Those are located literally scattered throughout. There's some on Cherry Hill. There's some in South Side. There's some in Greenlaw. There's some in Sunnyside. They are truly scattered within the community. Why is Sarah telling us all of these facts about public housing? I promise I have a purpose. Hang with me. So we need to talk about the future of public housing. And the fact that the capital needs of public housing have far, far outpaced federal funding for more than the past decade. And in twenty-ten, and they haven't really updated this, I looked for one, but a conservative estimate of the backlog of capital needs in housing authorities nationwide was about twenty-six billion with annual growth of, growth of three-point-five billion nationwide. Public housing stock has been neglected for capital needs for a very long time. And I can tell you that our maintenance staff has done an incredible job, but there are times where what we're able to afford to do is, is not enough, especially when we're working with units that, that are, are quite, quite aged. So I want to introduce to you a new term, repositioning public housing. Some of this is familiar to previous council members. We did receive previous council direction concerning the project I'm about to talk to you about. So if this feels familiar, that's why. So the future of public housing, public housing is actually limited by congressional appropriations and also statutory restrictions. So something called the Faircloth Amendment that was passed in nineteen ninety-nine. And what it says is that there can never be more public housing units than what we had on this date in nineteen ninety-nine, which was two-hundred-and-sixty-five. So I, I've even asked like, well, if somebody else gets rid of some, can we have those? The answer is no. I bring this up to you with a little bit more detail because there has been some buzz on the federal level about potentially introducing legislation that removes this Faircloth Amendment. But this is one of the limitations that we're working with when we're talking about the future of public housing. So now for the worst acronym I'm going to talk to you about probably ever. There's a program called the Rental Assistance Demonstration and it's called RAD. And we say things like going RAD. Are you going to do RAD? Like, so I found my eighties graphic down here, totally rad. This was actually established in two thousand and eleven as a way to give housing authorities the ability to access the capital that is sitting in the land under the units. Because deeds, restrictions do not allow that funding to be borrowed again. We can't borrow against that asset in order to address these. I look at it in a very simplistic term. It's like getting a home equity loan that you can use to address some larger projects and payoff over time. So what would going RAD do? It's intended to give public housing authorities more flexibility to access funding to address what HUD has neglected to fund for a long time. But it will also reduce our reliance on funding that is unpredictable and unreliable from Washington. It is so hard to budget for public housing because we don't know what we're getting. And sometimes it's a couple of months into the fiscal year when we find out how much money we're actually getting. And that has been, well, it's been a challenge frankly. So what is RAD? Why would we do it? What does it look like? I want to stop right here and say it is incredibly important. And you're going to get sick of hearing me say this over the next couple of years. No one is losing their housing. We may redevelop, but that does not mean that people are going to lose their housing. When we're working with a housing vulnerable population, it is incredibly important to not increase that feeling of vulnerability. When we start talking about redeveloping or perhaps redoing public housing, no one is going to lose their housing. So I want to throw that on the table often. So the next slide says, "This will allow us to leverage both public and private debt in order to reinvest in the public housing stock." In RAD, public housing moves to a different federal financial platform with a long-term contract with HUD by law must be renewed. So doing this, we're going to have a predictable budget that we're going to go into this contract with HUD. And there'll be a number that is adjusted on an annual basis and must be renewed. So we're going to have much more predictable budgeting with our HUD funding. And this also continues to ensure that the units remain permanently affordable. Residents will continue to pay an income-based rent and they maintain the same basic rights as they possess in the public housing program. Even though we're changing to another regulatory platform, it mirrors public housing. RAD maintains the public stewardship of the converted property through clear rules of ongoing ownership and use. Actually, the RAD rules require that we stay majority owner of whatever happens. This is not a way to turn public housing units or what converted public housing units over to the private sector so that at some day they expire. And this is a cost neutral program for RAD, which means it's a cost neutral program for us. It does not change our funding. It redistributes that funding in a way where we are able to build long-term performance for property management and development, which is not something that we can do right now because of the way that HUD funding is appropriated. That was a lot of words. I know that. So how? Well, other rental assistance programs are more flexible. For example, like Section Eight. And transitioning to an existing program financially designed to work alongside other public and private financing tools is what we'll be doing. Stick with me. I promise. I promise. It's going to get easier. So the HUD repositioning tools are intended to be used with private ones. So this is where we're going to see another intersection of private and public money in order to create additional housing units, affordable housing units in our community and preserve our aging stock. So some examples of private programs or other federally funded but private low-income housing tax credit programs from the Federal Home Loan Bank, some other federal funding sources like Home Money. We'd have to compete with that through the state. Traditional lending. We're sitting on land that has a lot of value. And the intent of this is to be able to access some of that value in order to meet our, our local goals of creating additional units through existing, through accessing that existing equity. What does it not mean? It means housing units are not going away. Public housing residents are not losing their homes. This is a financial conversion that can also result in redevelopment or rehabilitation. And there is not more money from HUD. So when you may do some little research and you start looking into this and it says, you know, the, and some headlines are, are sensational and they say the end of public housing. Yes. HUD has indicated to us that public housing, they're not interested in funding public housing anymore. The public housing has proven to be an unsustainable platform for the long term. And they are encouraging, right now they're using the word encourage, housing authorities to transition to this other financial platform. So when I say public housing units are going away, that means public housing in the public housing box. It means that that unit would then be, still be an affordable unit, still have an income-based rent, but wouldn't qualify as traditional public housing. So why would we do this? Why would we tear our hair out and do this? Typically, the agencies that have looked at going RAD, I'm sorry, going RAD is a horrible term, but it's what we have. They're looking to address a problem of crumbling housing stock, housing stock that is badly managed financially or has fallen into disrepair. There are public housing units in this nation that are actually condemned. We are not in that boat. We are not badly managed financially. Our budgets are all in the black. And our public housing stock is aging and, and crumbling applies to some of it, but it, it's really in decent shape for what it is. And so when HUD looked at our books, looked at what we had, they can't make us do this. They are still, however, strongly encouraging. So why would we? Because it's going to give us the opportunity to stabilize under a different predictable federal funding source. We're going to be able to increase the number of affordable rentals while also leveraging that private investment to be able to tailor what we're doing to meet our local needs. So what's working in our favor? We do have financial and program stability. All of our programs are rated as high performer by HUD. Our Housing Authority staff is excellent. They are very good at what they do. We have professional and experienced staff. We've had staff members retire in the last year who had forty-seven years of experience with us. He started as, as maintenance and worked his way all the way up. We have incredible longevity within Housing Authority staff. Our units are in decent condition and we're not looking for anybody to come in and save us. Our locations are in desirable locations. They are central to community amenities. They are accessible by public transportation. They are close to other resources. We have community need working in our favor. Yes, a housing emergency, more housing need than we can possibly put our finger on right now. And we have some advanced planning coming into play, which is the purchase of that site appropriate for construction of housing. What we're kind of envisioning is that that site I showed you when we were looking at the map of Siler. We've got to be able to relocate people if we are, are redeveloping. And so we have that site that could be built on first and we can rotate people through that site where they have a place to live. Everyone whose unit is impacted by RAD actually has a federal right of return to that unit. If they choose not to return to that unit, we are required to issue them a housing voucher. So it's going to be a little of a balancing game, but it's totally, totally doable. So did housing staff think up all of this on our own? We did not. We are following models used nationwide and here in Arizona. Maricopa County has completed this process for all of their housing units, all their public housing units. They no longer have public housing. Everything's been converted to this other platform. City of Chandler is, is seeking a partner right now. City of Phoenix is underway. We are not first in the game, given when the program created, but we are not late to the game either. So how do we get from here to there? And what we're going to do is identify a co-developer partner. This will give us the temporary expertise and capacity building necessary for us to be successful. This is incredibly complex. And there are firms that do this. This has become their specialty of what they do. We have a competitive request for statement of qualifications that we anticipate will be published within February. So today procurement, legal, and housing all sat down and put some of the very finishing touches on it. How in the world are we doing this? Well, any development partner is expected to be paid through developer fees that come at the end that are associated with future development and redevelopment. We are not coming to this process with money on the table. This is not an unusual format. This is a format being used nationwide. It is the expectation of a developer coming in knowing that housing authorities have been underfunded for decades and don't have money to be able to pay for some of this stuff upfront. That sounds scary. I know it sounds scary. We believe that it is a reasonable risk. And we can take advantage of that with a contract. And this is also another common provision, that the contract can provide an out to us at any point in time. It makes, it, it does not obligate us if we embark on this planning process, when we embark on this planning process with a co-development partner, to utilize that partner either all the way through. Maybe we get to a point where the money isn't working or the partner isn't working or whatever it is. We have the right or will have the right to, to stop if it doesn't work and it's not right for our community. So it's important that we go down this road. It's important that we start to go down this road, one, because there's a cap on the number of units that can be done under this program right now. And it is also industry belief that it is about to become required that HUD is doing this demonstration. Remember Rental Assistance Demonstration Program. They're doing as the demonstration to get the bugs worked out before they require housing authorities to do this. When HUD does that, they create programs that are one size fits all from New York and Los Angeles down to the idiots, biddiest housing authority in the nation. We don't want to be part of that. We want to be where we are now, where the office, it is the HUD Office of Recapitalization, where they're still open to ideas and they're still open to, this isn't working for our community. Can we do it this way? They're highly flexible right now, which is incredibly advantageous for us to be able to address some of the unique conditions we encounter in our community while also revitalizing what we need to revitalize in our public housing. I know that is a ton of information and your brains are probably bleeding. But I'm happy to take questions before we move on to Housing Bond.
Council, do we have any questions at this time? All right. I'm not seeing any. If you'd like to proceed.
All right. So folks either, they either fell asleep or no, I know you're not. But it is, it's a complex topic and it is, it is difficult. We've tried to, to bring it to an understandable level, Council. So thank you for sitting through that and, and seeking to understand the direction we're going. It's an exciting opportunity for our community to be able to address our local needs and utilize land that's already zoned for affordable housing and has affordable housing on it, just at a much lower density. So our next topic, Housing Bond 2022. We heard you at the Council Budget Retreat. Back into my presentation and added some, some more bond things. So we are seeking Council direction on this one tonight. Please, I'd like to say that upfront. I hope to walk out of this with a little more information. with a little more information than we have right now. So let's review. Timeline 2020. I'm gonna go back a little bit further into 2019, uh council established the Housing Commission in October of 2019. Um, we were able, no, it was before summer break, but we were able to get everybody named in October. Sorry for that, that was a little brain mix up. Um, so this timeline I pulled from the from a Housing Commission um slide, where we were talking about where we're going and how this is working. One of the first things council tasked the Housing Commission with was examine um whether a bond makes sense for housing in our community and to come up, if so, come up with some recommendations for city council to consider. So we did that. Um, and came to council on March 3rd. And then you can see what happened. I have a big orange line and the word COVID because the second discussion, which it wasn't finished on March 3rd, we came back for a second night in in mid-March and it was just as everything was shutting down. Um, and council's conversation was that this was not the year to put any bond um um items on on the ballot. So none of these things after the March 3rd happened. So I want to provide you with what the Housing Commission did come up with for attainable housing bond recommendations. Their process was a fast process, however, the commission members really dedicated themselves. The commission itself met twice a month. And we had informal working groups um creating uh recommendations for council to consider, they were able to prioritize them, and they asked a lot of questions. Um, what could we do here? Would this work? Would that work? What about this? So they were very comfortable in forwarding the recommendations that they completed. And those recommendations come in um three forms, I'm just glancing over at my notes. One of the things the Housing Commission focused on was what happened with with um 422. And then that was the previous bond item that had been on the ballot that did fail. It failed by seven hundred and fifty-seven votes, which is not an overwhelming um failure. It is a, we don't particularly like the details, was kind of what the Housing Commission um discussed surrounding that. So we looked at the past as well, I hadn't mentioned that piece, and came up with recommendations that encompass the housing continuum from homelessness to homeownership, emergency rental and homeownership. I'm gonna go over these with you, I probably cannot answer a lot of detailed questions because it's been a long time since we had these discussions. And COVID has sucked up a lot of my brain power. But first recommendation off would be emergency housing recommendations um to support existing and develop new eviction and homelessness prevention, rapid rehousing, and move-in assistance programs to advance community efforts in housing stabilization and permanency. The commission felt it was important to put in place whether this had a revolving fund capability or not. And emergency housing does typically not have um a revolving fund um capability. The estimated community benefit, if funded with ten million, is about fifty-three hundred households. Moving on to rental housing recommendations. Um, you can see revolving um capacity, some approximate unit numbers, but here we go, RH1 redevelopment of housing owned and managed by the city. That's what we just talked about. Um, it's possible we're going to need to come in as a partner with funding at some point in time, and it would be important to have potential access to funding in order to do that. Um, coming into the planning process without paying for anything. Um, uh, let's see, RH2 incentivize private sector affordable rental housing development through the creation of a revolving loan fund to be able to know and to tell developers that we have the capacity to partner. Right now, when a developer contacts us to be a partner in a low-income housing tax credit project, the conversation goes something like this. Yeah, I'm pretty sure council would be interested in something like this, but let us get back to you and see if we have any money. And so this would create a fund where we're able to do that with some repayment pieces within there that could create a revolving fund. Um, RH3 acquisition of property in partnership with private developers for adaptive reuse for affordable housing and creation, I'm sorry, of available property for the creation of affordable housing. And this one has some sustainability undertones in it too, with the adaptive reuse, the commission felt that that was um important as well. And then on to homeownership. Um, a purchase assistance program um similar to our down payment and closing cost assistance programs with revolving fund capacity, and then the acquisition of land or units for affordable homeownership um revolving fund capacity, yes. So we brought these to council with this slide here that was not highlighted orange on March 3rd. And with count, with options for council, here's what um at twenty, twenty-five, and thirty million, this could look like, here are the recommended projects. Um, council gave an initial indication of moving forward at the thirty million dollar level, which is why I highlighted that column for tonight. But I wanted to make sure we were consistent with what we had shown council um a year ago. So tonight, council, what I'm hoping for are some some directions surrounding this. So possible options um that council's interested in, and they want the Housing Commission to dust off or update the recommendations before further council discussion. This is actually our staff recommendation, which would give us the ability to address any changed conditions within the past year. Um, or council can say, nope, we really want to talk about this ourselves, and staff is also happy with that option. Um, we also see an option for council to say we're not interested and stop pursuing this. We're also open for any other options that you may have. And with that, I'd like to pause and receive direction, please.
Thank you, Ms. Dar. We do have one public comment on this item. So um if Ms. Salzberg would like to get that um individual from the public on the line, we'll take that before council discusses.
You're getting it right now.
Oh, there we go. And Harlan, you're all set to go ahead. Yes, you can go ahead now.
What was that, sorry?
Oh, you can go ahead now if you wanted to mute your computer.
Yes, I'll do that now.
There we go.
And you're welcome to go right ahead when you're, when you'd like.
Harlan, you're all set.
Yes, thank you. I'm so excited to thank the city council and thank the Housing Commission for all the work they've done on this so far. Just giving you a moment to pull up the comment I posted that wrote earlier. So I just want to preface this statement by saying that I'm a current homeowner and I do not personally benefit from expansion of affordable housing. However, I think more needs to be done to help those who are unable to find affordable housing, as locals should not be priced out of a town from which they've lived their entire lives. I think the public housing expansion is a helpful step. I think there needs to be larger discussion um specifically around the incentive policy for affordable housing, which I know was discussed um earlier, and the Housing Commission is looking to make changes to that. So currently developers receive this incentive as long as at least ten percent of the housing is deemed affordable. Um, but these incentives allow for developers to gain benefits for houses with prices that equate to a hundred fifty percent of the AMI, the area median income. And this does not help those that need affordable, this does not help some of those that need affordable housing, and this would be very difficult for them to purchase a house that is over a hundred percent AMI price. Um, so I propose that the IPAH, which is that incentive policy, be reexamined to allow for the following. Make the minimum limit to receive kickbacks twenty percent affordable units for new developments. Add additional incentives, the developers will still come to town with those new requirements. Um, don't provide kickbacks for AMIs over a hundred and ten percent. And price per square foot should also be written in to be below the median average for Flagstaff. Reason I specifically pointed out the price per square foot was that some new developments that have recently come to town were offering an affordable unit for a starting price of three hundred fifty thousand dollars, excluding any upgrades since those are builder's grade. And those were two-bed by one bath or two-bed by one and a half bath, eleven hundred twenty-seven and eleven hundred fifty-eight square foot. Um, doll, uh eleven hundred fifty-eight square foot homes. So the minimum price per square foot would be then three hundred two dollars per square foot, and this is almost forty dollars higher than the median price per square foot of these of listings currently in Flagstaff. And that's current, so it's on the market right now, which are about three hundred homes, and that data was from Realtor.com. And then the other two comments I wanted to quickly address were the community land trust prices. So two properties, property five one nine, um that's currently two hundred thirty-one thousand dollars, and the price per square foot is three hundred thirty dollars. And seven hundred twenty West Birch Avenue, which is eight hundred eighty square foot, which is about three hundred twenty-three thousand dollars, and that's three hundred sixty-six dollars per square foot. And then lastly, for the Faircloth Amendment. So as was discussed earlier, is there anything that the local government can do to lobby the state to repeal or replace this Faircloth Amendment, since it was put in place over twenty years ago? And Flagstaff's current population has grown. So with that.
Thank you. Thank you, your three minutes is up. I really appreciate your uh comments and suggestions. Uh, counsel, do we have any uh comments or questions for the uh public commentator? All right, well, thank you very much for your time and uh your suggestions. Um, now to council direction, uh Ms. Dar, you're you're mentioning here that you have another uh slide?
It it's one with just some coming attractions, but it would be great to pause here for direction. Thank you.
Oh, and I'm sorry, I also meant, I saw your uh message here, Ms. Dar, about uh getting the contact info for the individual speaking. Um, obviously knows a thing or two about what's going on and and uh love for them to get involved if uh if uh Mr. Johnson or anyone else who took the call could forward that, that'd be great.
All right, thank you so much.
All right, and aside from that, I believe we had uh Vice Mayor Daggett had a a comment regarding this.
Thank you, mayor, and um thank you, Ms. Dar, and the rest of your great staff. Um, I am enthusiastic about a bond um going before voters for affordable housing. And so my direction would be uh to take this back to the commission. Uh, make sure that everything um that you have listed is still um as it should be, and then bring it back to council. And um I'm I'm assuming that we're going to be having a discussion about other bond issues sometime soon. So if we could look at all of these at the same time, that would be great, but my direction is um I'd love to see it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, uh, counsel, feel free to jump in, I'll I'll uh speak on this. I have, I would like to see uh what options we have with our bond um in the future, and I would like to send this back to the Housing Commission to, yeah, dust it off, update, and um see what other suggestions or maybe available at this time. Um, and I'm not saying, you know, I'll be gung ho and on it one hundred percent, but it's definitely extremely important and we need to uh pursue what and see what options are available. I will mention, though, that there are two aspects of this that I would like us to be able to put into the bond or be an integral part of the discussion. One is uh while our climate action and adaptation plan, and if we are going to be new, doing new builds or updating anything, that they really need to be uh carbon neutral. And uh, you know, I would want to make sure that those environmental standards, that this isn't going to interfere with our twenty thirty climate action plan, and rather it supports it. Um, the other aspect is related to really why the bond, as I saw it previously and heard from others, uh that there, we, they wanted a level of accountability and transparency with where the dollars are being spent. I'm aware, San Francisco, when they posted, put their housing bond forward, they actually have it on the website with line items for where the money is um being spent. And having some system or something set up with that, I think would be, make uh the public a lot more comfortable with the with the idea. So just a couple of thoughts, transparency and climate action, let's make sure we keep those in mind. Uh, and with that, I will move to uh, well, have Councilmember McCarthy comment.
Thank you, mayor. Um, the last time that council put a housing bond before the voters, uh I supported that. And I probably will end up supporting uh what, you know, putting this before the voters again. Uh, but I would like to point out that and and Ms. Dar said this several times, that you know, of capital A affordable housing is really subsidized housing. So what we're asking the voters to do is voluntarily increase their own taxes to subsidize the cost of housing to other people. And that's something we need to keep in mind. And, you know, and the amount that we ask for, I think that's of concern to me too, that we keep that down to a reasonable number. Um, I'd probably more inclined to support rehabbing our existing housing stock. Um, and uh the type of projects that would be, I forget what you call it in that last column, uh uh reusable funds. For instance, a down payment assistance program where we use the money, and then when the people sell the house, it goes back into the fund, and that's guaranteed. So uh, those are the things that I'd probably be more inclined to support than some of the other ideas. So yes, send it back to the Housing Commission. Uh, but, you know, this isn't a blank check, a carte blanche. It's, it's, you know, be reasonable and make recommendations that are are practical and and have a better chance of being supported by the voters. And I agree with the mayor in that having a specific list of uh recommendations or how the money would be spent is critical, as he pointed out in San Francisco. And I think, Ms. Dar, I think you would agree that that was one of the shortfalls of the last time we put this to the voters. So I'll leave it at that for now, thank you.
Thank you, council member. Uh, council member Shimoney.
Thank you, mayor. Um, so Ms. Dar, I am in favor of this bond being brought back to the Housing Commission and then back to us and then to the public, hopefully. Uh, I like to see us consider some options, maybe some that are more palatable to the public, especially during a time of the pandemic and the financial struggles. Um, Ms. Dar, maybe not this council meeting, but in the future, we can dive into the the recommendations that the previous Housing Commission has had brought to us. I thought there was some pretty good detail in there that broke down how the money would be spent. Um, maybe it wasn't quite as much detail as might want, and we can dive into that detail further. But I thought there was some decent transparency and accountability being laid out for us to chew on. So without getting into that too much, uh, I am a yes and I am supportive. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. Uh, I really want to thank Ms. Dar, her team, and the Housing Commission. As someone new on council, tonight's presentation, wow, just helped me understand everything uh so much better, so I I appreciate the time and effort. Um, I am a yes on bringing this back to council and uh would like to also stress, you know, the more details, the better, and to just keep in mind that we're coming off of a pandemic and to be sensitive to that when we bring this back. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. Uh, Councilmember Aslan.
Thank you, mayor, short and sweet. Um, I would love to see a bond like this eventually pass here in Flagstaff, and the best for us to be moving towards that direction uh is the first option here. Let's let's dust this thing off and put it back for the commission and get some further council discussion on it. Um, I also want to echo your comments, mayor, about making sure this uh includes our cap goals and to move forward. We had a little bit of a debate early last year, uh late last year about We had a little bit of a debate early last, late last year about crisis versus emergency. I think we're well past the semantics of that. We all realize we need to work on housing and making sure that people can afford to stay in Flagstaff who are already here. And we need to do that in tandem with our climate emergency goals as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Aslan. Do we have any other further comments from council? I think we have pretty clear direction here moving forward.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that clear direction. And we will begin this work with the Housing Commission. We'll dust it off. This is it, counsel. I'm done. But we wanted to give you some more coming attractions. You'll be seeing in April, funding awards for CDBG, recommendations for those funding awards. You'll be seeing our annual action plan and our five-year consolidated plan coming forward for your consideration and hopeful approval. We also will be bringing to you consideration of a new program, a Section 8 Deposit Assistance Program. We've been able to utilize some CARES money that was allocated to the housing authority to free up some other funding that will allow us to assist with helping people get into units. More details on that later. And then, of course, we've mentioned it before, we'll mention it again, incentive policy for affordable housing rewrite. It's clear from public comments, from our work as staff, our work with developers, et cetera, that this is a necessary rewrite. It's not an issue in semantics. It's not something we're going to tweak a couple of numbers and bring to you. It will have a public participation process, et cetera. Please keep in mind that we have to do this in partnership with Planning and Development Services. We are housing nerds. We are not planning and development staff. And so we are not the experts in this area. So we're going to work very closely with the experts in that area. And that also includes experts in the community, not simply, this is not simply a staff effort. And with that, I have a question slide. I'll take them if you have them. And if not, I would like to thank you so very much for your time, the gift of time to reach this deep into programs with each night.
Thank you, Ms. Dar. Councilmember Shimoney has a quick closing comment.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for the in-depth presentation, Mrs. Dar. I just wanted, I just had in my notes highlighted to just make a point about the connection between housing and sustainability. And I'm glad to hear that we're working on that. I think that there is still a gap in understanding and in the plans. And I think it's time that we merge and kind of address some of those tensions and get on the same page so that we can move together united. Thank you and have a good night.
That is one of the reasons we have a working group for the tenure plan, specific to the connections between housing and sustainability, is to make sure we're making those connections everywhere we can. So thank you for that feedback.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Dar. And I think after that, we don't have any other questions. And I think it might be a good break time. So if we could be back here, let's do a full 15 minutes this time, so 8:20, freshen off, and we can finish this up. So I'll see you here at 8:20. Thank you.
Bye.
All right. We are now down to agenda item number nine, which is the acquisition of real property in the general area of 703 Blackbird Roost for affordable housing. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, there is no staff presentation on this tonight. Of course, there was an executive session earlier on it today. And I plan to do an executive session to provide you some additional legal advice in the future. That said, if there are any public comments, obviously you could take those or if you have any questions, if there are anything I could answer here, I would. But again, I would be back later with an additional executive session.
Excellent. Thank you, City Attorney. I do see we have one public comment, which we can take now.
Mr. Cullum, you can go and speak.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, my name is Tony Cullum, 14 Eastdale. I've been an attorney here in Flagstaff for 40 years, and we're the Real Estate Specialists. I wanted to speak for just a few minutes. We represent Jay Olson and Company. Jay Olson is, and his company are the actual owners of the property we're talking about. So just bringing you up to date on the property itself, and I won't take a lot of your time, and I know you've had a late night. The, we've been actively involved in developing this property. We've been working on it for about six months to a year. The, we've been getting directions from city staff on the zoning, the area required plans. We're now in the process of hiring architects and engineers and designers to start on the project. The, once we get a good set of plans developed, we'll be meeting back with staff. We'll also be meeting with the Plaza Vieja community leaders who this area plan is in. Remember, this property has on the backside with the Rio de Flag. So whoever developed it, us or you, is going to need to work on that drainage project and actively get involved in it. But the developer is a community supporter. And as your brilliant city attorney, I'm sure has told you, the city can always condemn this property. But if the city isn't actually interested in it, then the developer will hold up on the development and will entertain either a trade. The problem with the actual condemnation is it moves fairly quickly and you've got to have that money committed right up front. So we can work on a trade or we could work on a sale process, which would be a partial trade and with money coming in in the future. And that would all be a council direction or discretion. It would be nice for the owner to know at some point in time in the near future whether the council actually is interested in proceeding. If not, the developer will go ahead and work with its experts and with staff to go ahead and do that. Or hold off and we can work together with the city on some interesting thought processes. Just a simple comment, in working with the city so far on this project, Anya Lindell from the City Attorney's Office has been a sweetheart, but a long-range planner, Sarah Dexter, it's been great, and Bryce Doughty from the Real Estate Department.
Thank you, Mr. Cullum.
We're here for any questions you may have. And thank you for letting us speak on it. And the only reason we're here is this particular project was put on the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cullum. I appreciate it. Do we have any comments, counsel, or questions? All right. Well, thank you very much. That will bring us down to agenda item number 10. This is case number PZ2100019, zoning code text amendment dash 2021, affordable housing modified development standards. City Seth.
Good evening, members of council. Dan Simon, planning and zoning, I'm the zoning code manager for the city. And I'll give you a brief update on this project and overview. And as I shift into the PowerPoint, I'm going to turn off my camera. Before I do that, I'm going to turn off my camera. And do that. So. So the case before you, as the mayor indicated, is PZ2100019. It is a zoning code text amendment for affordable housing modified development standards. And this does play off of a lot of what we just heard of with the housing program and the incentive policy for affordable housing and a related zoning code. You know, the housing staff is, it's a great program and takes special people to do it. So, but on this program, it was, this text amendment was put together by myself, Tiffany Antel, Christina Rubicasa, and Alex Trell, with some assistance from housing. So the concept before you is going to be a work session. This is to allow for public comments and suggestions and to hear any concerns, inform the council, and allow for their suggestions. But no action is taken tonight. It's a work session, get your input. This zoning code amendment is an amendment to the code, but it's specific to affordable housing projects. So it's in the affordable housing incentive section of the code. Many communities refer to this as amended development standards. They refer to it as modified standards. Some communities refer to these as variances, but they really are not. These are modified development standards. So what it will do, it'll allow the council to modify the existing property development standards, such as setbacks, open space, other area requirements that will assist a affordable development project to meet the requirements. Although, we do have some suggested limitations, and those are building height, outdoor lighting, and signs and density provisions. Now, why are those in there? The zoning code already addresses 60-foot-tall buildings and transit zones allow for greater than that. The outdoor lighting is a touchy subject that, you know, all projects need to address the standard sizes. There already are incentives for additional sign area. And density, density is already addressed in our zoning code for the affordable housing provision. So these provisions will allow to modify those other standards. Currently, the code only allows for the planning director to approve up to a 15% modification. This will allow up to 100% modification if approved by the city council. And it also will allow for amendments to the parking standards as a amendment to the parking standards to be less than one space per dwelling unit. And it's limited to those developments that are 100% affordable for an AMI, which is the average, medium income of 80% or less for the Flagstaff area. Why are we bringing this forward now? As we heard a couple of weeks ago, and Sarah hit on it a little bit in her presentation, we're going to be updating the affordable housing incentives in the zoning code and the incentive policy for affordable housing. That's a year-long process, and we have opportunities right now coming through our process that this proposal can be utilized to help solidify those affordable housing projects. And it's not just one project. It could be used for all different types of projects. There are some kind of findings that, it's very simple, is, you know, is it conformance with the general plan goals? Is the amendments detrimental to the health, public safety, will not jeopardize or cause any hazards? Why are these important? And why isn't density one of those, too? Because you're modifying the standards of a zone. Most communities have what's called a planned zone or a planned district that allow for these type of modifications, and they handle this part of a zoning map amendment. We don't have that ability here yet. It is on my work program, but if you remember, it's one of those things that we're in the to-dos, but not important, because we have other tools in our toolbox that we can use. And it's important that we maintain conformance with the general plan for that zone, and we don't degrade the zone to a point that it warrants really the property should rezone. So if you start bouncing your density up higher, you start changing your development standards, you have to ask the question, should this property be rezoned so that they get that instead of the modifications? But the development standards is general conformance to the general plan. So as long as you're working within that, you're fine. You know, you can keep that going. So and there's some other kind of development findings that we have is consistent with the character. You don't want a development that's out of character. These standards are intended to help a development project that's affordable work. In other words, there are standards that could, you know, it may, if they had three more feet or five more feet, they can get another affordable unit. Whereas the property development standards otherwise would not allow that. Or their setbacks are a way that they couldn't get the parking to work. Or their building envelope elevation changes, you know, just a slight change here or there can make a big deal in cost. And finally, the last finding would be, now, we don't want a development to come in and ask for these, all these modifications, but we're not getting the same quality as other types of projects. So is this, is the developer asking to waive all open space requirements? Is, you know, to provide no parking or to provide less amenities that would, sure, it costs less, but put a burden on the system or may hinder the living experience? So these kind of things, it's a judgmental, but it's findings. So our potential timeframe on this is relatively quick. So we're doing a work session today. We have planning commission tomorrow with a potential planning commission on the 25th, housing the 26th, and returning to council for adoption in March. So I'm open for any questions or considerations. Does the city council desire to incorporate this type of amendment? And does the city council recommend any additional modifications? Now, one thing I do want to point out, as we go through the process to update the incentive policy for affordable housing and the zoning code incentives, we will be relooking at this standard, you know, to open it up, see if there are other opportunities that it could be done. Although this is one that could be utilized right now and help projects that are currently going through the pipeline in the future that, you know, may not have the opportunity to wait a year as we go through that process. So that's why this amendment is before you right now, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. We do have one public comment on this, so we'll take that now before council chimes in.
Mr. Denham, you could go ahead and speak now. Sorry, could you try that again, Tyler?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. This is Tyler Denham. I'm just calling to encourage the council to take this issue seriously because the numbers presented by Sarah earlier, that was a great presentation, by the way, if Sarah's listening in, are not just abstract concepts. They represent a huge amount of real human suffering. Human suffering that city council tends to turn a blind eye to because the people most affected by housing affordability, young people, low-income renters, are not as politically engaged. But that's no excuse for ignoring their concerns. And all you council members, when you're taking a mental tally of what you perceive to be Flagstaff's biggest priorities, I encourage you to reflect for a moment. How many of the residents that you've interacted with are under 30 or renters or low-income? Because those residents have radically different concerns from housing secure property owners that are more politically active. And with that in mind on the current agenda item, I would like to see the council be more aggressive than the 15% allowable modification in property development standards. The modification makes it cheaper to build the housing, and the cheaper it is, the more units you're going to get, which is important, not just for the families that secure those units, but for increasing overall supply, which brings down prices. That's the end of my prepared comments. I do actually have a comment on something that was said earlier by Paul Deasy and Austin Aslan. You're talking about how you want to incorporate the climate goals into the affordable housing. I just want to respectfully mention that you physically can't meet your housing and climate change goals if all you build is single-family homes. Single-family homes require the most land to be cleared per person and are very car-dependent. I know that no one, you don't like this term density, but even the EPA states that dense mixed-use developments are essential to combating climate change. You're going to have to make a hard decision on what you care about more, housing affordability, climate change. climate change, or preserving low-density development patterns. You know, pick two, as they say. You can't have your kid committed to. Thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Denham, and thank you for your continued advocacy in this regard and very intelligent points that you continue to provide to us. Uh, council, do we have any questions or comments to Mr. Denham before we turn this in? Councilmember McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, this, my, uh, comments aren't to the speaker. They're just to general questions, more to staff.
Okay. Well, then, uh, yeah, I think, uh, we don't, I'm not seeing any other comments or questions for, uh, Mr. Denham. So, yeah, let's, uh, continue on. So, Ms., Councilmember McCarthy.
Okay, thank you. Um, uh, when I read about this in the packet, I didn't see if the proposal was for a certain term of affordable units. Would that be like for 15 years or 30 years or 50 years or what? Dan, can you answer that question?
Yes. Um, Mayor members of the council, it is for permanently affordable hot projects with an AMI, area medium income for the city of Flagstaff of 80% or less. So it's for 100% of the dwelling units that are permanently affordable and it's up to 100% of the standard. So you can waive the entire standard.
But that kind of ties into my, the, the way I read this when I read the packet, and maybe I was wrong, is that this, what we were talking about is waiving parking requirements. Are you saying that, that other requirements could be waived also?
That is correct. A- as shown on the screen, the amendment allows for any develop, property development standards, setbacks, open space landscaping, um, whatever, a public open space, uh, what, any type of standard, including parking.
Excluding or including?
Including parking.
Yeah, including. So, and I guess the safeguard here is that it would have to come to council for approval on an individual basis. Is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, this type of modification under, under statute does require uh, some public involvement.
Yeah, so public and council. So my last question, your comment really is, as far as the parking, um, reduced requirement, it might make more sense if the project were close to a transit stop. And the other thing is, it might make more sense if this project, this hypothetical project in the future were in a high-density area, uh, like an activity center. So those, that's the extent of my comments and, uh, questions. And thank you, Dan. I appreciate your help.
Thank you.
You, Councilmember McCarthy. Uh, Councilmember Shimoney has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Simmer. Um, so a couple of things, you know, going back to what Mrs. Dara was talking about, funding, 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 right? And so I see, I see this council as a real opportunity for us to kind of bypass that funding, um, challenge because this allows us to just directly negotiate with developers and developments that are coming into town. Dan, I, I'm struggling with 100% of the dwelling units number. So it's kind of like an all-or-nothing approach. Um, not that I have anything against 100% affordable housing, but I'm just wondering if we can come up with a menu of options to provide developers as they are considering doing something for the community. You know, if we had eight, 25% of a unit of a development going to even 120 AMI, that to me is worthwhile. And so I'm wondering if we can, I know that you're on a very tight time schedule and bringing this forward to other commissions. I, I love for us to see, you know, different options around 25% of the units, 50% of the units, 75% of the units and 100% of the units and a range of AMIs, right? 30% AMI, 60, 80, 100, 120. Um, not to get too complicated in this, I think keeping things vague will help in negotiations and allow us to not get too prescriptive in making sure that this is successful. Um, Mayor, hopefully I'm making sense. It is getting late, but my, my point is diversity in approaches, big, medium and small, and then a bunch of options and variances within that. My other comment is, um, I'm open to discussing building height, density, number of units, um, within a development when it comes to these types of negotiations around affordable units and a development. So I personally would like to see that be placed on the table in the negotiations. And I think that maybe what we can do with these types of negotiations is it could be brought before the housing staff and then to council. And my question is, is there one or two votes by council? Is it like a rezone?
Okay, Mayor, if I may respond to that?
Of course, go ahead.
The, there's two parts to this, uh, question. Uh, due to the, the, the need to kind of get this too quickly to help some stuff out, we did limit it to 100%. We do plan as part of the, the update with, for the affordable housing, uh, incentives and the, uh, incentive policy for affordable housing to relook at this and potentially expand it. So we are looking at that as we get more information and vet, vet it through a much broader public outreach. Uh, we are looking at, look at how to do that. We will be looking at it. Um, right now, this is to get this one through to get us started. And the additional question is, do you need to go through a rezoning process? No. It'd be one vote, one vote to council. That's coordinated through the, the current planning staff. And of course, housing would be involved and, you know, they have to do the assessment that it doesn't qualify. Um, we know that this works at 100% AMI because these are basically, as, as you heard earlier, is your low-income housing tax credit projects or your li-tech projects, which run on a very tight timeframe and they also have some of the most challenges. So that's why we're bringing this one forward at, at this time to kind of capture those projects. And as we develop more of the incentive policy, we will look at expanding that because that is a comment I did have, uh, developing this out.
Okay, so it is, that's why I thought too, is this was very much targeting the li-tech projects, which aren't too common from my understanding, although they do come up from time to time. Um, yeah, Mr. Simmer, if there's a way to integrate a range of options, um, I would be supportive of that, but I also hear what you're saying and just trying to get this in place. So those are my comments, Mayor, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Uh, Vice Mayor Daggett?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I am in support of these and I will listen to the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings and of course, I'll be at the Housing Commission meeting. And so I look forward to hearing, um, additional insights and input, but to have guaranteed affordability, affordability forever is, um, a really positive thing and something that we struggle with oftentimes with, um, affordable projects. And so, um, I'm very much in support of, of, um, doing what we can do to create incentives to, uh, develop more affordable housing in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, I'll chime in as well. I, um, for me, this, this looks good to move forward with. I'm looking forward to seeing the, um, the more comprehensive, uh, affordable housing incentive, uh, policy. Uh, this is what's needed right now to get some things going off the ground. I'm, I'm all for it. And then let's look at some, uh, more expansive options and diverse options as Councilmember Shimoney has, uh, suggested as well as, I know, a large plethora of things that I haven't even thought about when we go to the incentive, uh, policy. So, uh, that being said, I'm happy to move forward with this proposal and, um, yeah, if we have other council members want to chime in. Council, uh, Councilmember Sweet.
Just real quick, I wanted to say that I am happy to see this move forward. Thank
All right. So as, uh, Mr. Simmer, does this give you enough, uh, direction from city council to move forward?
Mayor, yes, it does. Thank you. And we'll see you back here hopefully in March. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, we are down to agenda item number 11, our state federal legislative updates, particular 11I, which is SB 1431, our flood control districts advisory board. Um, is Ms. Langley presenting on this?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Um, I'll go ahead and share my screen. I have one slide that just provides, um, an overview of the bill. All right, I'll put that into present mode. All right. So, um, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sarah Langley and I'm a management analyst. Uh, tonight, we would like to get your direction on Senate Bill 1431, which deals with flood control districts and advisory boards. So I'll provide a brief overview of the bill and then myself and Todd Medeska, our state lobbyist, um, are both here to answer any of your questions that you may have. So the city of Flagstaff is included within, uh, the boundaries of the Coconino County Flood Control District, which is tasked with reducing the risk of flood loss and minimizing the negative impacts of floods in our county. Uh, residents of Flagstaff as well as all other residents of Coconino County currently pay the Flood Control District tax, which the district then uses for flood mitigation and forest restoration, uh, sorry, projects throughout the county. Um, in terms of leadership, the Coconino County Flood Control District is directed by a board of directors, which is compromised or comprised of the, um, county board of supervisors. And there's currently no citizens advisory board for the county's flood control district. So looking at the legislation specifically, Senate Bill 1431 requires, instead of allows, uh, a county flood control district to have a citizens flood control advisory board. Uh, the citizens advisory board would be required to have access to budget information and would be allowed to make budget recommendations. Uh, in terms of breakdown, each member of the board of directors would be required to appoint, uh, one person from their district and at least three of these appointees must reside in cities. Lastly, employees of a city or town within the county are prohibited from being appointed to this advisory board. So overall, this bill would, uh, potentially create an opportunity for a resident of Flagstaff to be involved in the workings of the flood control district and to help make budgetary recommendations. And, um, this is something that the city has pushed for in the past. We wanted to, to bring it, um, to your attention. So at this point, we're looking for council's direction on if you'd like to support, oppose or remain neutral for this bill. And Todd and I are happy to answer any questions. Thank
Uh, thank you, Ms. Langley. Uh, Councilmember Shimoney has a question.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Langley. Um, so, Mayor, I do have some executive-related questions on this topic. I know we're tired and getting towards the end of our agenda. Uh, they wouldn't take long. So I'm just gonna put that out there for council. If council is willing to go into executive session on this, uh, do you think it's important? Um, and if they don't, I guess I could ask my questions afterwards, but those, that's my comments and my questions. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Do we have any other, uh, questions, comments from council?
Well, I said it very articulately, but with my mute button on. Uh, question for Mr. Shimoney, was that a motion to move into E-session?
Yeah, I, I'd like to make a motion to move into E-session there if that's appropriate.
And I will second that.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, this is Sterling Solomon, city attorney, just for purposes of legal advice only. That's the only reason we could go into executive session. I want to make sure that's understood. Is that what you're looking for is legal advice?
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember Shimoney, seconded by Councilmember McCarthy. Um, all those in favor?
All right.
Hi.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. All right. Well, we are continuing our discussion of the SB 1431, our flood control districts advisory board. Um, council, let's open this up for discussion of support, any changes that you would like to see. Oh, second here. Uh, council, Councilmember Shimoney.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, you know, I, I'd like to see us support this bill. I think this is a good step for, for the city and for our relationship with the county, with the flood control district. And I would like to just advocate that we have equal treatment with the city and county with whom can be included or excluded from this advisory board. Um, however, we need to, to, to shape that language to best meet that need. I am supportive of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Shimoney. Uh, I am also in support of that, um, for direction. Councilmembers, do we have anyone else who would like to comment? Councilmember McCarthy.
Ditto. That means same here.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Any of other council members like to comment this time or chime in? Councilmember Aslan?
Ditto squared. That means here, here, here.
All right. Well, I, without further, oh, Councilmember Solis.
Ditto to the fourth.
All right. I think we're all good to go then for staff direction, um, on this agenda item. We are now down to agenda item number 12, which is our public participation. Uh, city clerk, do we have anyone for this section?
We do not have any public participation tonight.
Excellent. Well, then on to agenda item number 13. This is informational items two from mayor, council and city manager and future agenda item requests. Um, I will go down the list here. Uh, city manager Clifton, do you have anything for this section?
Oh, thank you, uh, Mayor, and thank you, council. I do not, um, I just, uh, it's, it's a quick observation here. The process that we just went through on the state and federal legislative update, and forgive me, Sarah, if I'm speaking on your behalf here, but I think it's very representative of what council, uh, could and should expect going forward. And that is that our, our updates will focus more on bills that we think are of interest to you. And in the same respect, if bills come to your attention that you would like to, uh, share with your colleagues and, and put on our radar screen, it would be an opportunity for that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, city manager. And I will go through the list here, um, uh, through roll call if you have anything to, um, yeah, to inform us about, uh, starting with Vice Mayor Daggett.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, oh, where did I go? I do, I just have a couple of words, uh, regarding your apology earlier this evening. And I'd just like to say that I appreciate your apology and, um, we will see, uh, its sincerity demonstrated, uh, by future actions. And I think we can all agree that we will work best with a foundation of mutual respect. And Mayor, as the chair of our meetings, you're responsible for maintaining decorum. And last week, we saw what happens when that doesn't happen. And we have lots of important work to do and I encourage us to focus on the myriad challenges, um, before us. And I'm optimistic about, uh, moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Aslan?
Nothing for me at this time, except a big congratulations to our city manager. Nothing for me at this time, except a big congratulations to our City Manager on the news of his new grandson.
Good, Councilmember. Councilmember McCarthy?
Okay, a couple of things briefly. I'll say I've made a lot of mistakes in my life, and I've learned from them, and I think everyone here is, could do the same thing. On the Metro Plan, I would like to say the Metro Plan Board had a meeting this last week, and that they elected me to be the Chair, and they elected Patrice Horstman from the county to be the Vice Chair. And I would like to thank Ms. Salas for stepping up and agreeing to be the Representative from the Metro Plan to the Rural Transportation Advocacy Council. So, thank you, Ms. Salas. And then lastly, we had a week, a week or so ago, we had a discussion about Lowell Observatory and, and the, the bill that's gonna go through Congress. I just hope that we can have some kind of public process before Congress starts drafting bills, and I would hope that that process would be something that could be, really is, and have the appearance of being completely unbiased. So I, I guess I'm just wondering out loud how that process is gonna be happening. I don't think a first, a group, Lowell in particular, that has such a big stake in the outcome should be the one that runs that public process. I think it should either be the city, or City Council, or something like that. Those are just my thoughts. If no comments, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Councilmember McCarthy. Now we're down to Councilmember Salas, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I acknowledge your apology at the beginning of this meeting. As one of elected seven members privileged to represent our community at large, bestowed with public trust in this august chamber while currently meeting remotely and online, I exercised my privilege of speech, followed by a fair request. So it's been a long day, so please bear with me and allow me this time and space to speak my mind and my heart. We all acknowledge that there's more work that needs to be done to meaningfully and impactfully address homelessness and racism in our community, the social impacts and historic trauma of which have been felt for many generations. I look forward to seeking meaningful and impactful work by strengthening partnerships and collaboration with stakeholders and community partners, such as Coconino County, the Flagstaff Shelter Services, Catholic Charities, NACA, or the Native Americans for Community Action, and future community partners, while engaging with the entire community. Last spring, I had the opportunity to help with the solution when I connected Flagstaff Shelter Services with hotel owners who stepped up and offered their rooms for quarantine and shelter individuals experiencing homelessness and also prevent community spread of the COVID virus. With immense gratitude, I acknowledge and appreciate the profound, meaningful, and impactful work Flagstaff Shelter Services has done so far in providing lifesaving, life-changing services to individuals experiencing homelessness within Flagstaff and the entire Coconino County. I commit to further seize opportunities in my personal and official capacities to be an instrument and conduit of our diverse communities' solutions to homelessness, home insecurity, and racism. Unfortunately, what transpired at February 2nd council meeting agendized as the Flagstaff Shelter Services update heroically turned into the mayor's subjective cross-examination and public humiliation of the Executive Director of a partner organization. Subsequently, the mayor also unilaterally interrogated and censured a colleague on council. Petrified, I restrained myself from speaking up. I contained my own heart-pounding visceral reaction, a melange of disbelief, embarrassment, and aggravation. Witnessing the mayor's confrontational, domineering, and hostile approach as Presiding Officer of the council meeting, I empathize being pushed onto a distressing, untenable position in a public meeting. It is relevant to note at this point that on a separate occasion, I received a similar hostile demeaning and stern treatment by the mayor in an email he sent a few days before he took his order of office. At last week's council meeting, I chose to keep quiet to diffuse the intensifying tension. However, my polite silence is not to be construed as quiet acquiescence to the subjective accusatory and judgmental demeanor displayed by the mayor. Such deplorable demeanor breeds hostility, division, and polarity, begets conflict, distrust, apathy, and mendacity, and thus diametrically opposed to civility, statesmanship, and civil discourse expected of an elected public official. Consequently, the mayor's overall demeanor undermined public trust, council consensus, and integrity of the city's communities' partnerships. I recognize the mayor's apology at the beginning of this meeting. My heart still aches deeply for our community, for our City Council and the entire team Flagstaff, for Flagstaff Shelter Services, its partners, staff, and volunteers, for Ms. Alton Ball, and for Councilmember Shimoney. With compassion, I appreciate concerned residents who reached out and expressed their disapproval, disappointment, and grievance. So I humbly and earnestly plead to my colleague on council, to our City of Flagstaff leadership and team Flagstaff, to our community partners and stakeholders, and to our entire beloved diverse community to rise up and transcend from the debacle that transpired at last week council meeting. Let us learn our lessons individually and collectively. Let us move forward toward healing, which takes time and mindful efforts. Let us redirect our energy, intention, and attention toward working together in harmony, seeking understanding, and unity amidst adversity, and continuously building trust. Let us commit to our shared value of treating everyone fairly with dignity and respect. Let us reaffirm with our individual and collective actions our city's mission to protect and enhance the quality of life for all. With all that said, at this juncture, please allow me to share one of the lessons I learned in the past week. It is high time to have a discussion and subsequent council adoption of a Code of Conduct and ethical standards governing mayor and council, for which we can be further held accountable in full, in full compliance with all laws establishing a Code of Conduct for elected public officials. I respectfully submit this matter as a future agenda item request, and I urge fellow council members, Madam Vice Mayor, and Mr. Mayor to expedite this fair request. Thank you, and good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Salas. Councilmember Shimoney?
Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Salas, I just wanted to send you one of these. I think that your words were beautifully spoken, and, and I appreciate the thoughtfulness that went into your, your message just now. Councilmember Salas, and to members of this council, and to you, Mayor, too, we have your back. Each of us has each other's back. I have your backs, and, and as Vice Mayor mentioned last Tuesday, let's recommit ourselves to being a council that's based in integrity, that's based in mutual respect, that doesn't treat community partners the way we did last Tuesday, because what happened last Tuesday was damaging. And I've had numerous local leaders and nonprofit leaders contact me saying, hey, Adam, there's no way I'm coming before council. There's no way I'm gonna expose myself to that type of risk. And so, Mayor, I do want to recognize your apology today and express gratitude for that, and I genuinely am grateful for that, but I think the damage is deep, and that apology alone is not gonna do it, and as others have said, we're gonna have to show through our actions moving forward that we do have mutual respect and integrity at our core. And so, whatever that, Mayor, whatever we can do to do this right and make it right, I'm supportive of. You know, I've noticed on your social media, I don't think I've seen any kind of public apology. Maybe posting one there might be of use, but, or of benefit, but I'll let you decide that. But just know that there is chat around last Tuesday and, and extreme concern about exposing oneself to that type of treatment, so just get to know. I want to put this behind us as much as you do, but I think the healing is still something we need to work on. There is a, so moving on from that topic, there was an email sent to us regarding a free unconscious bias training. I am going to sign up for that, and I invite all of you members of council to do the same. And Jason is familiar with that training, and so I'm, I'm looking forward to that. And I'd like to suggest, Mayor and Council and leadership, we consider doing another retreats for councils to kind of talk about these things and kind of air some of this out, and just kind of reconnect as a council body so that we can best move forward united, and, and just consider that topic. City Manager, I'm not too sure how the process would work, or how surveying council for support would work on that, but I do think that that might be worthwhile. Did you want to chime in on that, City Manager?
Mayor, would you like me to jump in?
This is Sterling. Yeah, we can have a back.
Sorry, we wouldn't be able to have a back and forth. You were going there already, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll finish my comments, and City Manager, you can comment later, and there will be no back and forth. But that, that is a topic of, that I think might be worthwhile for us all, Mayor. And then, just wanted to give a couple of updates. Last Wednesday, the day after last Tuesday, we had a town hall on alternative responses with all of our community partners, FSS at the table as well, and it was awkward. It was awkward for me, Mayor, and, and trying to say, hey, community partners, I know what happened on Tuesday, but now we're looking to communicate with you and work with you. So we, we made it through it, and it was a great town hall, and we did have dialogue, but I do wonder how much dialogue wasn't, wasn't happening because of the emotions that everyone was still feeling. But it was a good town hall, moving the alternative response idea forward for the city. And then, and then I had a livestream, I believe, on Thursday with Solar Neighbors United, and our own climate and, and energy coordinator DC joined me on that livestream, along with Brett Fanshaw of the Arizona Program Director for Solar United Neighbors, Sun. And so, it's basically a co-op of which allows folks to utilize buying power to get a good deal on solar, and there's no commitment by signing up for this, and the selection committee is, is created through local members. So check that out. It's a great opportunity for folks who are curious about solar, and, and it's gonna be a good opportunity for a good chunk of our population to get with, with the program when it comes to solar. Almost done. Tomorrow, there's a CJCC meeting, and I'm looking forward to that. Just wanted to give you all that update, and last but not least, I do have a fair request. I, I like, you know, Mayor, I know that you re, sorry, it's hard, I'm tired. You removed your fair item in terms of council salaries with a focus on decreasing the salary, and I would like to add an agenda item to discuss the increase of the mayor and council salaries. Again, not for us, but the future generations of elected as a fair request, so that's my request. Thank you, Mayor, and good night, everybody.
Thank you, Councilmember. We have Councilmember Sweet, I believe, left. Yes, Councilmember Sweet.
Thank you. I will try and make this brief. I do want to thank Councilmember Salas for the beautiful words that you spoke tonight. Very eloquent, and, man, just in my heart, thank you. I would like to also make a comment about last week's council meeting and extend an apology to Ross with the Flagstaff Shelter Services, as well as Flagstaff Shelter Services, you did not deserve that. And simply put, I was stunned. The words we say and how we use them are important. Not only do we represent the Flagstaff community, but we also set a standard of professionalism, respect, and understanding for our community members. And I want to help move this city forward, so I thank you, Mayor, for the apology earlier tonight. And I want to be able to focus on our job, which is policy and helping move the city forward, so. I thank you for providing me with this time tonight to make the statement. This last week weighed heavily on me, so thank you for letting me express that. Have a good night.
Thank you, Councilmember Sweet. All, I would just like to say that I know perfectly well that my apology, that needs to be followed up by actions, and that I am committed to doing so and to working with you all towards meaningful change. And I hope to be showing that to you, not just saying these words, because I know they can, yeah, truce in the pudding, I guess. I do have a few items to put forth. Just so you're aware, I was appointed to the League of Arizona Cities and Towns of the eight new people that are appointed as of Friday. I would like to propose a fair. Other cities have been picking up the mantle of, or have been putting forth legislation to create, make it a crime for people to call in the police for an instance that's racially profiling an individual. I have experienced this, well, with my foster brothers, who are Sudanese refugees. First day going from high school, they walk in from Sonawa High, when it was a high school, back up to our house in Continental, and first day, first day in, in the United States going to school, and they were pulled over and had multiple incidents of this kind of scenario. I think it's a waste of tax dollars to have to be even answering dispatch call when it's something so very clearly targeted, and I think it's something that with other cities setting precedence already is worth consideration. They are referring to it as the Karen Law, but I'm open to ideas with this. So I would like to put that fair forward. The other thing I would like to mention, and honestly, I don't know exactly where to start with this, because I don't even know if it's our jurisdiction, but I would like to have discussion about land value tax, and if there's any process available to convert parts of our property taxes into land value tax. And it's getting late, I know it gets kind of complicated, but basically, people are taxed not on the value of their land and the buildings and so forth on top. It is only for the value of the land underneath. This provides a situation which reduces land speculation. It means that, you know, if you want to do an accessory dwelling unit on your land at an in-laws quarters, well, you're not gonna see increased property taxes because you've infilled on your land and has several other properties. Other cities have seen a lot of benefits from, in particular, in Pennsylvania. And I would like to see if that's even an option here, if that's our jurisdiction, if that's really would be county, granted by state, I don't know. But I did want to start discussion and see what possibilities there might be out there for this type out there for this type of system that is more conducive towards the, creating the housing that we need here and providing the appropriate tax and tax structure that is more amenable. Aside from that, I think that's about it from where I'm standing. So with that, I would like to adjourn today's work session. And I thank you all.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.